Hi sir.
Session resumed. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for a few minutes suspension.
Session suspended.
Tatakbo 'yung numero. Tatakbo 'yung numero. Wala pa si Eric. Wala pa si Eric. Nabigay ko na sa instruction. Oo, nabigay ko na sa instruction. Oo.
Okay na si Kong Eric?
Opo.
How you doing?
Yes, sir. Tremendous.
Ah, okay.
I rise on the matter of personal and collective privilege. What is the nature of the privilege? It must pertain to the House or to yourself.
Oh, oh, oh.
They will explain and then you can...
Please proceed.
What is the question of privilege?
What is the nature of...
Kong, charge you 1 minute. 10. The gentleman.
Session resumed. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the honorable Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, the Honorable Eric Yap, to avail of the question of privilege.
So move, Mr. Speaker. What is the nature of the question privilege of the gentleman?
Ah, Mr. Speaker, tungkol dito sa balitang malicious at para sa akin po ay hindi tama. Na tungkol sa akin.
The gentleman from Benguet, ah, from the province of Benguet, ah, has 10 minutes. Proceed, please.
Mr. Speaker, I rise today on a matter of collective and personal privilege. Kaninang umaga, tayo ay nainterview ni Miss Karen Davila sa ANC tungkol sa iba't ibang issue. Kasama na rin dito ang issue tungkol sa ABS-CBN. Sa gitna ng ating interview, isa sa ginawa kong halimbawa ay ang naging issue noon kay Deputy Speaker Paulo Duterte, kung saan nasira ang pangalan niya at ng kanyang pamilya dahil sa mga balita sa media na hindi naitama at hindi po totoo. Isa sa mga naitanong ay kung ito ba ang dahilan ni Deputy Speaker Paulo Duterte, kaya finail ang House Resolution 853 na naglalayong magkaroon ng inquiry para sagutin ang mga probable violations ng ABS-CBN. Sinagot po, sinagot ko po na siya hindi. Pero ako, yun ang dahilan. Pero marami at mahaba po ang usapan na yun at halimbawa natin, hindi lang yun ang naging kadahilanan. Nipaliwanag ko po na hindi lang po yun ang dahilan. Yung po ay naging halimbawa ko lang sa aking panayam. Lilinawin ko po, Mr. Speaker, hindi po ito personal na galit kaya sinumiti ang House Resolution 853. Ang personal po sa akin ay ang maging tama ang pagbabalita ng media dahil very powerful po ang media. Ika nga nila, with great powers comes with great responsibility. Trabaho po ng media maglahad ng facts at kunin ang lahat ng panig. Hindi ako pro or against ABS-CBN, pero ako po ay tumatayo ngayon para sa tamang pagbabalita. Pagkatapos po ng interview, ito po ang bumulaga sa social media. Ayam po ang news ng Inquirer. Kung titignan niyo, dalawa po 'yan, Mr. Speaker. Pinagtabi ko po at linagyan ko po ng isang larawan sa gitna. Kung makikita niyo, tama 'yung picture pero iba ang gustong palabasin sa news. Ito po 'yung ating linalabanan, Mr. Speaker. Ito po 'yung ating sinasabi na pag tayo ay magbabalita, dapat po sana kunin nila ang side nung kanilang ikinukot. Sila po, baka nakinig lang sila sa ANC at gumawa na po sila ng balita. Pero bilang media, bilang journalist, trabaho po nila kunin ang panig. Okay, ang sinabi po dito, Solon admits personal reason in seeking probe in allege ABS-CBN franchise violations. Hindi po nila ako tinanong kung ito ba ay personal sa akin o ano po ba 'to. Sila po ay naging parang isang tsismoso lang po sa palengke na nakarinig ng tsismis at hindi po binalidate. Bakit po naging personal sa akin 'to? Ang sinasabi ko po sa ANC, kaya po personal 'to, hindi po 'yung kay Paulo Duterte. Yung po ay halimbawa, ang personal po sa akin ay 'yung masisira mo ang buhay ng isang tao, nairereport mo ang mali at hindi tama, pagkatapos hindi mo nababawiin yun. Yung po ang personal sa akin, kaya ako nag-file ang House Resolution 853, dahil gusto ko pong matuldukan ang maling practice ng ilang kasamahan natin sa media, na basta-basta magre-report ng hindi totoo allegations at hindi na po itatama. Marahil, ito po siguro ang mabenta, mas maraming like, mas maraming views at shares. Pero, Mr. Speaker, papaano naman po 'yung mga pamilya? Papaano naman po 'yung mga mahal sa buhay na mga nasira dahil po sa maling pagre-report? Hindi po ba sinasabi nila 11,000 employees ang sinasangalang-alang ng ABS-CBN? Pero ang sa akin naman po dito, sinabi ko rin kay Miss Karen Davila na papaano po 'yung daan-daan libong taong apektado ng maling pagbabalita? Makapangyarihan ang media dahil kayo ang napapanood, nadidinig at nababasa ng tao. Pero kung mali ang balita, ilang buhay po ang masisira dito. Bakit po ako tumatayo dito ngayon? Upang itama ang kultura ng pagbabalita sa ating bansa. Mahirap ba nadiretsuhin at ang gagawing pagbabalita? Mahirap ba gawing straight to the point ang headline? Bakit po ba ang headline para ating dapat nating isipin kung ano 'yung medyo may malicia? Kung ano medyo 'yung mapapaliwan ng tao pag binasa? Bakit po ba dapat controversial ang headline? Bakit po ba hindi tayo magbalita ng maganda at tama? Sa bawat pagkakamali, sa bawat maling pagbabalita, buhay po ng tao ang nasisira. Hindi lang po ng isang tao kung hindi na mga mahal nila sa buhay na mga taong naniniwala sa kanila at na mga kaibigan nila. Panahon na po upang itama natin ang pagbabalita. Hindi 'yung laging sasabihin pinipersonal ang ABS-CBN, press freedom, kinikitil. Hindi niyo ba naiintindihan na sa maling pagbabalita, buhay ng tao ang tinatanggal niyo? At yung po dapat ay magbago, Mr. Speaker. Yun lang po ang aking dahilan kung bakit nandirito ako ngayon. Sa mga kasamahan ko sa media, hindi po lahat. Pero dun po sa mahilig mag-twist ng kanilang mga balita, maging isang leksyon puto. Sa bawat maling ibabalita niyo, isipin niyo po ang buhay na inyong sisirain. Tayo po lahat ay may obligasyon, meron po tayo lahat pananagutan sa ating bansa. At sa inyo po, sa mga kasamahan ko sa media na nagbabalita ng mga malicious, sana po magkaroon po tayo ng konsensya. Maraming-maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker, at maraming salamat po sa kasamahan ko dito sa Kongreso. Mabuhay po tayong lahat, mabuhay ang Pilipinas, we heal as one po, magandang hapon po.
The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Eric Yap to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Actions. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Sterne objection, there being none. Ah, the speech of the gentleman from ACT-CIS and Benguet is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we continue consideration of House Bill Number 6815 under Committee Report Number 312, and I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Ah, the Secretary General is hereby designated to read the title.
House Bill 6815, an act establishing an economic stimulus strategy for the country's growth and development in the aftermath of COVID-19 and providing funds therefore.
The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of this bill is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debate. And with that, Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the sponsors, the Honorable Stella Kimbo, Honorable Sharon Garin, and Honorable Joey Salceda to continue with the sponsorship of this measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The distinguished sponsors, hard-working sponsors are hereby recognized.
Mr. Speaker, first to interpolate our sponsors, I move that we recognize the representative of the 3rd District of Camarines Sur, the Honorable Gabi Bordado. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The distinguished gentleman from Camarines Sur is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. Ah, yesterday, Mr. Speaker, Congressman Edsel Lagman had propounded virtually all of the critical and relevant questions regarding the Pesa, particularly the funding sources to support the act, the allocation for the various sectors, including the local government units, and also the continuation of the social amelioration program. So, Mr. Speaker, I will just deliver a very, very short manifestation. I welcome the entry of this Philippine Economic, ah, the Pesa Bill, or the Pesa Act, and the Pesa directly addresses the problems and complications spawned by the pandemic. And I am hoping, Mr. Chairman, for the eventual passage of this act. I understand from the pronouncements made by Congresswoman Sharon Garin that more than 80% of the members of the House of Representatives signed in as co-authors of Pesa. So I am hoping that this will be immediately approved because of its importance, of its significance, of its ability really to address the concerns of the country in the presence of the pandemic. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ah, distinguished gentleman from Camarines. The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, next to interpolate our good sponsor, I move that we recognize the Honorable Jose Francisco Kiko Benitez of the 3rd District of Negroes Occidental. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman from the 3rd District of Negroes Occidental is hereby recognized.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Ah, Mr. Speaker, I actually only wish to give my manifestation of my strong support for the enactment of the Philippine Economic Stimulus Act. Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, our economy is reeling under the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. Forced to close shop or limit activities when the country went into lockdown in March in order to save lives, businesses are struggling to cope with massive losses, laying off workers, or cutting wages. The pandemic has triggered an unprecedented global economic crisis and has threatened to sink families into extreme poverty. We were already in a learning crisis prior to COVID-19, as evidenced by our poor showing in the international exams last week, last year. And the joint pressures of a lockdown and economic downturn has further disrupted our education sector's operation. There is a estimated revenue loss of 19 billion pesos per month, so long as schools remain closed. School closings and educational disruptions can potentially lead to learning losses, increased dropouts, and in fact, higher inequality. In the long run, the social costs in terms of human and social capital development and welfare will be very difficult to quantify. That is why I laud the authors of the Philippine Economic Stimulus Act for recognizing the plight of our education sector. The health and well-being of our 30 million Filipino students are obviously of paramount importance. But education is one of the top most impacted industries by the virus. With schools closed, the estimated 263,000 teachers in private basic education and 77,000 faculty in private higher education, plus their administrative staff and counterparts are anxious for their jobs and their futures as their operational continuity in the sector is uncertain. Estimates from the DOF range from 130,000 to 170,000 jobs might be lost in this sector this year alone. Further, as families such as OFWs whose posts have disappeared due to the global pandemic struggle to make ends meet, interruption in their children's education is inevitable. At the same time, we need to distinguish schooling from education. With or without schools open, the need for learning continues and in fact becomes more urgent as we adjust and retool our people for a post-COVID world. The education system's role in the development and socialization of our students cannot be underestimated, and studies have shown interruptions in schooling increases dropout rates with great social costs to us all. The lockdown has forced schools to suspend classes and facilitate education through flexible and alternative learning modes to mitigate learning loss opportunities while ensuring inclusive education through blended learning and various platforms, both digital and non-digital. In this context, we must make sure education's promise of social mobility and equity are fulfilled and that students without access to digital technologies are not left behind. I congratulate the authors because not only does the bill extend support to schools and teachers through potential loans and wage subsidies, but also extends help to the millions of students whose education will be disrupted by COVID and its economic consequences. Furthermore, through these bills and its provisions for ICT infrastructure for the schools of the future, we will be able to finally start to bridge the digital divide at precisely the time when we most urgently need to re-skill and retool our people and prepare our students and our nation for the emerging post-COVID world. These provisions for education impact are not just dole-outs to maintain businesses or spur consumption such as the Marikina Shoemakers example in Kong Stella Kimbo's opening remarks, but an investment in our society's future. They will all go far in ensuring our nation's common social development and make sure that it is sustained in the years to come. The 30 million Filipino students deserve no less. Mr. Speaker, in view of its urgency, its necessity, and its impact, it is my hope that we deliberate carefully but quickly so that we can approve this measure at the soonest possible time. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you distinguished hard-working sponsors.
Thank you, Congressman Benitez.
For all one co-author to another, the chair would like to thank the distinguished gentleman from the 3rd District of Negroes Occidental for his manifestation of support. The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from Partilis Act Teacher, Honorable Franz Castro for her interpolation.
The distinguished gentlelady from Act Teacher is hereby recognized.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. So would the sponsor of the bill yield to some of my problematic authority questions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Proceed, please.
Hey, on section 6 of the bill, Mr. Speaker, on mass COVID-19 testing, so it says here that there would be 10 billion appropriation for the fiscal year 2020 and another 10 billion appropriation for fiscal 2020. And another provision that the ILG shall identify and prioritize areas and business activities critically impacted and severely affected by COVID-19. So my question, Mr. Speaker, ahm, kasama po ba dito 'yung mga private schools at saka 'yung mga public schools po? Kasi po, ah, isa rin po sa kampanya ng mga teachers ay magkaroon ng scientific mass testing. Ito po ay targeted mass testing especially po 'yung mga vulnerable. Yung po may mga symptoms exposed sa mga positive COVID. Yung namang po mga asymptomatic na naexposed din po at saka 'yung mga buntis at senior citizen. So, ahm, kasama po ba dito sa bill na 'to or isa sa mga targeted, ah, sector sila dito sa section 6?
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker, the intention of the bill is to include that sector, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, kasi nga, ahm, alam po natin on August 24, matuloy man o hindi ang opinion ng klase, mahalaga din po, ah, Mr. Speaker, na masama po ang ating mga teachers, mga school personnel, at iba pa po 'yung mga vulnerable para magkaroon naman po ng kumpiansa ang ating mga magulang, estudyante ah, sa pagpasok ng school whether it is on online teaching or face-to-face or distance learning po. Second question po ay, ahm, on section 9, ah, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, on educational subsidy to students. So nakalagay po dito 'yung emergency subsidy to COVID-19 impacted tertiary education students in the private higher education institutions. Students who are not listed in the listahanan of BSWD, priority to children of displaced OFW. So nakalagay din po dito, Mr. Speaker, 7,500 subsidy per student in payment of the second semester tuition and other fees paid directly to schools for salaries of teachers and non-teaching staff. So meron pong 18 billion for 2020 and 9 billion for 2019. Meron din pong emergency subsidy for COVID-19 impacted students in private education institutions. So granted to students who are currently not grantees and recipients of any existing government subsidies facing financial difficulties due to work stoppage, closure, and establishments. Priority to children of displaced OFW and 15 billion appropriation. So tanong po, ah, Mr. Speaker, bakit po magkaiba 'yung amount granted to TES qualified 7,500 pero doon po sa mga non-TES ay 7,000 lang? Pareho naman po ang tuition sa mga private HEIs or private education institutions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, ahm, we agree with the disparity between the two provisions and the committee is willing to adjust so that both sections will have the same amount at 7,500, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, isa pa po ano regarding dito sa education subsidy to our students. So bakit po excluded sa listahan 'yung listahanan ng BSWD? Dahil po ba sa mga SUC or local colleges lang sila pwedeng mag-aral na libre? Yung mga nasa listahanan naman ng BSWD, ginagamit nila 'yung subsidy for daily expenses? Parang merong, ah, discrimination, ah, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, it's just that to distinguish between the two, there's a listahan under the DEP Ed and the listahan under the poorest of the poor. Ah, just not to confuse it, ah, we rely on the listing of the Department of Education.
Okay, so sana, Mr. Speaker, matanggal 'yung ano, 'yung discrimination. At kung magre-relay tayo sa listahanan, okay, ah, magre-relay tayo pero siguraduhin po natin na ito ay updated at wala pong aiwan sa ating mga mga estudyante whether mag-enrollment sa SUCan, sa local, or sa private HAI.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we noted that and we are adding provisions to avoid discrimination on the students, Mr. Speaker.
Oh, another one, Mr. Speaker, on the expansion of gaspe. Not recipient of ESC or 'yung tinatawag natin Senior High School voucher program shall receive tuition subsidy of 4,000 each. So wala po bang programa ng gobyerno sa pesa? Halimbawa po 'yung teacher salary subsidy ng private school teachers. Alam niyo, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, mula po nung nag-lockdown nung March 15, karamihan po na mga small and medium schools natin na mga teachers natin na mula sa small and medium schools ay talaga pong no-work, no-pay sila. At ngayon nga po, sinasabi natin na madaliin 'yung subsidy po dun sa ating mga private school teachers po natin. Dahil sila po 'yung mga naapektuhan dahil sa nagkaroon ng malaw- Isa pa po ano, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, malawakan tanggalan din ang nangyayari, meron ding salary freeze sa mga malalaking school dahil sa mababang enrollment. So ang private school or private higher education institution ay natutulungan ang bill pero ang mga private school teachers ay hindi po. So saan po nakalagay dito, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, 'yung tulong natin dun sa ating mga kaguro o 'yung mga school personnel na naapektuhan masyado ng COVID na itong pandemya na'to?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I agree. The provision under assistance to students will address the needs of the students and while the needs of the teachers who have been who haven't received their salaries will be addressed under the wage subsidy in which they can avail of a two-month salary subsidy considering they are affected industry as well, Mr. Speaker. So both the teachers and the students will get interventions from the government but based on different provisions of the proposed bill, Mr. Speaker.
Um, Mr. Speaker, ano, kailangan mailagay natin itong provision na'to kasi hindi lang naman po dalawang buwan na apektado 'yung ating mga teachers sa private schools, lalong lalo po 'yung mga personnel din. Kasi kung ang magiging pagbubukas pa po ng klase ay August 24, itong ibig sabihin nun, may tatlong buwan pa na no-work, no-pay. So kailangan pong matiyak natin 'yung una, 'yung mabilis na pagbibigay ng dalawang buwang subsidy dun sa ating mga private school teachers at mailagay dito sa bill 'yung kanilang wage subsidy sa susunod na tatlong buwan o 'yung hangga't hindi pa talaga nagiging regular ang klase o regular ang kanilang sweldo, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, we will consider and we will make calculations and the committee will make the proper amendment at the proper time, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, on to my next sets of questions on Section 26, Enhanced Build 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 Program, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor. So there would be 650 billion appropriated over three years starting 2021? The construction and improvement of public school facilities and provision of efficient internet connectivity to all public schools and SUCs with the aim of creating schools for the future or school geared towards competitiveness in the fourth industrial revolution? So my question, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, so ano po ba 'yung mga tinutukoy natin dito na mga school facilities na nandirito po? May dagdag po bang washing area or toilets? Kasi po kahit tubig, wala ang karamihan sa ating mga public schools.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, this are considered also in the programming of the Build Build Build, Enhanced Build Build Build. Also, not only the basic facilities but also the digitalization or broadband, whatever the students will eventually need because of the effects of COVID, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, so kailangan, Mr. Speaker, ano, mailagay dito sa bill. Halimbawa po 'yung talagang, ano po 'yung talagang maitutulong din natin, kaugnay noong ano naman, 'yung tulong po din natin doon sa internet access ng ating mga teachers. Kasi alam naman natin na they will go on different kinds of modalities including internet connection. So ano po ba, bibigyan po ba natin ng something like allowance sa internet ang ating mga teachers?
Um, Mr. Speaker, what we have anticipated is the limitation on the broadband capacity of the country. So included in the Build Build Build, Enhanced Build Build Build, is the enhancement of this and it has been specified that there should be a construction improvement and innovation of digital infrastructure to complement the national broadband plan. We cannot just give subsidies if there is no capacity in the country. So we have to address that first, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, oo, tama po yun, Mr. Speaker. I agree with the sponsor dahil alam naman natin ang Filipinas ang pinakahuli po in terms of 'yung bilis ng broadband sa buong Southeast Asia. Kaya three years na natin pinag-uusapan na pabilisin 'yung internet access sana, 'yung signal. Pero hanggang ngayon, naabuta na tayo ni COVID-19. Hanggang ngayon ay mabagal pa 'yung internet connection. Kahit naman sa mga eskwelahan, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, talagang mahina din. Kung pupunta ka sa mga eskwelahan, principal's office lang ang merong internet connection pero hindi sa lahat ng classroom. So paano tayo makapag-up up doon sa sinasabi nating different kinds of modalities? Next, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, kasama ba dito 'yung mga additional classrooms para may social distancing or para ma-decongest 'yung mga class size natin? Kasi yun naman 'yung sinasabi nating health protocol at least?
Mr. Speaker, yes, Mr. Speaker, this is included and that in fact it's over and above what the regular budget of the Department of Education is, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Madam Sponsor. Yung pong ano, merong pronouncement, if I am right, na merong proposal ang Department of Education na para hindi po mahuli 'yung ating mga teachers. Meron po bang provision dito para sa pagbili ng mga laptop, computer, or any related na infrastructure or gadgets para doon sa ating mga teachers at mga students din po?
Mr. Speaker, due to limitations of fund, this is not addressed with the funding that we have provided but the educational institutions can avail of cheap loans in order to assist their teachers, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, nakakalungkutan, no? Kasi nga ngayon nga, talagang ang scarcity talaga ng mga gadgets na yan ay nakita na natin sa ngayon sa ating mga teachers, sa ating mga estudyante na talagang hindi ready 'yung ating educational system sa ganitong moda ng pagbabago o 'yung new normal. Kaya sana po ay mapagsikapan din at mabigyan din po ng provision 'yung ating mga teachers para sa mga mahalagang infrastructure. Uh, 'yung next question po po, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, nakita ko dito 'yung mga infrastructure, build, build, build. I attended also a hearing discussing the Cure Bill. So nakita natin sa Cure Bill, puro din naman ito build, build, puro din naman ito infrastructure, pagagawa ng kung ano-an namang mga buildings. Ano po 'yung pagkakaiba nitong pesa bill dito sa mga provision na nakalagay? Sa Cure Bill po, Mr. Sponsor, Madam Speaker? Kasi puro capital outlay din po kasi ito eh, hindi ba magkakaroon ng redundant? O paano natin siya pag-iibahin?
Mr. Speaker, the status of the bill, the Cure's bill is currently under committee deliberations. So in fact, the two bills can go hand in hand. They both are for implementation for three years. It's not, it does not contradict, but it can in fact complement and should the time come, it can even amend what is provided in this bill should this bill pass first, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, so alam niyo po, Mr. Speaker, napansin ko po kung paano pino-proseso 'yung mga bill natin, no? Kaugnay dito sa, dahil dito sa meron tayong COVID-19. Mabilis, minamabilis, halimbawa po 'yung new normal, itong pesa, at saka 'yung cure, meron pa yatang risk. Kaya po baka magkaroon ng, ano, ng paulit-ulit o redundancy doon sa mga proposal and mga provisions. So sana po makita natin later on 'yung, kaya nga po, nagpakangapo ako parang meron din dito talaga, nakita ko sa cure, na the same din doon sa, dito sa ating pesa na tinatalakay po, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor.
Thank you. You duly noted. We will review the Cure's bill so that we can avoid any contradiction between the two proposals, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Madam Sponsor. On Section 33 of the bill, special power to reallocate and realign appropriations. So again, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, parang binibigan na naman natin ng so much power ang President, kaugnay noong reallocation and realignment of appropriations. Wherein, in fact, kung pag naayos po talaga 'yung allocation na mga sinasabi nating mga provisions dito for education, for health, so hindi naman to kailangan. So ano po ba 'yung special power na tinutukoy natin dito, Mr. Speaker and Madam Sponsor?
Mr. Speaker, the Bayanihan Act actually expires in, it's only as long as three months. So this, but, and it gives the President emergency powers over to reallocate and realign appropriations. This provision, however, is different. The intention of the authors is to allow them to realign or reappropriate non-infrastructural projects, Mr. Speaker. Hence, the authors and the committee have amending proposals to clarify such and to limit the powers granted under the provision, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, thank you, Madam Sponsor, ano, medyo then dangerous po 'yan, no? Na mabibigay tayo na naman ng special power to reallocate and realign appropriations. For three years po kasi ito eh, so ibig sabihin nun, bibigyan natin ng three-hand ang Office of the President na mag-reallocate for three years. Unlike in Bayanihan, there is a prescribed time talaga, kung three months 'yan, two months 'yan. So yun ang pagkakaiba po sa Bayanihan. Pero kung idalagay natin 'tong special provision na ito, o itong special power to realign and reallocate, Mr. Speaker and Madam Sponsor, that would be dangerous. Three years 'yan, di po ba ito 'yung itatagal nitong proposed bill na ito?
Sir Speaker, the authorization is only six months and the powers vested for, under this provision are way more, have more limitations and very specific items that can only be realigned or reallocated, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. For even then, kahit na po six months 'yan, ay medyo dangerous din. On Section 34, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, on financing. Uh, Section 34, authority to borrow. So pwede po ba ma-refresh ako sa Bayanihan Act? Ilan na po ba 'yung na-borrow or nautang, nautang po natin doon sa pagpapatupad ng ating COVID-19 response? So, magkano po ba yun, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
How much is the, Mr. Speaker, how much is the total loans that we have taken out for Bayanihan? Is that a question?
Yes, Madam Sponsor.
Sir Speaker, as we have gathered from news and as well as information from the departments, it's around 426 billion, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, so 'yung 426 billion po na nautang na natin para sa COVID-19 response, hindi pa po ba ito sa part? Madam Speaker, Sir Speaker, Madam Sponsor, para sa ating COVID response po? At ano naman po ang iniisip natin through this bill na pagkakagastusan po natin, bakit tayo mangutang?
Mr. Speaker, the 426 billion or even the rest of the cash available right now for the national government is being utilized for the Bayanihan Act. It is for the special amelioration and any other programs and projects that we need to address COVID. What we are proposing is after COVID. So we anticipate that there will be lack of funds by then, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, so I hope, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, 'yung pangutang na ito ay hindi na naman, huwag madagdag doon sa marami na namang utang na babayaran na mga Filipino in the future. At panghuli, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, so I hope itong pesa bill na ito ay tumututong doon sa tamang orientasyon, di ba? After COVID-19, pupunta tayo sa new normal. Ayaw na natin ng old normal na sinasabi natin. I hope itong mga proposal natin na ito ay magre-redown para doon sa pagbabago talaga, transformation talaga para sa ikaw unlad ng ating mga mamayan at hindi magubulid na naman sa maraming utang na mamanahe ng ating mga anak. Uh, thank you, Madam Sponsor. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
The committee chair wishes to thank the representative from Act Teacher Partilis, Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from 3rd District Negros Occidental, Honorable, 3rd District Bukidnon, Honorable Manuel Subiri for his interpolation.
The distinguished gentleman from the 3rd District of Bukidnon is hereby recognized. Proceed, please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And of course, first of all, I would like to thank our main sponsors, Congresswoman Garin, Congresswoman Kimbo, and Congressman Salceda for a job not just well-done but very, very well-done. Marami salamat po. Mr. Speaker, now on to my manifestation. The aviation industry is at risk of collapsing if not given the proper boost to keep it flying. This is the title of my manifestation. Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, of course my dear colleagues. I stand here today in defense of our aviation industry. After so many Zoom meetings and discussions on what is needed by this industry because of the effects of COVID-19, I am here today to ask you and the rest of our colleagues together with the Executive Department to help this industry that has been tremendously hit by this pandemic. I can alulungkot ko po, Mr. Speaker, na itong industriya ay talagang pinamaan ng husto at kung hindi po natin matutulungan sila, ay baka hindi na po sila makabangon. All over the world, Mr. Speaker, airlines are filing for bankruptcy, filing for Chapter 11 receivership, and requesting for relief packages from their governments. The US government alone, for example, will help and use $58 billion for worker protection and loans for the industry. India is planning a $1.6 billion US dollar rescue package for the industry. Australia will help with $715 million Australian dollars as their relief package. Canada, on the other hand, is setting aside an $82 billion Canadian dollar relief program for the industry. Maraming-marami pa po na mga gobyerno tutulong sa kanilang mga kababayan na naapektuhan sa ganitong industriya. Right now, the airlines are in survival mode. The aviation industry has been hit so hard that if we don't reach out to them, immediately we stand a chance of losing them and the jobs that our people truly need. Together with this, the tourism industry- Together with this, the tourism industry, Mr. Speaker, will also suffer the same fate. How can we just start the tourism industry if the aviation industry is on a brink of possible collapse? Both industries go hand in hand. They are synonymous to one another. A total of 6 to 6.5 million people depend on these two industries upon, Mr. Speaker. Matatam- maan din po 'yung industriyan turismo kung hindi natin tutulungan itong sektor. Milion, milyon mga trabaho ay posible kawala kung hindi natin bibigyan ng karapat-dapat na tulong or relief package. What can we do, Mr. Speaker, lubangin nila, king capital and credit? Emergency lines of credit, bombard facility, temporary waiver of charges, workers relief and protection back cage. If liquidity assessment and credit guarantee for certain amount, for a certain amount with a fixed allowable term in order for them to be able to bounce back itulag. Simple lang po ito. Kung hindi po natin sila tutulungan, maraming trabaho ang mawawala. Mga maliliit na mga kompanya ang hindi na natin makikita muli. Again, Mr. Speaker, it's very simple. No companies, no jobs. No jobs, no revenue. Think about it. What will happen to our beloved nation? After so many decades of pushing and pushing these industries for revenue, it's about time we push ourselves to give back, to help save this industry and the other industries and the people that depend on it. We save the industry, we save the companies, we save the jobs that our countrymen rely on, we save our people. In the end, it's all about the people, Mr. Speaker. We have to save them. Maraming salamat po. If we do this right, this will be the best stimulus bill the country has ever seen. We just need to implement it efficiently and properly for the sake of our people. Maraming salamat po, mahal kita Filipinos. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, gentleman from the Third District of, ah, Bukidnon, Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recog- we recognize the gentleman from Partilis Buay, Honorable Jose Atienza Jr. for his interpolation.
The distinguished gentleman, ah, and statesman from, ah, Buay Partilis is hereby recognized. Proceed, please.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Thank you. We'd like to clarify from the sponsor, certain basic issues hindi ko po nakita rito sa kanilang draft, kanilang bill, proposed bill. Ang tatanungin ko lang po ay simple, at 'yung agam-agam ng aming party. Baka ito'y pataan, nabawuxan ang ating kahadyero, mahala na kayo. Eto mga pondong ninyo daan-daang billion. We're not talking about millions here, we're talking about 1.3 trillion or 1.5 trillion, depending anong press release 'yung napasa ninyo. At this point in time, I'd like to ask the sponsor, Lady Congressman Garin, magkano po ba ang total na iniisip ninyo ubusin dito sa programa ito? Na napakaganda na pagkakagawa. Subalit, napakaraming mga opening for possible wrongdoing. We're talking about the future of our people and our economic, economic condition. If the purpose is to help the economy and to help our people, tatanungin ko po, magkano po ba ang tunay na nilalaan natin sa magandang programa ito?
Mr. Speaker, the 650 billion is for the bill, 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 that's infrastructure and five, six, 640 billion is for the other interventions, Mr. Speaker.
My question therefore is, why do we have to appropriate 650 billion once again for infrastructure? When the Department of Public Works is well financed in the present budget? And we will soon talk about the next budget for next year? At malalagyan filan, malaking pondong pa. Why should we now hurry a big appropriation like 650 billion for the Department of Public Works? I'm presuming that they will be the one who use this money. Tama po ba 'yung aking assumption?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. The 650 billion, however, is an enhanced one in which we address what we have learned that we have not addressed in the 2020 or previous budgets. These are focused on broadband, on education, on health and various other projects in order for us to cope with the effects of COVID, Mr. Speaker. And in addition to that, infrastructure, ang multiplier effect ng infrastructure is 3.4. So if you invest 1 peso, you get 3 pesos and 40, 44 centavos, Mr. Speaker. That's historically in Philippines and other, other countries, um, infrastructure is, ah, one of the main, main drivers of the economy ah, in addition to the job generation that, ah, it delivers as well, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, nainggian po natin 'yung sinabi ng ating sponsor. Pero ang tanong ko po ay, bakit infrastructure ng ating bibigyan ng tulong esamantalang dakdapa ang ekonomiya ngayon? Lahat ng negosyante ngayon ay dumaraeng. Ubus na kanilang kuhunan, baka maglayoff na sila sa buwan ito o sa susunod, at baka hindi na sila makabango. Why don't we talk about specifics of the industries affected by this COVID-19? Which we are assuming, tatwong industriya at kinamaan dito except, except the multi-billion businesses controlled by the present oligarchy. Yung mga middle, small and mid, medium enterprises, nakadapanapun lahat. We don't need to be, ah, more inquisitive than knowing reality, accepting reality. I know of small businessmen who do not have hope anymore for this year. Are they going to get a direct support from government? O dadaan na naman ito sa bureaucracy at hindi nila mararamdaman?
Mr. Speaker, one, the, one of the foundations of this proposal is the wage subsidy in which all industries that are affected can get subsidy from the government for equivalent to two months as long as they do not retrench in order to protect employment, Mr. Speaker. And if that is not enough, then we have, ah, financing interventions in which they can get zero rated or interest-free loans or low, or, or cheap loans, Mr. Speaker. And as to address the specific sectors, Mr. Speaker, as mentioned by Congressman Atienza, we have identified the industries that are highly impacted, Mr. Speaker. And first and foremost, all these interventions, the preference or the priority are the MSMEs, Mr. Speaker, as well as the informal sector. And in addition to that, there's tourism, the industry and service sectors, transportation industry, land, sea and air, and also agri-industry, agri-fishery industry, Mr. Speaker.
My next question therefore, we are assuming that the different sectors will be benefiting directly. I'm assuming that based on the answer of the lady sponsor. Now, who will control this money? We have, have we put any safeguards? Wala po akong napasa. Puro mga general definitions and general provisions on enhancing, that's a very broad word, enhancing the future of the industry. But at this point in time, we have not even recovered from the Bayanihan Act which we passed blindly. In one day, we passed it because we wanted to be of help to our people and the different affected sector, which is actually the whole nation. At this point, marami pong nawalang pera dito sa Bayanihan Act na ito. Yung mga ibibigay sa mahihirap, marami pong kausap na mga barangay, hindi pa umaabot ang pera sa kanila. Marami po namang mga nakita nating maling paghawak na salapi. Pinamimigay sa kalye, nagbibilang ng peso for peso, dibulibing salapi, hinahawakan ng isang kaputak na tao. Itu po bang pondong ito meron, katuto na ba tayo na? Kailangan ang pagkataan, repo ito 'yung mga rating sa intended beneficiary at hindi po mapunta ito. Doon sa sinasabi ng mga experto, 30% of our appropriations goes to corruption and that still exists now. I'd like to stress that. Corruption is the number one pitfall of this well-intentioned effort of Congress. Ano po ang ating safeguards, Madam?
Mr. Speaker, I don't think there's a provision on curbing corruption in the bill, but we have observed the problems in the implementation of some of the interventions under the Bayanihan Act. And we have, ah, incorporated that in the bill, the digitalization of the distribution as well as the utilization of the current programs of the government. For example, in, under the Department of Agriculture, they have specific programs in offices already, so accountability can be, can be measured. And then also we have the Economic Stimulus Board that will monitor that in which it's a multi-agency up to the level of agencies, Mr. Speaker. And also, we have, ah, involved, also made amendments on the involvement of the local government units, Mr. Speaker. So we have, we have, we have the same concerns, ah, Mr. Speaker. It's the implementation part and the authors of the bill and the committee has worked hard to make sure that the, the measures are there. And we have made sure that before we approve the budget as well as the provision that each agency have submitted their specific programs on what they intend to, to implement and how they will implement, Mr. Speaker. And so far as the bill is concerned, that is how we, we are trying to curb corruption or losses in the implementation side, Mr. Speaker.
We are appreciative of the answer of the lady sponsor, but I do not see what she has just mentioned in the letters of the bill. It's all in her heart and clean conscience and mind, I'm sure. Ang sinasabi ko po, pag ipinasan natin 'tong bill na ito, assist. Kompleto po, maganda po, malalim po, malawak ang pananaw. Subalit 'yung salaping nilalaan natin dito na ating appropriations discussion where pesos and pavos are discussed for every department, every bureau, anyone who will hold that money where appropriating. But this is a blanket authority, in fact, we're giving the President blanket authority for three years to shuffle the funds from one place to another. Obviously, we are not sure of where the money would be intended to, or what, where it would be going and as a reason why we have to ask this question. Because later on, as we review the well-intentioned bill, baka hindi po umabot sa kinahukulan, we're talking about 1.5, 1.3 trillion pesos here. When you talk of infrastructure, may nabasa ako rito sa, sa press release ninyo, it will go to farm-to-market route. Ano po kinalaman 'yung farm-to-market route? It's sa ating Economic Stimulus Fund, na pinag-usapan ngayon. Pwede naman isama 'yan sa susunod na budget, malapit ako tayong mag-usap sa budget. In this particular effort, instant, we're giving everybody a blanket authority, make use of this money. But we're not talking about safeguards. Wala po ako nakita rin 'tong safeguard. Yan po'y sinabi on the floor, Lady Congresswoman Garin, but I did not see it in the letter of the law. If we approve it, to me, as it is structured, we are actually allocating 1.3 trillion depending on the good intentions of those who make use of the money.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the, the, if, if, my apologies to Congressman Atienza, if the, the bill that he has now is the same as we have, because we, we are on version 20 already. And, ah, the last admission to the committee was a few days ago. So I can send to him the copy of the, the approved committee report so that, ah, it can be updated. But yes, there are, there are new safeguards that we have placed in there and, ah, if it is not to his satisfaction, we will be very much willing to accommodate his amendments, Mr. Speaker.
I would appreciate it, Mr. Speaker, if we are furnished copies of what the lady sponsor mentioned. Safeguards, we are looking for safeguards because yun ang susinang lahat ng ito. Dahil kung pera ay pupunta sa farm-to-market route, baka makatulungpo, bigyan natin 'yung pera sa mga partners. Dahil marami na po tayong pondong farm-to-market route na sa national appropriation po 'yan at pwede po tayong maglagay ng mas palaki pang halaga. Subalit, hihimay-himay natin. Hindi itong parang blanket authority to open the treasury with well-intentioned definition of sectoral benefits. But in reality, later on, magtatanong na naman ng mga tao, ano naman ang ginawa ng kongreso sa napunta ang pera? Dahil 'yung SAP funds, hindi pa rin nakakarating sa mga intended beneficiary na ating, ginugusto sana ng tulongan. Ito itong mga sektor na sinasabi ninyo, meron po bang self guarding, self policing mechanics 'yan? Kung sinasabi niyong meron na kayong pinag-usapan, I'd appreciate it if you can say. And if our appreciation and our defense of this congressional wholesale appropriation of money which may cause a financial indigestion. Masayang lamang po at samantalang hindi makinabang ang talagang naghihirap ng mga negosyo ngayon. Walang kaduda-duda, hindi na tayo kailangan mag-usapan ng bahaba. Well-intentioned ito batas, pero katulad din po 'yan ang Bayanihan Act. Maganda intention, pero hindi po yata natulungan ang lahat. Mga 30% po ang nawawalan pera, sa aming estimate, kung saan-saan bulsa na akong tayo. We don't want that to happen again because this is a bigger sum of money and a bigger responsibility on the part of Congress. We cannot just approve blindly a well-intentioned law. Kailangan diretso, malinaw, specific, ang pupuntahan ng pera, sinong gagamit, sinong mananago. Yun po ang aking paalala at ng Buay Partilis. We cannot just blindly approve this on the basis of the good intentions of the lady sponsor and the brilliance of my good friend, Joey Salcedo. Kaya pag ingatan lang po natin ang paalala ng lahat. Tagalang-galang na ang miyembro ng kongreso, mag-ingat tayo. Baka magamit itong COVID sa kanilang kupit. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Congressman Atienza.
Maraming salamat po, Manulito Atienza of the Buay Partilis, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Partilis One Pacman, Honorable Enrique Pineda, for his interpolation.
The gentleman from the One Pacman Partilis, the Honorable Eric Pineda, you are now here, you are now recognized, you have the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I move to, ah, suspend the session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
The Majority Floor Leader. Session resumed. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to withdraw my earlier motion. Instead, I recognize Congressman Victoria from, ah, from Second District of Tarlac for his interpolation.
The gentleman from the Second District of Tarlac is hereby recognized.
The gentleman from the Second District of Tarlac is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to make more of a manifestation on the Pesa Act in support of our good and esteemed author and sponsor regarding the relevancy and urgency of the National Broadband Plan. Mr. Speaker, first of all, let me commend the tireless efforts of our colleagues behind the significant crucial legislation. The co-chairs of the defeat COVID-19 Committee's economic stimulus cluster, Representatives Joey Salceda, Sharon Garin, Stella Kimbo. Indeed, this bill would not only support our economy that was gravely affected by the COVID-19, but will also become a huge part of our history to serve as a beacon of hope in fighting in times of crisis for our fellow countrymen, whose lives were suddenly drawn to financial difficulties due to the pandemic. Today, I join the August body in reviving economy as I categorically express my support to the Pesa. What we went through and continue to experience right now under the different but equally challenging categories of community quarantine taught us the value of embracing change, that nothing is permanent, and that despite all the anxieties, we could rely on one important thing to go on with our daily lives, and that is the internet. With our intensified need for a fast, reliable, accessible, and affordable internet, our current situation proved us that connectivity is a recurring problem in the country despite the digital age. In 2016, no less than the president himself, President Rodrigo Duterte, emphasized and saw the need for faster broadband. We should develop a national broadband, or the NBP, to accelerate the deployment of fiber optic cables and wireless technologies to improve internet speed. Addressing the problem of internet speed improvement in this country is repeatedly declared as the Duterte Administration's tech priority, focusing on expanding the reach of broadband and internet services. And this bill, Mr. Speaker, no less than Speaker Alan Pireterco Yatano himself, is commendable for its initiative in addressing the national broadband initiative to be integrated in the first draft bill of the new normal. So in response, the Pesa bill has incorporated its, its responsibility. The application and tools to enable life in the new norm are available, often for free, to those who can access the internet. Yet the Philippines and its people cannot fully make use of the internet for the simple reason that our country severely lacks the digital infrastructure needed for the digitalization. And, if I may say and emphasize, the access is only limited to those who have money. The poor households do not have it. Despite that, the internet coverage is limited, quality is poor, signal is unstable, and internet prices, as well as access devices, are sometimes out of reach. The demand for faster internet can be exemplified in the experiences of every Filipino. A grade, a grade-two student by August from Paranaque, whose school density is too high for physical distancing, may be used by August. A recently laid-off tourism worker in Naclan found, can find unemployment opportunity and initial skill sets training in a job mobile app created by the DOL and TESDA, downloading the specific training and getting the test later on. A better agricultural online marketplace for buyers can minimize overproduction and sustain markets with a whole year round of supply. Scenarios like these will abound. Moving forward to the new norm require essential thing, an internet connection in our far, far, most far-flung populations in the country. The present public crisis has shown that there is not only an opportunity, but an urgent need to improve and enhance the, the internet speed and access to the health programs like an application, the telemedicine, or a more e-field health service to the sick Filipinos and all hospitals, both government and private, private hospitals. In order to fully realize the objectives of NBP, we must do two, three, three things. That a bill be passed to establish a cross-sector infrastructure sharing, that the policy, a policy to develop the country's ICT and support telecommunications network. The government has it on its road, the government has it in its toll roads, that the trains that will be done, the, um, the sewerage systems that Metro Manila has, if we can use this as a cost infrastructure sharing. Second, we must incorporate that by this August, we mandated the ICT to incorporate all the private sector capacities that abound already, not for government to build its own system alone for this. And if we do, if they do this, then our targets for August for schools with having higher density possibly can start in where areas there are already networks and fibers installed. And third, the first step that was created is the crucial step that is done today that has the leadership incorporating the needs for the funding for this project. I thank again the sponsors and the well-meaning authors that have shared and done, and gone through the debate and discussion for this. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Congressman App.
Thank you, distinguished gentleman from the Second District of Tarlac, the Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from, from Partilis Gabriela, Honorable Arlyn Brosas, for her interpolation.
The honorable representative from Gabriela Partilis is hereby recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, on to my interpolation. Talaga pong pambihira ang inilalatag na kalagayan ng COVID-19 pandemic dahil bukod sa konkretong banta nito sa kalusugan na marami ay natutulak tayong i-review ang structure ng ekonomi natin sa mga umiiral na interventions ng gobyerno. Kaya, positibo na nagbabalangkas tayo ngayon ng konkretong tugon dito sa Kongreso para isalba ang mga trabaho at sikaping paandarin muli ang lokal na ekonomiya. Dati lagi kami sinasabihan sa mga bayan block na hindi pwedeng masyadong intervention ng gobyerno sa ekonomiya. Kaya andaw ang free market na tumalaw alinsunod sa doktrina ng neoliberalismo. Hindi raw pwedeng stay funded, wage subsidy, halimbawa. Mabuti ngayon, pinag-uusapan na natin ang mga bagay na ito. Ah, magkaganyan man, nice naming tiyakin na ang binabalangkas na comprehensive stimulus package bill ay talagang epektibong magsasalba sa pinakamaraming trabaho at kapuhayan ng maong meron. Mr. Speaker, sa unang bahagi po, nice nating itanong ang hingil sa mask testing. We commend the move of the sponsors to include this in the latest version of the stimulus measure, despite the insistence of, alam niya naman, ang malakanyang, ang palasyo, that mask testing is impossible and ideal. Pinipilit po sate na hindi pwedeng mask testing o marami ang testing kahit pag ginagawa ito sa ibang bansa. Malinaw sa panukalang ito na meron dapat mask testing, kailangan paandarin muli ang ekonomiya. Kaya 'yung section 6 po ng Pesa na nagstate ng 20 billion, meron pong mga ilang katanungan lang doon. Mr. Speaker, um, um, Madam Sponsor, we assume that this is for rapid tests, tama po ba? Ilan individual, kung halimbawa, ang tinatayang matatest batay sa punto ito?
Mr. Speaker, pag sinabi po nating mask testing eh, um, this includes both PCR, pati na rin po ang rapid tests. Basically po, kung ano po ang inindorso ng DOH, eh, 'yan po ang ating tinutukoy sa mask testing. Sa ngayon po, doon sa return-to-work guidelines ng DOH, kasama po doon ang parehong PCR pati rapid test kits, Mr. Speaker.
Ilan po ang assumption ninyo na masasaklaw, no, na matetest nitong pondo na ito? Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, just for costing purposes, costing lang po ito. Um, in other words, indicative lang po, hindi siya definite, dahil ang ating naging approach dito po sa Pesa bill is that the implementing agencies shall be the one to issue the guidelines, no, within 15 days. So, sa ngayon po, again, just for costing purposes, ang inasumpo natin dyan is 10 million workers multiplied by 450 pesos per rapid test kit multiplied by 2. Kasi, ang ayon na rin sa patagaran ng DOH is encourage po nila ang repeat testing para lang po ma-eliminate ang tinatawag po na false negatives. So yun po ang indicative costing po, so 10 million times 450 times 2, that's 9 billion pesos, plus another 1 billion pesos for other expenses, tulad po ng training, dahil napakaimportante po na ang test administrators, whether it's PCR or rapid test kits, would be properly trained, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, itong, um, itong testing po ninyo, kanina binanggit ninyo na may PCR, tama po ba? PCR tests ang gagawin, ah, rapid tests?
Ang, ang sabi po natin is either PCR or rapid test kits ay dapat po saklaw po ng provision na to.
Okay, sa, Madam Sponsor, ginong speaker, nice ko rin itanong kung sa provision na ito for mask testing, ang mga manggagawa at kawanin ang kasalukayang bumabalik sa trabaho sa ilalim ng MC, MEQ at GCQ ay saklaw. Kasama rin po ba dito ang mga frontliners? Itetest din po ba 'yung mga frontliners dito? Madam Sponsor?
Sa ngayon po, sa ngayon po, Mr. Speaker, sa definition ng mask testing ng DOH ay kasama po ang healthcare workers. Meron po silang tatlong category na saklaw ng mask testing. Ang number one po ang 'yung tinatawag na symptomatic, o 'yung may sintomas. Ang number two po ang ang merong history of travel and exposure or contact. At ang number three naman po, kasama po dyan ang healthcare workers.
Kaya po natin na ito ng Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, 'yung kaugnay sa PCR test or rapid tests, dahil alam niya naman po, um, mas gusto natin kung pagpaponto na rin lang tayo ng mga tests, ito po ay sana 'yung mainam na, na PCR tests ang isa gawa. Kaya po 'yan 'yung hinahabol natin, kung wala namang po masyadong cost difference, doon sa ano ay maiging PCR tests na ang gamitin, Madam Sponsor, ginong, ah, Mr. Speaker. And, Mr. Speaker, isa pang tanong kaugnay dito, napansin namin sa ilalim ng panukala ang DILG ang mga nasiwa sa pamamahagi ng test kits. What is the reason behind this, and why can't DOH administer this?
Actually po, Mr. Speaker, um, may responsibility ang parehong DOH at DILG under this provision. Ang sabi po natin ng DOH, ang siyang may responsibilidad na magissue po ng isang disease surveillance protocol, kasama po dyan ang minimum health standards. Pati na rin po ang guidelines, halimbawa po, sa sampling po, sa ating mask testing. Alam naman natin, pag sinasabi natin na mask testing, hindi ibig sabihin 'yan lahat ng Pilipino ay itetest, no? Ang, alam natin dyan is sampling lang po. So 'yan po ay magagaling sa DOH. Ngayon naman po, ang mismo pong pagpapalakad, ang halimbawa, monitoring, ang enforcing, ang paninigurado na ang isang area na high risk ay natetest. Ang pagsisigurado po na ang minimum health standards ay complied with by companies. 'Yan naman po ay, dyan naman po papasok ang local government. So, sa ngayon po, 'yan ang proposal.
So, ah, Madam Sponsor, you know, ah, Mr. Speaker, 'yung dahilan ng pagpili, no, the reason behind kung bakit DILG ay dahil sila ang mga nasiwa or sila ang may kakayanan for now, o kulang ba tayo sa DOH para ito ay magawa ng buong buo? Madam Sponsor, ginong speaker?
Mr. Speaker, that is correct, dahil nababasa naman po natin sa news reports, sila na mismo nagsasabi ang DOH through the spokesperson, na sila na po ay, ah, nakakaranas na po ng overcapacity, the words that they used are the following. They say that their laboratories are choking. So ibig sabihan, ah, wala na, kulang na po ang kanilang kapasidad, kaya kailangan na pong punuan. And ang sa tingin po namin is ang local governments po ang pwedeng pumuno dito sa gap na to.
Ah, thank you, thank you, Madam Sponsor, thank you, Mr. Speaker, doon sa pagsagot, kaugnay sa mask testing, napakalaking abante po nito, no, sa kasalukayang sitwasyon na meron tayo. Kung maipapatupad po talaga 'yung tinatawag nating mask testing, dahil ito po 'yung panawagan ng mga kababaihan at mamamayan natin sa ngayon. At alam po natin, ito talaga 'yung, um, this, ah, dapat nakapremise sa pakundak ng mask testing, 'yung, ah, provide ng mga economic activities natin, specifically po sa vulnerable, vulnerable sectors at mga high-incidence areas na meron tayo ng COVID-19. Kaya po, um, natutuwa kami na merong ganitong, um, uh, measure, no, na, ah, nakalagay, 'yung provision na ito na magkaroon ng mask testing, provided ito po ay magawa talaga, no? Uh, meanwhile, hingil po sa job generation model, kaugnay naman po ng trabaho at kapuhayan. We understand that the bill strives to at least preserve employment levels by introducing labor retention conditionalities in the proposed government interventions. Alam nating, marami ang nadisplace na manggagawa dahil sa ECQ, at dapat na magkaroon ng interventions to stop the bleeding of the workforce. May estimate po ba tayo, ah, Madam Sponsor, na ang magnitude ng job losses na naidulot ng dalawang kuwan na enhanced community quarantine? Estimate po.
Mr. Speaker, sa ngayon po, ang pwedeng basehan ng estimate ay ang survey ng NEDA mismo na tinakbo nila ng April 6 to April 8. Um, at that point in time, 25.4% of the respondent firms said that they had already temporarily laid off workers. And at around that time, Ang Galop International with the PSRC also, um, generated similar results. Ang sa kanila naman, 34% of the respondents said that they had lost their jobs. So yun po ang ineexpect po natin, of course, doon sa survey result na NEDA, inaasahan sana natin na kung meron tayong stimulus package in place, 'yung pong temporarily, temporarily laid off ay hindi sana magiging permanent.
Okay, ah, Madam Sponsor, ah, Mr. Speaker, we understand that this stimulus package means seeks to provide relief to businesses to preserve jobs. 'Yung mamaintain po 'yung jobs nila, ensure 'yung job generation sa mapuntinuyong economic activities amid the pandemic. But we would like to think of job generation in such a way that the government will be the main generator of employment. Halimbawa po, bakit hindi tayong maglaandin ng pondo para sa mas hiring ng DOH at SWT na personnel, halimbawa, no? Ah, kasi, magtest tayo, magkakarantay ng malawakang testing, mabilis dapat ang contact, contact tracing, mabilis ang pamamahagi ng ayuda, ah, dahil health emergency meron tayo, and this is not a public oil crisis. Ah, at ang national government ang nasa best position to be a key job generator along the lines of boosting the public health system and the aid of delivery of our agencies. Pwede po ba yon, kasama po ba yon dito sa stimulus na ito, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, um, ang pilosopiya po dito sa ating panukalang batas is that we should first aspire to retain jobs. So, before we think about creating new jobs, dito muna tayo sa retaining the current jobs, no? Kaya 'yan ang dahilan kung bakit meron po tayong labor retention clauses para sa ating wage subsidies and interest-free loans, as you had correctly pointed out. But in addition to that, kasi alam naman po natin, because of social distancing protocols, marami pong maliliit na negosyo, halimbawa po mga karinderya, na because of social distancing protocols, talaga pong mangangalahati po ang kanila mga customers, in which case, baka mapilitan silang magbawas ng empleyado. So, nakikita po natin na kailangan pong may isang programa nasasalupo sa mga talagang mawawalan ng trabaho. Kaya 'yan ang dahilan po kung bakit, in addition to the wage subsidies that we are proposing, we have also proposed we have also proposed to enhance the existing TUPAD program or the emergency employment program of the government. So ito po ay aligned sa sinasabi ninyo na at this time dapat malaki po ang role na ginagampanan ng ating gobyerno sa paggenerate ng jobs. So itong enhanced TUPAD, dyan po papasok ang job generation responsibility or role ng ating gobyerno. Ang pwede po natin idagdag dyan, kaya po enhanced is that, um, we can create new jobs that are related to the control of the spread of COVID. So pwede po tayong maghire, halimbawa, ng mga maramihang contact tracers para po ma-complement na rin po ang testing na i-expand po natin under the Pesa Bill.
Mr. Speaker, madam sponsor, 'yung kaugnay naman po sa pampublicong transportasyon, um, the proposed measure also provides for assistance to the critically impacted businesses in the transportation industry. Um, may we know kung ano-ano po 'yung sinasabi nating critically impacted businesses sa industriya ng trans, ng transportasyon?
Ang, Mr. Speaker, ang ibig sabihan ng critically impacted sectors would be those non-essential businesses. Ibig sabihan, 'yung mga businesses po na hindi pinayagan mag-operate during the lockdown. And of our economic sectors, 84% po 'yan, so napakarami po. Nagkataon po na isa po sa top five na critically impacted, non-essential sector ay ang transportation. And that's the reason for why we have proposed a separate relief program para sa sektor na 'yan. Um, which specifically, sa tingin ko po, halos lahat po, no, wala po ako maisip sa ngayon na ma-exclude sa land transportation sector po, Mr. Speaker?
Ah, miss, correct me if I'm wrong, madam sponsor, Mr. Speaker, ito ba mainly ay ang airlines, shipping, private land transport companies, yun po ba 'yun lahat?
Um, yes po, um, Mr. Speaker, but remember po, um, may definition po tayo ng critically impacted. So in addition to being a non-essential business, ibig sabihan, ah, discontinued operations during lockdown, dapat meron din pong, um, evidence na sila po as a result of the lockdown ay hindi na po kayang magfulfill ng kanilang financial obligations. So as long as those criteria are satisfied, sila po ay eligible for assistance, dito po sa programa na to.
Kaso, madam speaker, ah, Mr. Speaker, ah, madam sponsor, paano po 'yung utilization ng 70 billion assistance? At saka, ah, may magbebepenepisyo pa po ba dito na mga jeepney drivers, tricycle drivers, pedicab drivers? Na ngayon ay hindi pa rin makabiyahe, makabiyahe at hirap na maumangkop sa sinasabi nating normal?
Mr. Speaker, definitely po, kasama po ang tricycle drivers, jeepney drivers, bus drivers, dahil nga po, ah, malawakan pong impacted ang transportation sector. So yun po 'yung kanina pong ina-explain na talagang ito po ay very inclusive. So as long as you're critically impacted, sakop po kayo. Ang halimbawa po ng relief na available po sa kanila ay emergency credit lines, interest-free loans, meron din po silang fee well subsidies, ah, pati na rin po mga grants para pambayad po sa kanilang fees or regulatory fees. Ang programming po nito, ng perang nakalaan po dito ay, ah, responsibility po ng DOTR, of course, in consultation with the various transportation sector, ah, groups, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, ah, thank you, Mr. Speaker, ah, madam sponsor. Talaga pong kailangan-kailangan at humingi na sa klolo ang ating mga cheaper na hanggang ngayon, ano, wala pa ring inuuwi kita sa kanilang pamilya. Dagdag pa rito, nag-aalala rin sila, ah, baka gamitin 'yung pandemya para ituloy 'yung GTPs out na tinatawag at pagpasok ng mga electric vehicles na, ah, ano, ano, sinasabi na requirements ng IATF. I do hope that we can also contemplate a complete assistance to them in the form of cash grants at income subsidies sa final version po ninyo ng stimulus bill. Madam sponsor, sa kaugnay na lang po sa mga panghuli ay 'yung sa, ah, hingil sa Enhanced BBD. Ito po 'yung, ah, napansin po namin sa latest version po ng stimulus bill, kasama sa Enhanced Build, 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 ang construction, renovation, and improvement of police and military facilities, supposedly to ensure social distancing. Ano po ang rationale behind ito? Ah, gusto po naming malinawan, because we know there is an annual AFP modernization program which should supposedly accommodate the cost of constructing military facilities. Dinagdagan din ang pondo ng PNP ngayong taon para sa personnel at capital outlay. Kaya po mataas 'yung kanilang, um, budget. Why do we need to include these items in this stimulus package? Ano po ang kinalaman ng police at military facilities sa layuning pagayuda sa mga negosyo at mamamayan? Madam sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, base na rin sa ating karanasan, nakita naman po natin ah, na importanteng-importante po ang kapulisan at ang militar, lalong-lalo na po sa border control. Ang border control po ay isang importanteng element, element sa ating pagcontrol po ng pandemya. So ang dahilan po nitong, 'yan po ang dahilan kung bakit meron po tayong provision para masigurado po, naprotektado po ang ating kapulisan at militar'y personal, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, madam sponsor, ah, nais namin mag-forward siguro ng maaaring mga suporta pa na po pwede, no, hindi lang ito dahil alam po namin, hindi naman, hindi naman lang public order and safety ang, hindi public order and safety ang usapin dito, lalong-lalo na pinag-usapan natin ang stimulus package bill. Nais po sa namin, namin mag-forward na sana 'yung contribution natin to long-term productivity gains, especially in terms of industrial science and technologies, yun po 'yung ating pagtunan, contribution to the environmental sustainability, especially in using promoting environmentally friendly production processes. Yun po 'yung paglaanan. Contribution to long-term stability and self-reliance, especially in terms of food, self-sufficiency and domestic industrial capacity. Kaya po kami na ang lahat po ng ito ay siyempre, ah, sa, nasa kritirya din ng pagrespeto sa karapatan ng mga manggagawa o workforce rights. So yun po 'yung mga maganda pong pwedeng, ano, no, ah, iconsidera sa stimulus package bill na ito. Kaya po, ah, gusto namin na reiterate, again, ano, 'yung suporta sa agriculture dahil alam niyo naman po, kung irerehash din lang natin 'yung nakaraan natin na mga policies for agriculture like 'yung pag-iimport ng bigas, eh, ngayon po tinatamaan na 'yung bigas natin ngayon, matindi na 'yung ating pangangailangan. Ah, at natural lamang na magkakaroon talaga tayo ng protectionism at hindi tayo mag-iimport ng bigas mula sa ibang bansa at tayo ay bibili sa ating mga magsasaka ng kanilang produce. So, kapag hindi po magbabago 'yung mga ganong mga policies, eh, ah, sa tingin po namin, ah, halimbawa, for example, 'yung, 'yung rise neutralization law, ah, 'yan po talaga ay tinututunan ng mga magsasaka at ayaw talaga ng mga magsasaka hanggang sa kasagutan ko 'yan dahil kahit na, ah, matindi 'yung epekto sa kanila ng mga ito. Kaya kailangan-kailangan din nila ng direct assistance, hindi lang po, 'yung, napansin ko po 'yung ano, no? Um, 'yung inyong, 'yung inyong assistance ay halos lahat ay, um, credit. Ano po, may mga credit on, ano ba 'yan? Sa usapin ng, ah, mas marami, 'yung credit, super aid, sa, sa assistance para po sa mga anyway, yun po, ah, mas, mas credit po ito at hindi direct assistance sa ating mga magsasaka. Plus the fact na hanggang ngayon po, nangangailangan pa ng tulong ang ating mga magsasaka para sa kanilang produksyon sa kasalukuyan. So yun po, agriculture, industrial, maganda po na magkaroon din talaga ng, ng makapapreate, no? Ng, ng trabaho sa agro-industri sa kasalukuyan. Maraming salamat, madam sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, marami pong salamat, ah, ginangrepresentante ng Gabriela, Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from Port District of Quezon, Honorable Angelina Tan, for her interpolation.
The hard-working chairperson of the Committee on Health and the lady from, ah, charming lady from Quezon Province is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon. Ah, just a short manifestation, Mr. Speaker. First, I would like to thank the Defeat COVID-19 Committees on Economic Stimulus for, ah, providing a relief to our OFWs. I'd like to thank your effort and initiative on that, specifically on the problem on premium contribution, the increase on contributions pending the convening of the Oversight Committee on UHC next month. Ah, second, ah, of course, I fully support the effort of the House to ramp up the country's COVID-19 testing capacity. Ah, consequently, I would like to inform the this August chamber that the Health Response Cluster of the DCC has deliberated and approved ah, the bill of our Deputy Senior Minority Leader, Representative Janet Garin, on, ah, the, ah, mandatory testing of, ah, PCR, no? This will help us stop the, ah, COVID-19 transmission. And aligned with this, I think there's an ongoing talk on the Project ARC wherein the two tests, I think the RDT and, ah, the PCR will be combined. So I hope that, ah, this bill will be, ah, approved the soonest possible so that we'll be able to address the missing gaps on testing. Congratulations to the Subcommittee on Economic Stimulus. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, lady from Quezon, the Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from Kabataan Partilis, Honorable Sarah Elago, for her interpolation.
The very conscientious lady from Kabataan Partilis is hereby recognized.
Maraming salamat, ginong speaker. This representation from Kabataan Partilis has called for the inclusion of an education emergency relief fund to aid students, faculty, education support personnel, and education institutions who are in distress. Thus, I'd like to seek clarification on Section 9 pertaining to educational subsidy to students. Will the honorable sponsor be open to interpolation, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Ginong speaker, ano po ang pagkakaiba ng section, ng letter A under Section 9? That's line 13 of page 11 to, ah, letter B, no, ah, line 9 of page 12. Both are emergency subsidies to COVID-19 impacted students in private higher education institutions. And both, as mentioned earlier during the interpolation of Congresswoman Franz Castro, both will offer, no, 7,500 assistance to students who are not listed in the listahanan of DSWD. So, ano po ang magiging difference? Ah, kung pareho namang, ah, pinapalawig lang nito, ang coverage ng TES. Tama po, Mr. Speaker, the, ah, these two provisions seem to be, ah, they seem to be the same, but actually may konting new ones po. Doon po sa Section 9, letter A, ang tinutukoy po natin dito ay ang mga TES eligible students. Ngunit po, hindi sila nakatanggap ng assistance dahil po sila ay hindi kasama sa listahanan. So 'yan po ang dahilan kung bakit, ah, hindi sila nasakop or nakatanggap ng TES subsidy. So ang ginagawa po ng Section 9A is to include them. Ang, ah, Section 9B naman would refer to those na hindi qualified sa TES in the first place. So again, ang gusto po natin is lumawak ang coverage ng subsidy na to. So, ang napansin niyo po na observation na bakit magkaiba ang number? Napaliwanag na po kanina ni Congresswoman Garin na 'yan po ay typo lamang at kailangan po pareho pong 7,500 ang matatanggap ng dalawang sets ng students na to. Mr. Speaker?
Ang pagkakaiba, ginong speaker, ang una po ay para doon sa mga financially disadvantaged students who are currently eligible under the TES of the Universal Access to Quality tertiary Education Law. And then the next section would cover those who are affected, no, by the COVID-19 crisis, no, whose parents or who themselves are affected, no, by loss of jobs or loss of livelihood.
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker, in other words, why Section 9A would be those that already needed help even before COVID, whereas in Section 9B, as a result of COVID and as a result of the loss in income of their parents, ay sila po ngayon ay nangangailangan na rin po ng tulong.
Ginong speaker, nakalagay dito maximum of 7,500 pesos. So what would be the minimum or, ah, assistance to students? And who will determine, ah, what will be the parameters on determining, no, the, ah, assistance to students?
Ultimately, Mr. Speaker, ang magdetermin po ng final amount would be CHED. But ang, itong, ito pong 7,500 na naka-indicate po dito, ay estimate lang po namin, ang naging parameter po talaga natin dito is coverage. So, ang, ah, we chose the number such that, ah, useful naman 'yung amount, hindi naman po pwedeng sobrang liit na hindi siya impactful, but at the same time, we needed to balance that with the need to cover as many students as possible.
Mr. Speaker, ah, we are allocating about 18 billion for this to cover a maximum of 7,500 subsidy per student for private higher education institutions. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
But, ah, Mr. Speaker, um, CHED records shows as of August 8, 2019, we only have about 1.7 million students in private higher education institutions. Ah, kung, ah, titignan po natin, ang 18 billion po maaari na siyang maka-cover ng 2.4 billion na may sobra pong 700,000 na para sa 700,000 students. At yun po ay nakabatay pa sa maximum, no, 7,500 kada estudyante. So bakit po sobra-sobra ito at meron po tayong unaccounted na 700,000 students?
Mr. Speaker, magkaiba po ang datos na hawak namin. Ah, pareho po tayo dun sa 1.7 million, but that is the estimate for those that are not currently covered by the TES. But we have an additional estimate of 1.3 million students that are currently covered by TES and these are the private students, so for a total of 3 million. So ito pong, ah, amounts na nakabanggit dito, which is 18 billion plus 9 billion, which we want to be released immediately, so in other words appropriated na po 'yan. And then the additional appropriation of 15 billion would refer po to these total of 3 million students.
Mr. Speaker, can the honorable sponsor share to us, no, the breakdown of the number of students, no?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
For SUC, LUC, and private institutions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
If the, kung meron po tayong tatlong million para sa private school, ilan po ang total enrollment sa SUCs?
Sandali lang po. Kung tama ang akin naalala, I think it's 3.2. Kung tama ang akin naalala, I think it's 3.2.
Nasa 3.2?
3.2 million.
Ginoong Speaker, maari pong balikan ang ating sponsor itong ating bilang dahil ang nakalagay po sa CHED website, but this is as of August 8, 2019, maaring hindi pa po mapasok 'yung mga magbubukas na mga eskwela ng August o 'yung academic calendar nila start by August. Ang nakalagay po kasi sa kanilang record, batay po sa website. I just accessed this today. For SUCs, we have a total number of 1.33 million students. For local universities and colleges, about 211,000. For private schools, we have 1.693 million. And for other government-run institutions, we have about 5,236. So ang concern ko lang dito, Ginoong Speaker, kung susumahin po natin 18 billion, and then we also have 9 billion, so that's 18 billion, dagdag pa doon sa TES na 9 billion na hindi pa narirelease, ang total po ng pwede nitong mabigyan ng subsidy na mga estudyante ay nasa 3.6 million na sobra-sobra na po sa bilang ng mga estudyante na nakalista sa website ng Commission on Higher Education. Ginoong Speaker, maari po bang tanungin ang ating sponsor kung bakit po meron pang 9 billion na hindi nailalabas na pondo para sa tertiary education subsidy noong fiscal year 2019?
Mr. Speaker, well, una sa lahat po, again, we reiterate that we are committed to being data-driven. So to the extent po na merong discrepancies sa data po namin at sa data po ninyo, magandang we exchange notes, and of course, we are very open to adjusting if necessary. So that's the first po. Number two, ang 9 billion po dito are unreleased funds that were appropriated in 2019. So, maraming dahilan kung bakit 'yan ay unreleased. Ang isa pong dahilan dyan is because of 'yung tinatawag na geographic prioritization. Ibig sabihin, 'yung mga estudyante na gusto sana mag-aral sa isang private school at siya ay TES-qualified pero hindi siya nakatanggap ng TES subsidy dahil lamang po may SUC na present po sa kanyang lugar. So ito 'yung mga dahilan kung bakit nagkaroon po ng mga unreleased funds. So ang sinasabi po natin, sana tanggalin natin muna ang geographic prioritization na 'yan, isuspend na muna natin 'yan. Ang pinakamabuti sa lahat is, we have to make sure that everyone is in school.
Ginoong Speaker, as ang ayon po tayo na dapat nating bigyan ng ayuda, ng lahat ng pwede nating ibigay na financial assistance sa ating mga estudyante, lalong-lalo na po ang apektado ng kawalan ng kabuhayan, ng trabaho, ng kita sa gitna ng isang krisis. Ngunit, tayo po ay nababahala sa lake ng siyam na billion na hindi po naibigay sa taong 2019 dahil, Ginoong Speaker, ang tertiary education subsidy na hindi lamang po 'yan para sa pambayad ng tuition and other school fees para sa private schools, para po sa mga mag-aapply. Kundi, ang TES po, ipinasarin po ng kongresong ito, maari po 'yang gamitin para sa pambili ng laptop, pambili ng gadget na kinakailangan sa partikular na kurso. Ang TES din po ay pwede rin napambayad sa mga dormitories, sa pagkain, sa daily allowances, at iba pa pong mga pangangailangan ng mga estudyante. Kaya 'yung siyam na billion na nilaan po ng kongreso na ito upang maabot dun sa mga pinaka-nangangailangan, lalong-lalo na po, those who are studying away from home. Kailangan-kailangan po nila ng pandagdag na baon o marami po dyan ay nakaasa lamang doon sa binibigay ng pamahalaan na mga financial assistance. Siyam na billion po 'yung hindi naibigay sa mga estudyanteng layon sanang naabot na nito ng taong 2019. Ginoong Speaker, hayaan niyo po kung magpunta naman doon sa pangalamang seksyon ng subsidy para sa mga estudyante. Ito po 'yung para sa mga wala sa listahanan ng DSWD at hindi rin po qualified na mga recipients ng tertiary education subsidy sa ilalim po ng Republic Act 10931, 'yung UAQTE. Kung babalikan nga po natin, ito rin ay magbibigay ng 7,500 ang kada estudyante. So, again, Ginoong Speaker, tayo naman po ay nagagalak sa binigay na commitment ng sponsor na sila po ay handang mag-adjust, batay sa bilang. Batay sa bilang na sinasabi, sa bilang na nakuha po natin mula sa CHED at gayon din sa datos na hawak nila dahil po kung hindi natin ito babaguhin, na sobra-sobra na nga po 'yung nandun sa unang package for financial subsidy. Meron pa pong another billions of pesos na para po sa financial assistance. So, eh kung meron naman po tayong handang mailaan na ganito kalaki na pondo, bakit hindi po natin doblehin ang 7,500? Bakit hindi po natin gawing 15,000? Anyway, the average tuition in private higher education institutions amount to about 20,000 to 25,000 per semester. So, Ginoong Speaker, this will only cover the second semester of the academic year 2019-2020, right? Hindi po nito covered 'yung susunod na semestre. So, bakit hindi po natin, kung hindi man natin doblehin, kung sa semestre na itong covered na, na hindi, wala pang closure ang maraming estudyante dahil hindi pa po tapos ang kanilang academic term, bakit hindi po natin isama na rin 'yung susunod na term, susunod na semestre para sa susunod na academic year 2020-2021?
Mr. Speaker, una sa lahat, maganda 'yung panukala na baka pwedeng isama ang TES eligible na wala naman sa listahanan. Dahil nga po, sa ngayon po, sa totoo lang po, ang listahan na 'yan ay talagang kailangan ng i-update dahil nga sa dami ng dumami po ang poor families natin dahil nga po sa kawalan ng kita in the last three months. So talagang kailangan na talagang i-update ang listahan na 'yan. So, ang maganda pong gawin is that the CHED and the DSWD would come together and would agree on a list, a more inclusive list na para po matulungan natin ang mga estudyante po natin na talaga pong nangangailangan. And number two po, 'yung pong sa, sana po pwede nating dagdagan ang 7,500. Unfortunately po, again, tulad ng sinabi ng The Greatest Showman, it is never enough. 'Yun po ang problema dito. At the end of the day, kulang talaga ang ating resources. So kung pwede sanang dagdagan 'yan, why not? Kaya nga lang po, ang pagprogram po natin ng lahat ng funds, 'yung 583 billion na pinopropose po natin for 2020, ang naging challenge po 'yan is how to apportion that across the various programs para sigurado po, we are able to help as many sectors as we can. Mr. Speaker.
Ginoong Speaker, tungkol po dun sa, para naman sa ating elementary, junior high schools hanggang po sa senior high school, meron po tayong ilalaan na 4,000 na subsidy. Bukod pa po ito dun sa mga covered na ng mga, ng GASP, ESE, yes. So, ilan po sa inyong tansya ang covered na mga estudyante na ito?
Okay, sandali lang po. Ang estimate po natin, jaan sa 15 billion, which includes both tertiary and K to 12 students, would be 1.2 million for elementary, 343,000 for junior high school, and 53,000 for senior high school. 'Yan po ang aming estimate po.
Again, Ginoong Speaker, kung meron po tayong kailangan baguhin dun sa competition natin pagdating sa tertiary, pwede rin natin na mailagay siya para dun sa grade school at senior high school para mas maka-cover pa ng mas maraming estudyante. Ngayon, Ginoong Speaker, meron po tayong subsidy sa mga estudyante, pero hindi naman po ito talaga mapupunta sa mga estudyante. Hindi nila babayaran ng eskwelahan. Ito po ay diretso sa private education institutions. Tama po?
Ang pag-disbursed po goes to the school. So pagdating sa disbursement, it goes directly to the school. Pero for the account of every student. So, ang beneficiary talaga is really the individual student, except that it's directly disbursed to the school. Ito po 'yung tinatawag na payak system. At 'yan din po ang gagamitin natin for this particular provision, Mr. Speaker.
Ginoong, as speaker, I have the authors considered, including a provision here that education institutions must refund unused fees from their collection of academic year 2019-2020 since tutulong na rin po ang gobyerno, mababawasan na po ng 7,500 ang kada account ng kada estudyante. At meron din po silang mga hindi nagamit na mga fees already collected from students because, Mr. Speaker, online classes don't have the same value as residential learning. Students paid for on-campus learning. They paid for the experiential learning. They get from collaborative discussion in their classroom. 'Yung facilities po, library, at marami pang iba. So, napag-usapan niyo po ba ito? At isa po itong maari pa nating maidagdag dito. Dagdag sa tulong po natin sa mga estudyante, bakit hindi rin po natin nadagdagan pa para meron ding dagdag na tulong dun sa pamilya ng mga apektado po ng COVID-19 crisis?
Mr. Speaker, maganda pong punto ang ni-race ni Congresswoman Ilago. Ayon na rin po sa consultation namin sa mga private schools, ang sabi po nila is they are already waiving itong other fees. Dahil nga po, alam naman po natin na kung mag-o-online classes tayo, eh definitely ang overhead costs ng mga schools ay maiiba, diba? So ang sabi nila, kung to the extent na certain costs cannot be avoided, eh willing naman po silang huwag na pong ipass on 'yung costs na 'yan to the students.
Ginoong Speaker, hindi ba natin 'yun dapat ditong mailagay? Para po matiyak na lahat po ng mga eskwelahan ay susundin ang ganoong patakaran, which is just fair, Mr. Speaker. Kasi, ang apektado po ng krisis, hindi lang naman ang mga eskwelahan kundi ang ating mga learners, ang kanilang mga magulang, ganun din po ang mga teachers. Baka po mainam na baka pagdagdag tayo ng provision ng accountability then and transparency on the part of the education institutions since 'yung mga hindi po nila nagastos, dapat po maibalikan sa mga estudyante. Naintindahan po natin na they had to continue paying for compensation of our teachers, our education support personnel. Ngunit, ang sinasabi po natin dito, 'yung mga hindi po talaga ginamit na nakolekta ng mga fees, halimbawa, Ginoong Speaker, 'yung mga supplies sa mga laboratory o 'yung mga equipment na hindi naman talaga nagamit, et cetera, pwede po natin na maglagay ng probesyon para dun, Ginoong Speaker, total. Ang makakatulong po sa estudyante, makakatulong din po sa eskwelahan. Imbes na hindi po si, hindi makabayad 'yung estudyante, ito na po, na pumapasok ang gobyerno. The government is intervening to ensure that they get to have that a portion of their expected income for the academic year.
Mr. Speaker, maganda po ang recommendation, pero baka po ang pwede na lang po natin gawin, baka mas effective pa, would be to just implement this by way of guidelines to payak. 'Yan din po ay isang alternative way of achieving the same objective, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, can we get the commitment of the honorable sponsors that they will follow through on this pledge? On waiving unused fees, refunding unused fees from a private education institutions? And ensuring that there's transparency in terms of a collection of tuition and other school fees?
Mr. Speaker, baka ang pwede po natin gawin is pwede niyo pong idraft ang guidelines at 'yan naman po eh re-review po ng committee, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, handa naman po na tumulong mag-draft at pamunuan ng Portilis ng Kabataan ang pagdag draft ng guidelines dito. Pero, ang magiging magandang balita rin po sa mga pamilya, sa mga learners natin, ay 'yung commitment ng kongreso na ito. Natitiyakin po natin na 'yung mga nakolekta sa kanila na hindi naman nagamit ay makakabalik rin sa kanila.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And lastly, Mr. Speaker, kaugnay din po 'yan. Ang papayagan po ba natin na magtaas ng tuition and other school fees ang mga eskwelahan para sa taong 2020 hanggang 2021? Kasi po, nagpasanap po 'yan ang mga application itong February. Approbado na 'yan sa mga regional offices by April 15. Na sa oras po na ito, or sa buwan na ito, anire-review na 'yan ang National Office ng Commission on Higher Education. Isasama po ba natin dito bilang suporta sa mga quarantined families na nasa gitna ng krisis, natiyakin na hindi po maipapasa naman sa mga pamilya 'yung burden po ng tuition and other school fees?
Mr. Speaker, meron po tayong isang provision dito, which is not in Section 9, but it's in Section 28, where we have socioeconomic policy measures. And there's a provision that says all sector regulators with a price and fee regulation mandate shall review existing pricing and payment policies. So, lahat po ng regulators, so regulators also of schools, would have to review tuition fees. So, dyan po. So we have covered that particular concern, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat, Ginoong Speaker. Ang representasyon po na ito ay titiyakin na magiging aktibo ang mga kabataan dyan sa regulasyon ng tuition and other school fees sa ating mga eskwelahan. Dahil po, Ginoong Speaker, apektado rin po 'yung mga scholars dito na mga atleta at mga performers, 'yung mga artista natin sa mga universities and colleges dahil po sa mga kanselado na mga sporting events at mga talent competitions, 'yung mga komperensya na dapat kung saan po sila magko-compete overseas ay hindi na po matutuloy. Ito po ay nakaapekto o makakaapekto sa kanilang scholarships. Kaya po, Ginoong Speaker, sa tama pong panahon, ang representasyon na ito ay magpapanukala ng mga dagdag provision, para po sa proteksyon ng mga scholars at para po matiyak na hindi maipapasa sa mga estudyante ang impact ng COVID-19 na nararanasan ngayon ng mga eskwelahan. Again, ang tayo po ay makikipagtulungan rin upang matiyak na 'yung package para sa relief sa panahon ng isang public health emergency. Matutulungan 'yung mga estudyante, mga guro, support personnel. Gayon din po 'yung mga apektadong-apektadong mga eskwelahan na may banta na rin ng pagsasara. Ngunit, kailangan din po nating tignan, isa po ito sa mga proposal din po namin na pwede po nating silipin 'yung mga malalaking eskwelahan na pwede po nating silipin 'yung mga malalaking eskwelahan na billion-billion po, o nasa million ang mga kinikita. Kumaaari po tayong magbuo ng solidarity fund for education na matulungan po nila 'yung mga mas maliliit na mga private schools na mag-survive sa krisis ng COVID-19. Kaya, Ong Speaker, hangad po ng representasyon na ito, na matugunan natin ang mga issues at concerns na ito sa edukasyon. Dagdag po lamang, sana po pwede rin natin iconsider 'yung promotion para sa current na academic term sa lahat ng mga estudyante. Ang circumstance po ng pandemi ko ay dapat nakikita rin natin sa mga report card at sa grading. Ngunit sa kasalukuyan, marami pa pong dumadaing na magpasahangga ngayon po ay may banta sa kanila ng walang kasiguraduhan ang kanilang graduation o ang pagpapatuloy nila ng pag-aaral dahil nagbago ang learning, ang policy, pero hindi pa po nagkakaroon ng adjustment sa grading sa mga estudyante. Ang representasyon po na ito ay nananawagan na ang edukasyon ay karapatan at dapat po natin tong maipagtanggol, Ong Speaker. Maraming salamat.
Maraming salamat din po sa inyo. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Juan Pacman, Portiles, Honorable Enrique Pineda for his interpolation.
The debonair representative of Juan Pacman is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want to make a short proclamation in support of the Philippine Economic Stimulus Act, or the Pesa Bill. Mr. Speaker, my distinguished colleagues, good afternoon. I hope that everyone is in good health. We are in difficult times now. Social distancing, wearing masks, and virtual meetings are the new norm. I just concluded my second Virtual Labor Committee hearing a while ago. And we had a long discussion with the secretary himself, Secretary Bellio. And I asked him his prediction in case of a worst-case scenario. Meaning to say, there will be no vaccine available by the end of 2021. And he was very candid enough to tell the committee that that is the case. At least about 5 to 10 million of our workers will lose their jobs. And as such, our workers will be the most critically hit by this pandemic. Even under the general community quarantine, not all businesses are allowed to resume. And because of the principle of no work, no pay, most employees have no income during these times. Most are also employed by MSMEs, which are experiencing losses and may already be in danger of closing down permanently. Many may find themselves without unemployment when all of this is over. That is why the government has to step in. The Department of Labor and Employment, or DOLE, implemented programs like the Camp, TUPAD, to provide relief to our local workers, and ACHAP to provide one-time assistance to our OFWs. Which according to the secretary, towards by the end of this year, we may have about close to 700,000 or 800,000 workers repatriated, or will lose their jobs completely. With the impacts of our workers severely affected by the pandemic, the DOLE ran out of funds and not everyone that applied was given assistance. While the Department of Finance is implementing the Small Business Wage Subsidy Program, with 51 billion allotted to it, such program is unsustainable in the long term. We need permanent sustainable solutions, Mr. Speaker. We need to jump-start the economy. Most importantly, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, we need to provide job security. I believe that the economic reliefs in the Pesa Bill will help start our economy again, while providing employment security to our workers by incentivizing companies with wage subsidies for a specific time. It also provides wage subsidies to the self-employed and OFWs. Making easy and affordable loans granted by the government to MSMEs will also contribute to job securities. What the Pesa Bill provides are good measures to help the economy. Everyone will be adjusting to the new normal soon. We should give concern to workers and do whatever we can for their welfare. Workers need to feel secure, not just with their health, but also with their employment and source of income. This of course includes keeping their employers' companies afloat, which is why we need an effective and well-studied economic stimulus policy. We need to provide aid to employers, including the freelancers. Thus, I believe that the Pesa Bill is considerably our best solution for the country for now. As the Chairman of the House Committee on Labor and Employment, I wholly support the Pesa Bill and hope for its passage at the soonest possible time. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentleman from Juan Pacman, the Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Portiles Bayan Munha, Honorable Ferdinand Gaitip for his interpolation.
The gentleman from Bayan Munha is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Chair. Maraming salamat sa ating sponsors. Sa magandang hapon. May nagsabi na tayo daw ay "we are all in the same boat", pero may nabasa akong isang nagsabi. He disagreed. Sabi niya, "we are not in the same boat". May iba nakasakay sa mas magagara, mas matitibay na mga barko, bangka. Habang iba naman ay nakasakay sa limsi, mga ra, na napakadaling dubog. Pero sabi niya, "we are all facing the same stone". Kung kaya dito sa unprecedented na pandemic na COVID-19, tama lamang na tayo bilang mga taong gobyerno ay gumawa ng konkretong hakbang para matulungan 'yung mga nakasakay sa mga bansa, 'yung nakasakay sa mga malilita bangka. 'Yung mga paunting adon lamang ay dudubog na. At hindi katatakka na ng binuo 'yung Bayanihan Tilas One Act. Evidently, majority ng mamamayang Pilipino ay nandito sa maliitabanghang dito. At sabi nga sa datos, 18 million households or families out of the 2021 million families sa buong Pilipinas, sila 'yung kailangan bigyan ng ayuda sa panahon ng pandemic. Kaya, madam sponsor, paintulutan niyo ba ako mag-post ang ilang questions hind sa pinapanukalang Pesa Bill?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Salamat, Mrs. Sponsor. Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker. Partikularo sa mga, lalong pinakabulderable sa panahon ng bilubyong ito, pag-uusapan, gusto ko sanang tanungin, ay 'yung buti na rin lang na una 'yung aming tapit-tapit agang chairperson ng Committee on Labor, na ito ang talagang dapat bigyan ng pinakamalaking ayuda sa panahon ng COVID-19. Partikular sa suporta sa ating mga manggagawa. Sa Section 7, page 11, binabanggit dito 'yung kapalit noon sa Camp o 'yung COVID Assistance or Measures Program, at ito 'yung wage subsidies. Tama po ba 'yun, madam sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Napansin ko lamang na doon sa pinapanukala, nakasaad po dito, the wage subsidy shall cover the basic salary cost of the regular rank-and-file employees only and shall include, exclude, sorry, the senior executive officers of the relevant business entities. Positibo naman na 'yung mga nakakaahon na, 'yung mga malalaki ang sahod, sweldo, pilipisyo ay hindi na kailangan bigyan ng subsidiyo. Pero 'yung mga nasa malilita bangka, 'yung malilita sa bansa, 'yung mga manggagawa, sila lang ang pangunahin bibigyan ng ayuda. Pero ang tanong ko, bakit regular rank-and-file employees lamang habang napakalaking bilang ng ating mga manggagawa ngayon ay tinatawag na nasa precarious o 'yung mga bulderable o 'yung mga tinatawag na contractual? Five-five-five, casual, job order, contract of service na bumibili lang ng 7 to 10 billion Filipinos na tinuturing kontraktor na manggagawa? Hindi ba sila saklaw? Itong programa sa ilalim ng Pesa, Mr. Speaker, madam sponsor?
Mr. Speaker, sila po ay saklaw ng ating proposed wage subsidies sa ilalim ng Section 7. Ang sinasabi po dito sa Section 7, it would be the rank-and-file employees who will be covered. At hindi tayo gumawa ng distinction dito as to whether contractual or permanent. So ibig sabihin po, whether permanent or contractual ay kasama po.
Ah, salamat sa clarification. Pero, madam sponsor, 'yan ang pinakabonog kontensyon ng maraming, ng usapin ngayon sa usapin ng paggawa. 'Yung sinasabing kawalan ng, kumbaga sa Facebook, "not in a relationship", no employee-employer relationship. Eh, dito nilinaw eh, rank-and-file employees. Merong, may relationship, merong labor manage, labor, labor management relationship. Pero dito, sin, uh, define na 'yung rank-and-file employees lamang. So, kilakabahan ang kinatawang ito na we will exclude a large portion of those workers who are not considered employees. So, meron bang pagtatangi na rank-and-file employees lamang ang saklaw? O ang nais ba talaga ay magbigyan ng solusyon ang lahat ang ating mga manggagawa? Lahat ang labor force, lahat ang working class sa Pilipinas, ah, missus, madam sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Magandang pagkakataon na linawin po 'yan. Ang intensyon po natin ay saklawin po lahat. No? As long as, ito nga po, ang salary shall not exceed 15,000 pesos. Pero siguro po, baka ang kailangan pong gawin dito is linawin 'yung word na employee. Baka imbes na employee ay gamitin na lang natin worker para mas maliwanag po na kahit na 'yung pong walang employer-employer relationship ay sakop po, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming-maraming salamat sa clarification, madam sponsor. Sapagat tulad na nabanggit ng ating na unang nag-interpolate, ito 'yung ilan sa marami nating issue ng ating mga manggagawa. Ikalwang katanungan, madam sponsor. Nabanggit niyo kanina sa pagsagot sa ating isang ang interpolator. At tama po ba na ang layuni rin ng Pesa ay para sa employment retention? Tama po ba 'yun, madam sponsor?
Tama po 'yun, Mr. Speaker. 'Yan ang primary purpose po natin, to protect the worker from the risk of layoffs po, Mr. Speaker.
Salamat po. Kung gayon, natatakka lang ang kinatawang ito. Sa same article, sa Section 7, ay may proviso, may proviso. Sa Section 7, page 11, letter A, item 4. For the duration of the subsidy, a nonessential business entity must retain such number of employees or workers in proportion to the percentage of wage subsidy the basic salary cost as offered under this section. However, ilagay niyo po, excluding those employees whose employment are terminated for just causes provided for under the Labor Code of the Philippines and those employees who voluntarily terminated their employment and taking into account the limitation on work arrangements prescribed under COVID-19 health and social distancing standards. Hindi lingit sa ating kalaman na ngayon pa lamang ay maraming manggagawa ay hindi na makabalik sa kanilang pagawaan, hindi na makabalik sa mga empresa, hindi na makabalik sa mga opisina dahil sa kawalan ng transportasyon, dahil sa kakulangan ng mga paraan para makabalik sa trabaho. At merong ilan sa kanila ay napilitan ang either possibly matresine o matanggal, hindi dahil sa kagustuhan nila, kundi dahil sa circumstance. Pag nilagay natin itong proviso na 'to, hindi po ba binubuksan natin 'yung isang malaking loophole para magtanggal na mga manggagawa ginagamit in COVID-19 as an excuse to reduce, not to retain, but to reduce employment currently affected by the COVID-19, madam sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
So, Mr. Speaker, salamat po sa observation ninyo of the possible ways na masirkumvent po ang mga provisions dito. 'Yan naman clearly ay hindi po natin intention. Ang dahilan po kung bakit po natin tinanggal dito o in-exclude ang, halimbawa, voluntarily leaving their jobs or those that were terminated for cause, is para naman po, ay hindi rin naman po unfair doon po sa employer, diba nga po? Dahil kung kailangan po nila, halimbawa, to retain 75% of their workers dahil sila po ay tumanggap ng 75% wage subsidies, eh, unfair naman po kung isama pa rin dun sa base number of employees, eh, 'yung pong those who voluntarily left. So, 'yun ang naging intention po kung bakit na isama po 'yan. Pero ang pwede po natin gawin is we can leave this as a specific guideline na ang DOLE na po ang magde-decide kung ano po ang magandang gawin po dito, Mr. Speaker.
Hindi reassuring 'yun, madam sponsor, esitama kay lang lamang naglabas ang Department of Labor and Employment ng Order Number 17, na sa esensya ay nirereiterate 'yung ganito ngang policy na maaring magtanggal, bunga na nga rin ang epekto ng COVID-19. Hindi lang 'yan. Doon sa same order, sinasabi 'yung guidelines regarding paano i-a-adjust daw ang sweldo ng mga manggagawa. Obviously, not to increase the salaries, but because of the effect of work, various changes in work arrangements, lesser hours of work, and others, ang direksyon, hindi pa nga palaki ng sweldo na kailangan na kailangan lalo na sa panahon ng COVID-19. At kahit nakaraan pa man, pero ngayon, ito pa 'yung sinusulo ngayon ng Department of Labor and Employment. Ang tutulungan, hindi 'yung manggagawa. Ang tutulungan ay 'yung mga kapitalista. Papano natin ma-assure na hindi magkakaroon ng ganitong sitwasyon na maraming manggagawa ang matatanggal? Hindi dahil sa kagustuhan nila, kundi bunga na nga rin ang epekto ng COVID-19. Hindi ba pwedeng tanggalin na natin 'yung proviso na proviso na 'to para maprotektahan 'yung mga manggagawa mismo sa gobyerno nga? Sa ating mga job orders at contact of service, ay, merong, nilabas ang Civil Service Commission na hindi necessarily dapat na sa frontline sila. Kung hindi dapat nga, i-retain pa rin sila lalo na sa panahon ng COVID-19. Na nangangailangan sila ng tulong. Hindi kaya't, hindi ito ang layuni ng Pesa na job retention, na employment retention? Kung hindi employment reduction, madam speaker? Um, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor, sorry.
Ang ah, pangunahing layunin talaga ng pesa at uulitin po namin ah, paulit-ulit, no? Is really labor retention, which is why most of the interventions that are proposed here would really have that ah, condition. Hindi lang po sa wage subsidies, pero pati na rin po sa interest-free loans. Um, kung kayo po ay merong magandang sugestyon, no, kung paano po natin babalansehin ang ah, dalawang ah, pakay na 'yan, no? So, on, on one hand, we of course definitely want employee, employers to keep their employees. Right? That's number one. But number two po, sa dahilan po na meron po tayong mga halimbawa social distancing protocols na in many businesses, halimbawa po, 'yung example ko po kanina, na karinderya na dahil sa social distancing protocols ay mga na lahatin na po ang customer, in which case ah, baka po kailangan magbawas ang isang employer. So may ganong klasing ah, tensions on one hand sa employee and on the other hand sa employer. Ito pong, pinapropose po namin dito seeks to balance ah, those two. Pero kung meron kayong mas magandang recommendation para makahanap po tayo ng ah, isang middle ground that would be workable for both employers and employees eh, kami naman po ay bukas po at pakikingan, pakikinggan po namin ang inyong recommendation, Mr. Speaker.
Salamat po, Madam Sponsor, sa pagiging bukas. Sa maaring pagbabago para matiyak na 'yung layunin ng pesa na batas ang gusto nating papasa ay hindi isasalungat dun sa pangunahing layunin sa itinatapadaan ito. Ah, particular rin sa ating mga ah, magagawa, nabanggit po 'yung tupad. Ah, meron pong ah, enhanced tupad na program o tulong panghanapuhay sa ating displaced o disadvantaged workers. Ah, sa tingin nyo ba sapat 'yung pondong inilalaan para dito naaabot ng thirty billion? Sa bahag, sa kalagayang ayon sa mga tansya, nabanggit ni ah, kanina sabi ni ah, Chairperson ng Department of ah, na Committee on Labor na at least ten to eleven million ang magagawang apektado. Luwang sa thirty billion na sinasabing halaga para sa dagdag sa tupad ay kung ten thousand lang ang ibibigay sa ating mga informal workers, ikakaramput lamang ang makikinabang, one point five million lamang ang ah, out of eleven, ten to eleven million workers who will be affected by COVID-19 will ah, benefit from such a program. Hindi kaya't sobrang liit itong ah, pinapanukalang ah, programa o benepisyo para sa ating mga displaced at ah, affected na mga workers, ah, Madam Sponsor, Mrs. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, dapat pong matignan ang thirty billion ah, proposed funding para sa enhanced tupad. Kasabay po, nitong one hundred ten billion po na nilalaan po natin para sa wage subsidies. Kasi po siyempre, ulit, uulitin ko, ang pakay po natin is job retention. So, ang gagamitin po natin diyan is wage subsidies. Kaya nga lang po, in kaso po na talagang one hundred percent ng workers is impossible to ah, keep dahil na nga po meron tayong social distancing protocols and of course, um, meron din naman pong kaunting flexibility ang ating employers. Kaya po tayo naglagay din ng enhanced tupad na emergency employment program na siya pong sasalo sa mga po, sa mga empleyado po na for one reason or another, ay despite the pesa interventions ay nawalan ng trabaho, at least meron pong programa nasasalo po sa kanila. So, ang maganda pong ah, pag-appreciate dito po sa ating proposal is to take the two. One hundred and ten billion pesos, kasabay po ng thirty billion pesos. So, one hundred and forty billion pesos ang kabuo ang intervention po natin para masigurado po na may trabaho po ang mga Pilipino, Mr. Speaker.
Marami sila ang matpo sa paglilinaw, ah, Madam Sponsor, Mrs. Speaker. Pero ang kinatawang ito ay naglalayon rin na hindi simpleng job retention. Sapagat po simpleng job retention lamang, kung ang uri ng trabaho ay hindi papasa sa standard na sinasabing nakabubuhay na antas, na sahod, ah, maayos, sa working conditions, kahit na may trabaho siya ay maaring mas pagsasamantalahan siya at apihin siya. Ah, pagdamat meron siyang sahod, ang sahod na hindi kayang buhayin ang kanyang pamilya, ah, cannot keep body and soul together ay ah, hindi, hindi ata 'yun ang essence ng ating konsepto ng job retention. Kung kaya dapat simpleng, hindi simpleng job retention lamang. Ah, trabaho na nagbibigay ng ah, sapat na nakabubuhay na sahod, pasiguradong trabaho at kumikilala sa mga patayang karapatan ng mga magagawa. Ah, ang isa pang katanungan ay hingi sa ating mga overseas Philippine workers. At meron namang nilalaman ang pesa bill na particular sa mag, ah, sa mga ayuda na ibigay sa ating mga ah, OFWs. Ah, ngunit tulad na nabanggit, ah, ano ho ba ang talagang direksyon natin, job retention? Ah, ang layunin ba natin ay 'yung ating mga OFW ay makapagtrabaho dito locally? O makapagtrabaho ulit sa ibang bansa, Madam Sponsor, Mrs. Speaker?
Siyempre po, um, sa ngayon po talagang napakarami pong repatriated OFWs. Kaya po meron po tayong provision dito sa ating panukalambatas na sila po ay matulungan. So, just in case po na ah, hindi po nila marenew ang kanilang employment contracts, ah, sana naman po magkaroon sila ng pagkakataon na makapaghanap din ng trabaho dito sa atin. Kaya ang may provision po tayo na dalawang buwan na minimum wage na matatanggap po nila. And the purpose po for indicating two months is sa tingin po natin eh, 'yan naman po ay sapat na panahon para makahanap na po ng alternative ah, employment opportunities ang ating repatriated OFWs. Pero siyempre po, um, again, ang pesa bill po, ah, Mr. Speaker, just to ah, remind everyone, is, is not our long-term economic development plan. Ito po ay solusyon lamang dahil nagkaroon tayo ng problema na dinala po ng pandemya. So, this is to get us through the next six months and then the next year hangga't po dumating po ang bakuna. So, ito po ang modest goal ng ating ah, panukalambatas. So, pagdating po sa OFWs, of course, ideally in the long run, ang gusto po natin, sapat po ang dami ng trabaho dito sa ating ekonomiya such that wala na pong Pilipinong aalis, leaving their families behind. Napakalaking social problem po 'yan. So, ayaw po natin na ganyan ang situation in the long run, but sa ngayon po, ang ating kailangan tugunan is ito pong short-term ah, economic problem. So, for now, 'yan ang ating ah, proposal para sa repatriated OFWs. Um, bukod sa wage subsidies, tatandaan po natin na meron pang mas malawakang mga interventions na in the form of credit stimulus. So, marami po tayong interest-free loans coming from ah, different government financial institutions. Ang small business corporation ng land bank, pati na ang DVP. At ah, kasama po diyan ang pagsoporta ng Philippine Guarantee Corporation dahil kinikilala po natin na ah, napakahirap pong kumuha ng utang kung wala pong kolateral. Kaya't ang sagot po diyan ay loan guarantee. So, ganun po, ah, hindi, medyo mas malawak po ang ah, ah, iniisip po natin ng mga ah, various interventions, no, para po again, to get over the hump.
Salamat po at ah, ako po'y sangayon dun sa pinanggitang ating Madam Sponsor na talagang dapat ang overseas employment ay hindi long-term na solusyon. Ah, tulad ngayon, nakita natin 'yung ah, drastic na pagbagsak ng bilang ng deployment. Bunga na nga rin na ang precis ay tumatama sa buong daydig. At ah, ang pangangailangan ng mga overseas Filipinos ay talagang bumagsak, bunga na nga rin ang epekto ng pandemya. Ah, pero habang nandito rin tayo sa topic ng OFWs, may hinapansin ako dito sa section ten, page fifteen, Economic Relief to Overseas Filipinos, Filipino Workers. Ah, sa bahagi ng ah, section four, letter Z, o 'yung implementation on Republic Act eleven four-six-nine, ah, particular dun sa ating, ah, particular sa mga OFWs shall be charged by the field health, PHIC, no more than three hundred, three hundred pesos per month for premium contributions in twenty-twenty, three hundred seventy-five in twenty-twenty-one, and four hundred fifty pesos in twenty-twenty-two. Ah, matanong ko, gusto natin tulungan 'yung ating mga magagawa sa iba 'yung dagat? Eh, bakit i-increase pa natin 'yung kanilang ah, ah, ginawa pa una, ginuwang mandatory ang contribution sa field health at ikalwa, tinasan pa? Ah, considering na karamihan ng ating mga OFWs ay nag-i-enjoy na ng ah, mandatory insurance sa kanilang mga post countries, ah, pero ngayon ginawa pang mandatory. Ah, binigyan na, bibigyan natin pero babawasan din natin, babawiin natin 'yung baragya. Hindi ba inkongruent itong desisyon na nagtagan natin 'yung contribution? Ah, at sa halip ay gawin na dapat, sana'y ginawa na lang nating ah, voluntary ang membership ng mga OFWs dahil kalakhan nga sa kanila ay ah, hindi napapakinabanga rito. At ah, ikalwa, hindi na dapat nagkaroon pa ng ah, increases dito. Maaring nga itakda na lang sa ah, barest minimum for those who would like to voluntarily be covered under the field health system, Madam Sponsor, ah, Mrs. Speaker?
Ah, Mr. Speaker, una sa lahat po, pag sinabi po nating ah, universal health care eh, sakop po ang lahat ng Pilipino. Kaya po ah, mandatory po talaga ang contribution, hindi lang po ng OFWs, kundi lahat po ng magagawa po sa buong bansa. So, dahil dun ay hindi po natin pwedeng tanggalin ang ah, pagbayad po ng isang OFW sa field health. Pangalawa po, ang provision na'to, ang ginagawa po ng section ten ay binabawasan po ang ah, kailangan bayaran ng isang OFW um, sa field health. Kung wala po ang provision na'to, Mr. Speaker, ang babayaran po ng ah, isang OFW ay nine thousand, nine thousand nine hundred pesos. Pero dahil po sa provision na'to ay magiging one-third na lang po ang, ay magiging three thousand six hundred na lang po ang kabuo ang bayad ng OFW. So, sa tingin po namin, malaking pagbaba na po. Ah, therefore, we call this section Economic Relief to Overseas Filipino Workers, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat po, ah, Madam Sponsor. Pero ah, kahit anong bawas ay parang ganun rin ang tekto. Instead na palakol, ginawa na lang nating ice pick, pero the damage would still be same. Ah, ah, isang tanong na lang patungkol sa mga sectors. Ah, sa purview ba ng ating ah, authors, ng ating mga sponsors? 'Yung isang malaking sektor eh, ng ating transport sector, 'yung PNBs. Ah, ituhurin ba ay included kasi hindi nababanggit tulad ng ating mga GP drivers, bus drivers, at iba pa, tricycle drivers. So, 'yung PNBs na tulad ng marami ay tulad ng nabanggit, wala ring employee-employer relationship din sila. Sila ba'y saklaw sa ilalim ng subsidiyo para sa ating transport sector, ah, Madam Sponsor?
Mr. Speaker, yes, transportation is again a critically impacted business. So, sila po ay kasama at wala po tayong any provision that excludes a particular subsector of the transportation sector, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat po. Ah, siguro talagang napapan, binapanghuli po talagang sa panahon ngayon. Ah, talagang dapat pag-isipan muli 'yung socioeconomic model na nakita na natin, responsable ito sa malawakang kahirapan at ah, ah, at hindi, ah, walang, walang inequality na ating dinaranas. Nabanggit ko na na, kahit sa datos mismo ng gobyerno, eighteen million ang targeted beneficiaries na inlasipay na low income hanggang sa pinakamahirap na ah, saray ng ating litunan. Kung kaya't ah, nakita na natin ang matagalang neglect ng mga nakaraang administrasyon hanggang sa pasulukuyan, ang neglect sa universal social protection, health and other public services. Ang pinakamagandang tugon sa panahon ngayon ay tugunan itong ah, injustices na nagaganap na ito, ah, lalo na sa panahon na dapat ang bawat Pilipino ay hindi ah, idepribe ng kanyang karapatan ang mabuhay. Ah, gustong, ah, four points lang. If we hope to contain the spread of the virus in the long term, such, such time that no vaccine or treatment is available, the public health system must be expanded and strengthened to handle not just the current pandemic, but also future pandemics. Number two, any economic stimulus package must serve to protect Filipinos struggling financially amid the lockdown. Social safety nets must be improved towards achieving universal social protection including timely and ample financial assistance for the working poor, the informal sector, and displaced OFWs. Number three, support for domestic industries and agriculture must be prioritized as it is, as it is the only long-term solution to the ensuing economic crisis. Likewise, trade policies cannot be business as usual and certain protectionist measures must be put in place to protect local industries and incentivize domestic manufacturing. And lastly, financing these measures can be achieved by rechanneling less productive items to prioritize projects which and also reconsider, eh, and we must also consider debt cancellation to free up public debt burden. Financing from the outside sources must be provided within, must be provided without conditionality and those must be scrutinized to prioritize low-interest ODA. And also, a progressive tax system is needed, one that's geared towards taxing the rich, those who are in those ah, mga barko. 'Yung mga malalaking mahi, hindi kaya matinag ng bangka, ng bagdiyo. And calling for emergency solidarity bonds and reducing the tax burden on the poor. 'Yung mga nakasakaylang sa maliliit na bangka at mga bansa. 'Yan lang po, Madam Sponsor, salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Salamat po, Mr. Speaker. We duly note all your ah, observations.
Ah, thank you, ah, representative from ah, buhay, ah, ah, Bayan Muna Partilist, ah, the majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from Partilist BH, Honorable Bernadette Herrera D, for her interpolation.
The representative ah, from BH Partilist is hereby recognized, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I withdraw my earlier motion. Instead, ah, we recognize ah, Honorable Christopher BPD Benesia from Fourth District of Pangasinan for his interpolation.
The, the gentleman from the Fourth District of Pangasinan is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the distinguished sponsor yield to some comments and clarificatory questions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, first off, I would like to thank our speaker, Alan Peter Kayatano, for recognizing in his message to the House yesterday that engagement in live events are among the most heavily impacted by this COVID-19 pandemic and that Congress is committed to tackling measures to help them get back on track. So, in behalf of the four hundred thousand workers of live events, four hundred sixty thousand workers in the audiovisual sector 460,000 workers in the audiovisual sector, which includes TV and film, and the 400,000 cultural workers mentioned by NCCA in their report, I thank you. Second, I'd like to congratulate my mentors, the principal authors of the Pesa bill, and the Committee for Crafting Such a Groundbreaking and Game-Changing Measure, and for their sterling and unparalleled efforts in hearing out the concerns of all members and all sectors in making sure that no one is left behind during these crucial times, including those like myself, who is not only a millennial legislator, but a freelancer to some extent. A freelancer who was very much part of the understated yet rapidly growing freelance or gig economy. Just this year, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I was slated to direct a production of Rodgers &amp; Hammerstein's Carousel, which got canceled because of the enhanced community quarantine, alongside hundreds of thousands of live events for the rest of 2020. The live event sector is said to be one of the heaviest-hit industries, according to studies released by private sector entities such as the Creative Economy Council of the Philippines, I Lost My Gig PH, the National Live Events Coalition PH, and even government's very own NEDA and the Department of Finance's survey of MSMEs, where I quote, "Arts, entertainment, and recreation is the number-one hardest-hit sector in terms of revenue loss, with 82.3% average loss in terms of sales, and the sixth hardest-hit sector in terms of job loss, at 39,446 jobs." This is, of course, subject to limitations by the rollout of said survey during the quarantine. But 400,000 jobs in the live event sector, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, now displaced, 80% of which are freelance. 460,000 jobs in the audiovisual or the film and television sector, 85% to 90% of those are freelance. An additional 400,000 freelancers across various sectors as per NCCA. Between those figures alone, that's already 1.11 million Filipino freelancers. This number is said to be even higher. For argument's sake, let's say it's about 1.2 to 1.5 million freelancers, for lack of material data, to justify an even higher number. Would the distinguished sponsor agree that freelancers are a significant part of our country's workforce?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And would the distinguished sponsor agree that one of the intentions behind the freelancers' inclusion in Section 7 of the Pesa bill, specifically on wage subsidies, is to not only provide them with dignity that comes with the state's recognition of their invaluable contributions to society, but also to provide them with welfare and support during these critical moments of the quarantine, and especially in the new normal?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, definitely.
I know that one of the distinguished sponsors, a fellow author of the Gig Economy or Freelance Protection Bill, Kong Joey Salceda, is a champion of the sector. I also know that one of our distinguished sponsors is an avid collector of visual art, she and her husband. And another one of our distinguished sponsors is a fan of K-drama. So I expect the distinguished sponsor for her recognition of the contributions of freelancers to nation-building and to our economy by including them in the wage subsidies in Section 7. But would the distinguished author agree that there might be wisdom in increasing this proposed wage subsidy to freelancers from 75% of minimum wage for maximum of two months to maybe 100% of minimum wage for two months?
Mr. Speaker, there is rationale in increasing the wage subsidy, not only for freelancers, but also to the rest of the industries, actually, Mr. Speaker. However, we have to consider the limitations on the, well, the budget constraints, Mr. Speaker.
I understand that, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. You know, the COVID-19 pandemic has only confirmed what we have long known and suspected about this sector, that freelancers are very much vulnerable to shocks and economic downturns before the ECQ, and especially in this new normal. That freelancers are in this weird policy limbo because they are neither formal workers who enjoy all the benefits of SSS, Philhealth, Pag-ibig, paid leaves, 13-month pay, and all of that, and thus were disqualified from receiving camp assistance from Dole, and neither are they considered a priority sector by DSWD's Social Amelioration Program. And yet, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, they live from paycheck to paycheck and have managed to survive all these years until COVID-19 and until the new normal, where their livelihood, especially freelancers who work in live events that entail mass gatherings, are pretty much decimated. That said, would the sponsor be open in reconsidering her position on this matter?
We will, we will seriously consider, Mr. Speaker, but we just have to refer to the committee to make further calculations, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, as baseline for this proposal, the National Commission for Culture and the Arts was able to realign some of its funds to assist 14,520 freelance cultural workers in the form of a one-time cash assistance of 5,000 pesos. The Film Development Council of the Philippines, which is another government agency, was able to realign some of its funds to provide assistance to 2,000 audiovisual workers in the form of a one-time cash assistance of 8,000 pesos. Collectively, that's about 16,520 freelancers that were assisted by the state during the quarantine. 16,520 freelancers, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, compared to the 1.1 million freelancers as accounted for by the Film Development Council, the National Live Events Coalition, and the National Commission for Culture and the Arts. That's a mere 2% of the sector for two months of no work. But again, for the sake of argumentation, since there are so many other freelancers out there in other sectors of the creative economy, we estimate this number to be about 1.2 to 1.5 million freelancers, which then translates to only 0.8% of the sector having received any kind of financial assistance. Of course, this doesn't account for whether or not they receive food assistance packages from their respective local government units. I pray that these freelancers did, because if they did not, I can't imagine what they're going through right this moment. The fact of the matter is, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, only a mere 0.8 to 2% of the sector was extended financial assistance during the quarantine. So with this Pesa bill, in order to make up for the absence of support for these types of workers in the bayanihan law, what is another 25% of minimum wage to the freelancer to help them upskill and, most importantly, survive in the new normal? Especially kung wala po silang magiging kabuhayan, lalong-lalo na po 'yung mga workers and freelancers sa live event sector. In fact, in a recent consultation that we had with them, the wedding sector said that weddings might not even return until June of next year. So that's not just six months of no work, but one year of no work. So, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I think there's definitely wisdom behind this proposal, and I hope that they would consider this. A final appeal, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, for freelancers. They are highly skilled workers who, like myself, spend a lifetime perfecting their craft and delivering their output to their clients with utmost dedication, professionalism, and excellence. I've been a director for the stage for more than 12 years, even before I got into government, and I'm still learning and striving to be better. Mr. Speaker, we cannot allow these highly skilled and creative workers to be displaced from their professions, adding to the 14.8% underemployment rate in the country pre-COVID-19, or worse, adding to what Congress, as confirmed by Dole in the Senate to Senator Ralph Repto, to be 10 million unemployed Filipinos in the new normal. Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, the purpose of providing wage subsidies is to retain a proportion of workers with the same level of subsidies. For example, 75% wage subsidy to keep 75% of the labor. In the case of our highly skilled freelancers, shouldn't it be 100% of minimum wage so they can retain 100% of themselves? Meaning to say, shouldn't we give them the best chance to succeed in the new normal in the absence of foreseeable livelihood? If the freelancer is based in Metro Manila, that would be about 15,000 a month for two months if our proposal is accepted. If you're one of 320,000 freelancers in the live event sector with no foreseeable income in the next six months, the 30,000 or the two months' worth of minimum wage, as propelled by the additional 25%, will go a long way. It can be budgeted by the freelancer to about 5,000 a month for six months of possibly no work, and more than makes up for the lack of financial assistance that they received during the quarantine. I repeat, only 0.8 to 2% of freelancers got any kind of financial assistance during the quarantine from the government. Malaking tulong na po ito sa freelancers tulad nina E.R. Soriano, isang freelance musician mula sa Dagupan City, or sa 170 members ng samahang banda ng Pangasinan, o ang 3,000 members ng Pangasinan Events and Wedding Suppliers na mawawalan ng kabuhayan. It will also afford them some kind of budgetary support as they figure out how to survive in the new normal. Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, an additional 25% to the proposed 75% would be around 3,750 pesos per freelancer. Based on the tally from the data sets of the FDCP, NLEC PH, and NCCA, that's roughly about 4.5 to 5.6 billion pesos additional to the proposed wage subsidy to freelancers. That's assuming all freelancers avail. Mr. Speaker, uh, before that, sorry, I did my homework because that's probably what my mentors Kong Joey, Sharon, and Stella would ask of me. So, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, it may seem a lot to ask right now, but to quote a very wise person, "It's never about the budget. A cost-benefit analysis informs a budget decision, but the budget itself is never a parameter in a cost-benefit analysis." That, my dear colleagues, are the words of one of the sponsors herself, the amazing teacher Stella Keenbough. Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, if the spirit of the inclusion of freelancers in Section 7 on wage subsidies is to honor their contributions to society, to provide them with dignity, I believe as per the wisdom of the authors, this also incentivizes freelancers to come out of the woodwork and also to join our formal economy. This will also help broaden our tax base to help them become fiscally responsible and to provide them with the protection of the state that has long escaped them. It is with great humility that I ask, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, for this adjustment in that section.
Mr. Speaker, we, we have provisions that the freelancers can avail of, the ones mentioned by Congressman De Venesia, the wage subsidy, and also the loans, the interest-free loans that we can provide, and also the assistance from the Department of Tourism, in which majority of the freelancers or the live event sector can avail of assistance, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I'm happy that the sponsor made that transition, uh, because actually that would be my next point.
Mr. Speaker, the, um, however, the six-month request is not just, uh, is practically an amelioration, uh, the point of view of the committee. We, this bill is not an amelioration or a bayanihan, uh, um, bill. We are protecting jobs. At the same time, we want, we don't want to give uh, amelioration without effort on the part of the recipient. It is called sweat investment, Mr. Speaker. They have to work for the money that they receive, and six months is, in our view, is excessive in terms of, they have to think, they have two months to think about what their options are, considering the limitations of the market now, so, um, we will consider and recompute and see how long we can adjust the wage subsidy, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I'd just like to clarify, you know, that it's not six months. It's, uh, it's, it's ticking within the parameters set by the committee of two months wage subsidy. Pero what I'm saying po is, kung ma-adjust 'yung 75% to 100% of minimum wage for two months, that would be in Metro Manila for a freelancer, 30,000 pesos. So mapapagkasya po ngayon in six months, um, insofar as maybe 5,000 pesos per month. Pero hindi po six months 'yung wage subsidy na hinihinat in, because, uh, with all due respect, we did our computations, and the adjustment itself from 75% to 100% already yields a significant amount. So we recognize that naman po. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Uh, on to my next point, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. The live event sector, which this representation has already discussed in detail today, as well as in my privileged speech last week, generates about 200 billion pesos in annual gross revenue across 27,000 MSMEs, as per the data shared by the National Live Events Coalition, and employs about 400,000 workers, 80% of which are freelance. Live events is a segment of what is known as the creative economy. What I've always known about this sector, continuing to work in the performing arts myself, is that it has a multiplier effect in our economy. A night out to your favorite concert or cultural event yields additional revenue to retail, to restaurants, to transportation, and many other sectors. What I gleaned recently from the weddings and social events as well, as agencies and activation subsectors within live events, is that they are very much part of the value chain of one of the most heavily impacted industries by this pandemic, AKA tourism. May I know, Mr. Speaker, if the distinguished sponsor has ever attended a destination wedding?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Or the reception of any wedding in general, for sure, yes.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
This is a subsector of live events that generates about 500,000 weddings per year, as per the National Live Events Coalition PH's Robert Blancaflor. In 2020 alone, most, if not all weddings, have been postponed due to the quarantine. He even mentioned that wedding receptions might not even return to full swing, like I said earlier, until June of next year. To quote a recent article on top wedding supplier Margarita Flores of the Chibo restaurant chain, her catering business, Chibo de Margi, was supposed to work on 11 weddings, all scheduled in March, but were all canceled. Flores said, "Our other prospective wedding clients for the future months are still in limbo, depending on how the situation unfolds in the coming months." It has come to my attention, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, that weddings- that wedding socials, activations, and other forms of live events comprise a huge chunk of revenues generated by stakeholders in the tourism sector, particularly in hotels and resorts. In fact, live events pretty much make up the core of what is one of 10 tourism products being pushed by the Department of Tourism, that is MICE Tourism, or Meetings, Incentives, Conventions, sorry, Meetings, I forgot what I means, Conventions, and Exhibitions. MICE Tourism is a huge driver of our domestic tourism revenues and on occasion even international tourism, as with the case of the recently concluded Sea Games, that which our speaker successfully spearheaded, and our delegates and athletes were treated to the most spectacular world-class opening ceremony of the 30th Southeast Asian Games, of course organized and made possible by freelancers and workers in live events. And lest I forget, cultural tourism in which the performing arts sector as well as our cultural workers belong, but we'll need more data on that. They are also very much part of the tourism mix, with many, for example, flying to Manila to catch a jukebox musical like Ang Huling El Bimbo or Rack of Ages, and of course, cultural performances as being part of the experiential offerings to tourists in the country's top tourist destinations. That being said, Mister Speaker, distinguished sponsor, would she agree that MSMEs, the 27,000 MSMEs of live events should be considered and accommodated as among the stakeholders who should be provided assistance in Section 20 of the Pesa bill or the Assistance to Tourism Industry?
Yes, Mister Speaker, we, we, we do see the value of the industry and, uh, we wish, uh, how we wish that, uh, that, um, Pesa or even to Department of Tourism can assist more, but, uh, the limitations are there and hopefully this will propel the industry itself to organize themselves and help themselves, Mister Speaker.
So just to clarify, uh, Mister Speaker, distinguished sponsor, uh, you, the committee is open for, uh, the stakeholders, the MSMEs in the live event sector to be extended and provided assistance?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
In Section 20?
The, the committees will, uh, is already talking to the Department of Tourism for them to be included in the DOT intervention, Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. Just for the information of the distinguished sponsor, uh, both Chairperson Sol Aragonas and myself were in touch with Secretary Puyat last night, and, uh, uh, yes, she, she provided, um, some kind of nod or agreement, uh, to the MSMEs being accommodated. Um, but then she did raise the issue on, um, artists as maybe being beyond the scope, and what I told her and reassured her is that I believe artists will be provided for in another section of the Pesa bill, which is the Assistance to Freelancers. So perhaps that, um, can be an enlightening input from the secretary for the committee.
Thank you, uh, it's truly noted, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, distinguished sponsor, I will propound the necessary revisions um, in Sections 3M insofar as the definition of tourism enterprises is concerned, as well as in Section 20, uh, which is the Assistance to the Tourism Industry.
Mister Speaker, should the good, um, interpolator have any more suggestions for amendments the committee will seriously consider, Mister Speaker?
Thank you very much, um, Mister Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Uh, now I'd like to call the attention of the committee towards a growing sector in our creative economy, which has been at the forefront of representing the best of Filipino creativity. Uh, that is the audiovisual sector, to which film, television, and the animation sector belong. The cinema sector alone, according to the Film Development Council of the Philippines, generated approximately 11.5 billion pesos in gross box office revenues in 2018. This is a sector that has about 460,000 workers across 11,000 MSMEs. From March to June of 2020, a projection of 4.5 billion pesos worth of box office revenues would have been realized if not for the closures of cinemas nationwide due to the quarantine. Many more revenues from other allied arts and industries of the audiovisual sector were severely affected. There are silver linings, however. Just yesterday, it was announced, or two days ago, it was announced that the streaming platform Netflix acquired another five Filipino titles in addition to its already impressive roster of 50 Filipino films that can be streamed here and around the world. You will also remember many years back that telenovelas like Pangako Sa'yo and Please Be Careful With My Heart became massive hits on the Malaysian network TV3, which according to Selangor Tourism said, "Makes Manila closer to Kuala Lumpur." Aside from the world-class creative output generated by the audiovisual sector contributing to revenues to our export economy, it's also part and parcel of our country's soft power and cultural diplomacy. Mister Speaker, may I ask if the distinguished sponsor is familiar with the Korean drama Crash Landing on You?
Sir Speaker, um, we, we, we do appreciate the value of the industry. Should the good sponsor submit to us any suggestions, uh, we would be willing to consider it for the committee to, to, for the committee amendments, Mister Speaker. Uh, yes, Mister Speaker, that's it, Mister Speaker.
Alright, yes, kasi kinabaliwan po ito ng lahat, and I'm sure most of us devoured our fair share of K-drama to help tide us over during these critical times. So it's no wonder that South Korea's audiovisual output and services sector are among the country's top exports. So siguro, just, um, to get to the point, Mister Speaker.
Yes, please, Mister Speaker.
I would just basically like to propose that the committee consider in Section 22 of the Pesa bill um, or the Assistance to Export and Services, that the audiovisual sector be extended assistance as well.
Yes, Mister Speaker, we will, uh, seriously consider and we consult Congressman Gachalian as well for the inclusion thereof, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, and my final proposal, and I'll just get, go straight to the point because I know there are a lot of people who will still interpolate. Uh, Mister Speaker, I'm very elated that in the, in Section 26 or the Build, Enhanced Build, Build program, there is a provision on the construction improvement and renovation of infrastructure supportive of creative industries. I'm very thankful to the authors for considering the power and potential of this industry. So Mister Speaker, I just wanted to make a clarification uh, on the author as to who will be the one to advise uh, or decide on the policy or oversee the implement, implementation of the infrastructure supportive of creative industries within the current, uh, setup or, uh, structure of the Economic Stimulus Board.
Sir Speaker, considering it's an infrastructure project and there would be DPWH, but since it's a creative industry, then I think DOT will be likely consulted as well as the other industries that are involved in the creative industries, Mister Speaker.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Uh, actually, we, we wanted to propose that, uh, the committee consider the inclusion of the Film Development Council as well as the NCCA um, in the composition of the Economic Stimulus Board because both cultural agencies, government agencies, are currently managing um, infrastructure, uh, that is related to the creative industry.
Mister Speaker.
So it's for the consideration of the committee, um, but at the very least, if they are not able to accommodate, if we could just get a commitment from them, from the sponsors to make the proper representation um, to the Department of Trade and Industry as well as the Department of Tourism. I know the DTI works closely with creative industries insofar as Design Center of the Philippines is concerned. So if they could just get a commitment that, um, uh, priori, that priority will be given to these, uh, sectors of our creative economy.
Yes, Mister Speaker, considering it's specified the number three in the Build, Build, Build listing, I think, uh, it's a good, it's a sign already that we give priority. The rest, we will make due consultation and we'll get back to the good interpolator, Mister Speaker.
Yes, um, thank you again, uh, Mister Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Um, I'd also just like to put on record that position papers from the Film Development Council of the Philippines and the National Live Events Coalition were submitted to the committee, and they provided a list of what these existing venues and infrastructure are for creative industries that can benefit from the stimulus in the Enhanced Build, Build, Build. Uh, that being said, thank you so much, Mister Speaker, distinguished sponsor, and again, congrats in advance to my amazing mentors and the principal authors of the Pesa bill. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much, the Honorable De Venesia, Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from Partilis Bayan Muna, the Honorable Femia Caphemia Kulyamat, for her interpolation.
The lady from the Partilis Bayan Muna, Caphemia Kulyamat is now recognized.
Uh, maraming salamat.
Mister Speaker.
Uh, ginong speaker.
Yes, Majority Leader. Uh, I would like to, uh, request that, um, Congressman Mark Erverga, or the Chairman of the Committee on Agriculture be the one to interpolate, the good interpolator, Mister Speaker.
The Honorable, uh, Mark Erverga is now recognized to answer the questions of the Honorable Kulyamat. Madam Kulyamat, you have the floor.
Ginong speaker, uh, napakahalaga po ang, uh, pinansyal ano sa ating pag-unlad. Kaya, maari po bang, uh, uh, magtanong ang kinatawang ito? Maari po bang, uh, pahintulutan ba ng, uh, sponsor na matapag tanong ang kinatawang ito?
Opo, maraming salamat po.
Ang una ko pong tanong, eh, hingi po doon sa, uh, ano ba ang mga basehan ng mga ipina, ipinapanokalang budget, no, para sa aspeto ng stimulus bill? Halimbawa sa, 'yung sinabing 650 billion pesos at sa kayong, uh, uh, 650 billion para sa Enhanced Build, 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 at sa ayong 44 billion para sa import and export industry. Paano ba ito nakumput?
Uh, napangit din po ng ating pong mga pangunahin ng mga authors na kalakip po doon sa 650 billion. Uh, ito po'y mga, uh, ito'y mga imprestraktura. Na kung saan ay may nakalakip din po na bahagi na nasasama rin po sa agriculture. Uh, 'yung sunod pong katanungan ay doon sa four, pakiuulit naman po, uh, Mister Speaker, distinguished, uh, colleague, 'yung sa 400 mil, billion?
400 billion para sa import and export industries.
Agriculture. 44 billion. 44 billion.
Four?
For industry? 44 billion. 44 billion.
Ah, assist BOA?
Ah, eh, 44 billion pala, sorry. 44 billion.
Dito agriculture. Uh, ito po ay bahagi ng iyong Assistance to Manufacture, Manufacturers, Importers, Exporters. Uh, tama po ba 'yung 44 billion po ang inyong inaalam po rito? Uh, ang bahagi po ng agriculture po rito ay nasa 56 billion na kasama na rin po rito 'yung mga programa na, na sinama ng Department of Agriculture.
Okay, uh, ginong speaker, uh, ginong, uh, kagalanggaling na sponsor, ang pangalawa ko pong tanong ay nasa Section 12, itong regulatory relief para sa mga negosyo, kasama ba dito ang pagwiib ng mga regulatory penalties para sa paglabag ng mga standard na ipinapatupad ng guberno?
Section? Section 12 mo. Mister Speaker, pwede po bang mapaulit lang po 'yung tanong? Uh, pwede pong mahingi po Mister Speaker muli ang katanungan?
Um, sa Section 12, nandun ang regulatory relief para sa mga negosyo. Kasama ba dito ang pagwiib ng mga regulatory penalties para sa paglabag ng mga standard ng ipinapatupad na ipinapatupad ng guberno?
Hindi po, uh, Mister Speaker, kasama po 'yun. Hindi po 'yun kasama, Mister Speaker.
Okay, so, uh, sa, sa ganitong ano, may, may panganib na hindi, uh, hindi sundin ng mga kompanya ang mga standard na ipinapataw ng guberno kung tanggalin ang mga penalty dito. Paano natin masiguro na hindi ito maaabuso?
Uh, Mister Speaker, hindi po siya talaga kasama sa panokalapud na ito. Um, ito po ay para lamang po sa BIR at saka po sa, sa other charges and fees po, Mister Speaker.
Maraming salamat, ginong speaker. Ang dagdag ko pong tanong, ginong speaker, uh, um, distinguished, uh, sponsor, hingil po doon sa, uh, una pong tanong, uh, sa 600 billion para sa agriculture, agriculture sector, magkano po dito ang mapunta sa pautang at magkano naman ang direktang suporta sa mga magsasaka?
Uh, uh, Mister Speaker, 'yung, uh, programa po ng pautang po rito ay napapasama sa shore aid, expanded shore aid po ang, ang tawag po rito. Uh, ito po'y nagkakahalaga ng dalawang bilyon peso at, uh, tulad po ng ating pong inilulunsad na expanded shore aid sa kasalukyan, uh, ang meca, ang mechanics po nito ay pagbibigay pa rin po ng pautang na 25,000 pesos para sa mga marginalized small farmers and fisher folks. Uh, kasama rin po rito, Mister Speaker, 'yung mga MSEs na kung saan ay up to 10 million ang pwedeng utangin po rito. Uh, para po sa karagdagang tulong po sa ating pong mga magsasaka at manghisda na, at mga nagnegosyo sa larangan ng agriculture na inaasahan natin na dadagsapa ang pangangailangan ng ating pong mga kababayan po rito.
Maraming salamat, uh, distinguished sponsor. Mister Speaker, uh, ang pangalawa ko pong tanong, hingil doon sa digital agriculture, uh, magkano po ba ang mapunta sa digital agriculture program?
One-minute suspension, Mister Speaker.
Session suspended for one minute. Session is resumed.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh, Mister Speaker, dun po sa katanungan po niya, bahagi po ang digital agriculture sa programa ng food logistics na kung saan ay pinalalakas nga po natin na 'yung, uh, pagsasama, pagkilala ng mga bawat mga magsasaka sa ating pong bansa. Uh, siguro po'y mabanggit ko lang po rito, um, this is to enable the Department of Agriculture and its stakeholders to communicate and monitor implementation of social distancing protocols, compliance guidelines, community quarantine, uh, to augment support from, for frontline workers particularly in reporting, monitoring, supply and demand, and planning. Uh, kasa, kalakip din po nito, Mister Speaker, 'yung ating pong, uh, initiatibo na- 'yung ating pong uh initiatibo na paigtingin pa ang price monitoring po natin. Uh ang nag- ang programa pong ito ay nagkakahalaga ng 10 million pesos po para po doon sa first phase. Doon sa augmentation for frontline workers, 20 million. Uh at meron din pong karagdagan na 15 million din po para po rito.
Um maraming salamat, uh, Mr. Speaker. Uh sa sa digital na ito, ano ang mga target na maaabot sa digital agriculture agriculture program neto?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, pwede po bang ma-request pong maiulit po 'yung katanungan?
Ano ba, ano ang mga target na maaabot sa digital cultural uh program na ito?
Uh ito nga po, Mr. Speaker, tulad po ng nabanggit ko po rito. Uh kasama po ito sa mas malakihang programa ng uh logistics. So napakahalaga din po nito na kung saan 'yung bukod din po sa mga pagbibigay po sa mga frontliners lang mga impormasyon, ay gusto po natin mapalawig 'yung uh impormasyon din po ng mga programa ng agri- ng kagawaran ng pagsasaka at ta- panginisda. So dahil po rito, mahalaga po na merong information dissemination din po na tayong inilulunsad para lalo natin mapagbigyan 'yung ating mga magsasaka na malaman 'yung mga linkinging na mga proposals po ng Department of Agriculture. Nakalaki po ito nga doon sa mas malakihan na programa ng logistics ng pagdadala ng pagkain sa mas malalaking mercado. Halin tulad nga po ng Metro Manila.
Okay, uh maraming uh salamat, uh ginong sponsor. Ginong speaker, ang pangatlo ko pong tanong ay sa mga programang urban agriculture at urban aquaponic, ano ang kapasidad ng urban na ng urban na area para sa mga urban agriculture na proyekto? At uh ano ang uh tinatayang maabot mula dito kumpara sa kung ang mundo ay mapunta na mapunta sa mga sakahan sa kanayunan?
Uh well, Mr. Speaker, uh 'yung programa pong ito ay bahagi po na sigurong nakita po natin na naging malaking problema noong tayo po ay pum- uh pumasok sa enhanced community quarantine na naglockdown tayo halos. Uh nadisrap po ang supply chain ng uh ng pagkain. Kaya po nagkaroon ng initiatibo ang Departamento ng Agriculture at bukod po rito ay nakita rin po 'yung potensyal na magkaroon tayo ng isang programa ng ur- urban agriculture. Uh maganda naman po ang pinupuntupon uh ng ating pong kasama na si Congresswoman na Femia Kulyamat na kung saan ay medyo malaking halaga rin po ang kakailanganin. So balik 'yung 500 million na budget pong nakalaan po rito ay para naman po sa malalaking siudad sa buong Pilipinas. So hangad po natin dito ay uh mabigyan natin ang linaw at uh maturuan po natin 'yung ating mga kababayan na ang food supply sapagkat uh marami tayang kababayan din po rito sa Metro Manila, sa Metro Cebu. Uh nagre-deklamo rin po sila sapagkat pagka sila ay noong sila bumibili po tulad ng Kalamansi ay napakamahal na. Samantalang ito po ay napakamura naman pong uh napakadaling itanim at ito po ay mas malaking pabor para po sa ating mga kababayan, lalo tigit dito sa naso- nasa siudad. Uh pero doon sa urban agriculture, maari naman po hindi rin naman ibig sabihin ay basta nasa bakuran lang po. Meron din pong mga initiatibo sa urban agriculture na kung saan meron pong nahahanap ng mga mas malalaking lupain na po pwede po na humingi ng pahintulot o baka po ito'y pribado na po pwede naman pagbigyan na mataniman ng mga iba't ibang mga gulayan para ito po ay maging community-based. Ang kanilang uh pagtatanim at pag-aani na makakatulong naman po sa community po rito. Pero tama po 'yun na dapat naman po ay mas magandang nasa kanayunan din naman 'yung ating uh pagbibigay na mga gulay. Kaya po meron din pong karagdagan programa rin po rito na nakasama po natin sa stimulus uh bill po natin na ito na kung saan ay 'yung tinatawag na revitalized gulayan. Na 1 billion po ang halaga ng kanilang uh programa na ito po'y naglalayo na may dal- madala po sa kanayunan, lalo tigit sa mga paaralan at uh sa iba't iba pang mga lugar sa ating pong mga lalawigan.
Maraming salamat, uh distinguished sponsor. Mr. Speaker, ang ang huli ko pong tanong ay uh sa social assistance. Sinasabi ito ay para sa mga uh rehistradong mga magsasaka at manginisda. Paano po ang mga unregistered farmers?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, tama po ba na ang ibig uh tinatanong po natin 'yung social amelioration program ng ating farmers and fisher folk?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh sinasabi natin na napakahalagang bagay ang pinansyal para sa ating uh pag-unlad, no? Sa ating ekonomiya kung anuman, no? Sinasabi din natin na uh kung hindi ako magkakamali, ang ang utang natin sa buong bansa ay mahigit ng pitong trilyon, no? Na sa sa kalaki-laki ng utang na ito ay napakarami din ang ating mamamayan na naghihirap. Kaya sa puntong sa sa batas na ito, sana po 'yung mga mundo natin ay malagay natin doon sa uh mga mga batayang ng angailangan ng mga mga tulong para sa para din sa kanilang sa pag-unlad ng atin ng kanilang mga ekonomiya. Lalo na ang ating mga maliliit na magsasaka kasi bago pa man itong uh COVID pandemic ay sila po ay naghihirap na. Ay nangangailangan din ang tulong ng pamahalaan. Kaya uh sana po uh meron talagang mailaan para sa ating mga mahirap namang mga magsasaka. Ito lamang po, uh maraming salamat, uh distinguished sponsor, at maraming salamat, uh ginong speaker.
Maraming salamat.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Majority Leader.
Sir Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Partilis Anak Kalusugan, Honorable Michael T. Defensor, for his interpolation.
The Honorable Mike Defensor is hereby recognized.
Tumbong kita, Kimadam.
You may now proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh may may the distinguished gentle lady uh accede to some questions?
Uh sorry, yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, first and foremost, I'd like to congratulate our distinguished sponsors led by uh the honorable Joey Salceda, one of the great minds of this country, of course, from Bicol, the Honorable Garin, from Iluilo, and uh from Marikina, the Honorable Stella Kimbo. Uh, Mr. Speaker, before I begin, let me just say that uh I'd like to raise a point of order because the sponsors are right here beside me to harass me with my questions. No, Mr. Speaker, let me just go through this uh very slowly. As a matter of concept, uh, Mr. Speaker, I looked into the Pesa Bill and I noticed that you have divided the bills into several sections, uh particularly the transitional interventions, financial intervention, sectoral interventions, structural interventions, and socioeconomic policy measures. Uh, Mr. Speaker, just like to ask, of the, what would be the total budget for this uh bill, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, it would be 583 billion pesos for 2020 and uh 730 billion for 2021 up to 2023, Mr. Speaker.
Now, Mr. Speaker, as to the character of the funding, what would be subsidy, what would be loans, and what would be uh for infrastructure as allocated by the bill?
For for infrastructure, it would be 650 billion. For subsidies, it would be 110 billion plus two hu- sorry, for subsidies, it would be 155 billion plus 253 billion. So that would be 408 billion.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh I raised that point because
Mr. Speaker, we would uh like to request uh Chairman Joey Salceda to take over.
The gentleman from uh Albay uh is hereby recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Yes, to my good friend.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Uh again, Mr. Speaker, I just wanted to know the character of the funds for which subsidy will be given, uh the loans will be provided, and what would be for infrastructure, which I think are the three basic uh components of the bill embodied in the uh programs for infra- uh for uh economic stimulus program?
For 2020, which is the critical period, we are providing for 130 billion in infrastructure, 583 billion of basically intervention, mostly subsidies, direct intervention by government, and of the 583, 70 billion will be equity in financial institute, government financial institution, basically PGC, Philip Guarantee. In other words, 583 minus 70, so 70 is uh but that will trigger 551 billion in credit stimulus. So all told, for this year, you would have 583 minus 70, so that would be 513 plus 551, which is the credit stimulus triggered by the 70, plus, of course, the 130 billion in um in infrastructure, which we are trying to frontload.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, uh again, I'd just like to clarify on the financial side. This would be 70 billion of the 550 billion?
583 billion.
583 billion, so 70 billion just for the financial.
Equity in PGC.
Equity in PGC.
Because PGC can guarantee, they can lift uh up to 7%. So ang car niya is 7%, so theoretically, they can guarantee up to 200, they can trigger 240 bi- additional 240 billion. And the equity in the land bank as well as
Uh DBP.
And equity in SBC can trigger um through relending. So ang mangyayari po on, 'yung mga pinapautang na SBC will be bought by land bank. In other words, it will be rediscounted. All told, mga 551 billion ang mati-trigger nitong credit stimulus na siya po ang magiging bridge. Ang ibig sabihin ngayon, kumbaga naka-intubate 'yung mga S M Es natin. Ang ginagawa po nito ay nilalag- din dinidextros natin sa pamamagitan po ng subsidies through wage subsidies, other interventions to training, market access, all sorts of other tip uh con- not conventional, but rather uh I I could say na in fact, some of them are very innovative government intervention by our many of our departments. So 583 minus 70, 513 plus 551 plus 130. That is the 2020 uh economic stimulus. See, it's not just fiscal because it's called, that's why we call it economy, econ- uh economic stimulus. Kasi marami pong mga policy initiatives which are non-fiscal. For example, 'yung 59 billion ng paglift ng 1.2 million hectares na mga nakasangla sa atin na ngayon pwede ng gamitin ng mga farmers, halos mga 1 million farmers, na pwede ng ikolateralize nila. Kasi ngayon uh hindi rin naman sila nababayaran, so para mga zombie property siya. So in other words, you are actually freeing up yeah, liquefying the rural property market and that actually has a more substantial, very big pero wala tayong ginamit na pera, so economic policy stimulus actually siya. So kung i-add mo lahat po, napakalaki po talaga ng epekto nitong this is a breakthrough legislation. It goes far beyond the traditional um typology of a stimulus that uh even modern economies uh understand. Halimbawa, 'yung pagbawas po natin ng mga kailangan bayaran, mga OFW, imbes ng 99, pinabapun natin sa 36. So there are lot of relief, not just direct relief, but even regulatory relief and uh regularization ng ating mga underground economies. Kasi hindi, hindi yun sila makakapagbenefit ng 551 billion na credit stimulus.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, Mr. Speaker, of the total budget that you've mentioned, how much would this be in relation to the GDP?
Oh, makakatrig, um
I think about uh, Mr. Speaker, if I'm not mistaken, about 8% of GDP?
Mas magaling ka pala sa ah
Don't know, I'm just going, I was, Mr. Speaker, I was just reading the 29th itong GDP.
'Yung fiscal stimulus po, 3%, additional 3% from credit stimulus, and roughly uh 0.6% from infra stimulus. Uh kasi 'yung infra, tinitingnan namin na may existing naman tayo na mga, it's difficult to roll them, to roll, roll it up at to roll that up uh at this stage of the planning, at this planning cycle. So mas maganda po 'yung mga infra uh mabudgetan for next year. So if a kung, I'm so tempted to to speak na this maybe not be the last stimulus.
Yes.
Because in the U.S., there is stimulus 1, 2, 3, 4 already. This is actually the second stimulus, but the real stimulus, of course, the first stimulus actually na ginamit natin through bayanihan, well essentially, parang intubation yun, huwag lang mamatay po 'yung pasiente. Ito, gusto natin 'yung pasiente mabuhay at uh hindi lang po mabigyan ng dextros, kundi makabalik sa bahay at ma- uminom na po ng vitamins.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, so you mentioned about 6.6 from the total GDP that we have. Then I just wanted to say for the record, and I agree with the honorable sponsors, sponsor and the other sponsors, that in Germany, the stimulus package that they have approved is 60% of total GDP. In Italy, it's 44%. Uh Spain, which uh U.S. which you mentioned is 14% of GDP. And uh yeah, Spain is 12%, the U.S. is 14%. We are only looking at 6.6% of our total GDP. Now, Mr. Sponsor, I just wanted to to clarify with you because you started to discuss about infrastructure. Then I'll, let me just segue to that uh for my other questions. You know, if we're going to work into infrastructure, I noticed that you've listed down several programs in agriculture and so on and so forth. But, Mr. Speaker, would the sponsor agree that given this opportunity, for example, that we have a chance to really put down the budget for infrastructure, why do not, why don't we set up a program, for example, for a railroad in Mindanao? A railroad in the Visayas? Dams that we need for Anggat because there's lack of water in Metro Manila? The South Rail and the North Rail? If you want balik probinsya, if you want to decongest Manila, then why not put the fund in these following programs instead of listing down a menu of different programs which we do not know the total effect? In this program, uh major infrastructure programs, then it's very clear where the direction in terms of uh the economic stimulus uh instead of uh the the helping the agricultural sector in Mindanao, uh in the Visayas, by putting up the railroad system, Mr. Speaker?
Um, this representation, Your Honor, will be more than willing. Uh because what we're trying to take care of here is really the dextros. We are talking about the vitamins. So in short, I am at the expense of um of my friends at the DOF in our executive.
Yes.
I think we will need that stimulus 3. So this doesn't, this stimulus doesn't preclude any further discussion of what is good because as far as I've read the constitution, the chief policymaking body of this country is Congress.
Yeah, so, Mr. Speaker, maybe at the proper time, uh these particular programs can be listed down as the priority uh infrastructure which the but which the president, the administration can undertake. Uh I can imagine, Mr. Speaker, for example, in the case of uh for exa- uh you know, the traffic in Metro Manila, if we have If we have the South Rail connecting to the port of Manila, MICP, and the port of Manila, and if this would be the money that we would be spending for the economic stimulus, then we do not only reply to or are relevant in the case of infrastructure, but we are able to decongest traffic by providing cargo railroad trucks instead of the existing trucks that we have for Metro Manila, Mr. Speaker?
The, the genesis, or should I say, the seeds for stimulus 3 is already in cures. A very good, um, I would say legislative effort by our deputy speaker. At the same time, Your Honor, it can be upscaled, Your Honor, into multi-year. During our first year as congressman in 1998, if you remember,
Yes.
There was actually a multi-year infrastructure program wherein every congressman is asked to contribute to a multi-year. So in short, Your Honor, this is not the first. It has historical precedent by way of policymaking by this Congress in order to make a very substantive effort in terms of what you can call constituency-led effort in order to address the real needs of the people and as well as optimize the real prospects, opportunities that are actually, um, that reside in our, not only in our constituency, but of course, as well as in our, in our country.
Thank you for that, Mr. Speaker. It's always been an honor to listen to the great Salceda. May I ask, Mr. Speaker, as an economist...
Susumbong lakitaki GMA eh.
As an economist, Mr. Speaker, uh, what would be the comparative advantage of the Philippines in terms of the economy and natural resources?
Uh, una una, actually, Your Honor, our median age is only 23.6. Human resource.
Human resources.
Our socio-cultural ability to adapt, to, uh, our resiliency, essentially. Um, third, even our archipelagic geography is actually a natural defense against pandemics. Uh, fourth, is basically, um, I would say, our long-run conservatism in the way we run our finances. So we have the lowest, 23% foreign debt to GDP. We have only 44% after all the deficits in the first, uh, from January to April. We're still 44% debt to GDP. Uh, we came long before from all, 106% in 2003. Uh, our ability to systematically and orderly dispose and resolve our issues through democratic means of long pestering, like 'yung mga utang noon, through DBP in 19, from 1970s. We resolve it through CBOL. Now CBOL is nowhere. We already paid, fully paid for it. Uh, 'yung atipong IPPAs, na umabot po ng 26% of total GDP. Ngayon po, as your committee went, looked into it, through Pisam, we have resolved it. In short, this country is not wanting for that economic, um, I would say, ang atipong animal spirits as a people, uh, that we are driven, that we can also unify around a certain concept or idea called a prosperous Philippines for everyone. And then you can easily work back at what is needed by way of policy, legislation. So, tingin ko, Your Honor, we have what it takes. After all this COVID-ness falls by the wayside, this country will get a credit upgrade. I'm not, I'm a, I am a market, I came from that market. Ngayon po, siguro, pag nababasa mo, halos masasabi mo na there's exaggerated pessimism. I've seen that all. But you know, once you get through the fundamentals of this country, especially our fundamentals and especially our policy, 'yung mga, makikita niyo po, 'yung mga policy na pinasa dito sa congreso, the way we were able to deliver on major structural reforms, the PSA by my good friend Sharon, the FIA, the RTLA, and almost all other fiscal policy reforms that have been passed, I think will certainly create a new impetus na, nakikita ko namang po kasi, kung kinaya ni GMA na 8.1, next year po, kakayanin ng Pilipinas ang 8.1.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, uh, I, I ask that question because, uh, as you well know, uh, I was before in the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. And two of the major resources of the country, which is the logging industry and the mining industry, have been put to a halt. And these are the two major sectors that I think could contribute to the economic stimulus of the country. You have seen that in Chile, and I know that you know this case, Mr. Speaker, that they were able to develop because of the program that they have in mining. Till now, Indonesia's economy is resilient. 25% of their GDP is coming from the mining sector. And so, Mr. Speaker, I ask that question in relation to the economic stimulus program. During the time of the depression, they were looking into gold. And now here, we have, in fact, the resources for that. We have, in fact, the existing mines, but these were never expanded because of the policy limitations that we have imposed on the sector, Mr. Speaker?
Um, you know, you go through a certain ranking or classification by, in terms of how highly contentious a certain policy direction is. So I would say that once we get over all this COVID-ness, I have, the committee on recent meetings has already finished the fiscal regime for mining industry, and it has been pending with this majority leader. So I guess that question is better asked of the majority leader than this sponsor, Your Honor.
Yes. Now, Mr. Speaker, you know, before this COVID happened, many of, I would say, many of my friends, many of those associated with me were doing their respective businesses. Now, in this bill, you have stated here that there will be no payment of the principles for one year. I think this would be a very good assistance to those who have businesses or those who are under, uh, those who have availed of loans in order for them to, uh, set up their businesses. So are you saying, Mr. Speaker, that for one year, all the banks will be required not to, not to be, uh, or not for them not to be paid for a year of the supposed principal payments of the mortgage loans?
Well, the answer is yes. And I guess it's not unique. Because you'd rather prefer an orderly and systematic framework for everyone to understand each other. We could have like, um, uh, how do you call it, a buffet. But what we'd rather have is like, okay, put everybody paripasu. Everybody gets, now, with respect to the banks, the interest will roll. But except that, of course, they will not go after certain enterprises simply because you will not make certain enterprise collapse simply because you ask for a principal repayment. I think it's a, I'm not, I've seen, um, programs such as this in other countries, wherein it is understandable, given the, alam niyo po, ngayon, second quarter, baka bumagsak tayo ng 9% 'yung GDP. Siguro naman ang mga bankhero na iintindihan nila, kung gusto nila mabayaran sila, at may magandang kliente pa sila, huwag muna nilang singilin. Andito namang po 'yung biyerno, pwede namang po magbigay tayo under the PGC. Oy, huwag mo muna pakialam si Si Arong Garin. Kasi bibigyan namin siya, pag hindi nakabayad, kalahati po ang mananagot ko biyerno. So we have all these schemes and the appropriate structures in order to ensure that banks will not lose money, they will not lose their shirts, but at the same time, we provide the appropriate ground, um, lay the groundwork so that everybody can start anew, have a fresh capital, so to speak. So, Your Honor, uh, I think the former president, GMA, is already waiting for you outside.
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I would like to congratulate the sponsors for that, because I think that would really be great support for the economy. And if you're saying that the banks will also be supported, then that would be good in terms of, let's say, the reserve requirement, that they will not be, uh,
They are.
as part of the monetary policy, they would not be forced to have that. Uh, in relation to that, would the members of Pakibig, SSS, GSIS, uh, and all other institutions, the individuals who have loans, would they also be part of this program? That they will not be allowed to pay the principal for a year, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Your Honor, for consumer loans. A thousand needles on myself before a single one on my neighbor.
Yes, because, Mr. Speaker...
So in short, the government will, will have to set the example. So these are government-owned and controlled corporations, and therefore...
Mr. Speaker, because if you check the provisions of the bill, uh, I do not see the, it was only on, in section, uh, when you mentioned about the banks, that you were discussing the non-payment of, uh, principal, Mr. Speaker. But you know, at any given time, since you agreed already, Mr. Speaker, if it is not in the provision of the bill, then in the period of amendments, then it can be included. Including those Pakibig, GSIS, SSS, and all other individuals who have loans, especially in government financial institutions, will not be, or will be exempted from paying the principal for one year, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, well, the word here right now is encouraged. And if the House is so minded, then a stronger word can be accommodated.
Yeah. The reason I mentioned that, Mr. Speaker, about...
Huwag mo na pilitin, Ani.
Now, the reason I mentioned that, Mr. Speaker, about the banks and financial institutions, because, you know, you were talking about SMEs, Mr. Speaker, and just a matter of concept. If I'm an OFW, and I will put up a business, and you will give me a loan without collateral, without interest, what business could I enter into, given this situation? Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker, if I may reiterate my question, uh, with the indulgence of the majority floor leader. If I'm an OFW, and I was sent back to the country, and for example, I'll put up a business with no collateral, no interest, only the principal, I don't even, even know the COVID situation, I don't even know what business to enter into. And you know that 8 to 90% of startups fail. So the reason why I'm saying that is, I feel that this would be a problem, but the existing loans of those who borrowed from GSIS, SSS, Pakibig, and the banks, if they are given a reprieve from paying the principal, including the interest, then that would be a good, uh, support and assistance to them.
Marami namang po na, kahit nung governor po, pinigay po ako ng six year bago po ako magbayad ng principal. So taon-taon binabayaran, wala ng interest. So hindi po imposible para po sa mga financial institution, 'yung ganung klase pong usapan. Pero para po masabi lang na, kung meron pong puso, ito pong bill na to. Ito'y patungkol po sa mga workers ng SMEs. SMEs account for only 13% of total GDP, but they account for 60% of total employment. Parehas din po sa agriculture. Agriculture account for only 9% of nominal GDP. But the entire agricultural farm sector, in terms of employment, including agro-processing, account for 33% of total workforce. Of course, there are a lot of overlaps there. All I'm saying is, may, ito pong bill na to was specifically designed to immediately provide employment support towards our 60%, which is the SME and our agricultural sector. Yung po talaga ang puso ng pesa. Siguro dapat 'yung pangalan ng bill na to.
Puso.
Puso ng pesa.
Hey, uh, Mr. Speaker, I already see the majority leader carrying my bag. Uh, I think he's about to carry it outside of the session hall. So let me thank the, uh, Mr. Speaker, the honorable Salceda. It's always a pleasure hearing from him his insights in the economy. Of course, the honorable Stella Alabastro, who's only a first-termer now, but has proven to be better than her husband, Congressman Deputy Speaker Kimbo. And, uh, Mr. Speaker, our economist, lawyer, Deputy Speaker Garin. Accountant, lawyer, Deputy Speaker Garin. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you, uh, the gentleman from Anak Kalusugan. Uh, we thank you for seizing your wonderful interpolation. Because, uh, I think my telephone is so busy now because GMA has been calling up, so that we will stop already. So, uh, the majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Bayan Muna Partilis, Honorable Isagani Sarate, for his interpolation.
The gentleman from Kabayan, uh, Bayan Muna Partilis is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Maraming salamat, ginawang speaker. Magandang gabi po sa ating lahat. Uh, pwede ho bang magka, propound tayo ng ilang mga clarificatory questions sa ating mga kagalangalang na sponsors? Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mayong gabeh kaloy.
Uh, mayong gabeh, Deputy Speaker Sharon. Uh, maraming salamat, um... Una, uh, syempre, gusto nating magkaroon talaga ng, uh, sang panukalang batas, na makatulong sa ating mga kababayan para makabangon, no? Makabangon sila sa nangyaring crisis ngayon, itong pandemya ng COVID. At kailangan, uh, na ang stimulus na ito, economic stimulus na ito, ay talagang makarating sa ating mga kababayan. Yun ang ating gustong mangyari. Dahil, uh, milyon-milyon sa ating mga kababayan ang talagang tinamaan ngayon, lalong-lalo na ang mga mahigilan. Uh, having said that, um, noong, uh, panahon ng sponsorship, sinabi ng ating kagalangalang na Deputy Speaker, Sharon Garin, and in fact, he, uh, she borrowed the words of Carl von Clausewitz. Sinabi niya, "Everything in war is very simple, but the simplest thing is difficult." And I certainly agree, no? Uh, ang dami talaga ang mga simpleng bagay na nakakaligtahan natin. Pero dito, uh, gusto nating matu, matyak, no? Na, uh, pinapahirapan ba natin ang ating sarili sa mga simpleng bagay, no? Dahil, uh, sinabi na rin ni Carl von Clausewitz, I will also borrow his words, "War is not an independent phenomenon, but the continuation of politics by different means." So, uh, ito ba ang mga pinag-uusapan natin? Ay, baka ito ay mga bagay-bagay na nagtutuloy-tuloy lang na may pinagmulan sa nakaraan, no? So ano ba ang purpose ng ating economic stimulus na tinutulak ngayon? Siguro yun ang unang natanong ko. Um, sa tingin ng ating mga sponsors, ginawang speaker, uh, saan ba nagmamula itong, uh, crisis ngayon na gusto nating matugunan nitong, uh, pesa bill na ating tinatalakay? Ginawang sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker, the, the bill actually addresses, we, uh, we have assessed what is the effect of COVID as well as the ACQ. Ang main problem po ng nangyari because of COVID is that nalulugi 'yung mga negosyo. And the effect of this is if businesses will close or scale down, marami pong mga empleado, uh, will be affected. So we are trying to protect 30 million workers. And by trying to protect them, we want to protect, we try to protect the businesses because this is a more sustainable measure, rather than just send, give amelioration to each and every employee, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, thank you, Madam Sponsor, uh, Mr. Speaker. So ang ibig sabihin, uh, ang crisis na ito ay itinulak nitong, uh, pandemya ng COVID, no? Na nagdudulot nga ng pagkawala ng trabaho, ng marami nating mga panggagawa, and deslocation ng ating mga magsasaka, for example, at, uh, 'yung mga kababayan nating, halibawa, na sa informal sector naman, no? So yun ba ang, tama po ba ang pagkakuha, no? O, na, ang crisis na ito, sa tingin ng mga sponsors, kailangan matugunan dahil dala ito ng pandemya ng COVID? Uh, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Well, again, uh, kaya gusto kong ilinaw yan, dahil gaya ng nabanggit ko kanina, uh, ang kinatawang ito, no? Uh, at ang aking mga kasamahan sa makabayan, lack, I said, uh, yes. I certainly, yeah, nagka-agree rin dito, this is, ang crisis na ito, sa tingin namin, is not an independent phenomenon. Just like what Carl von Clausewitz said, "War is not an independent phenomenon." Itong crisis na ito, hindi ito nangyari dahil lang sa pandemya ng COVID.
Correct.
Dahil, ginawang speaker, Madam Sponsor, kung ganun, oh, ang pagtingin natin sa nangyaring problema ngayon, ang ating hong magiging katugunan ay magiging, sa tingin namin, magiging kapos, no? Dahil sa katotohanan, bago pa man tumama ang pandemya ng COVID sa ating bayan, at magpahirap pang lalo sa ating mga kababayan, ay nagkakaroon na ng crisis sa ating bansa. In fact, ang crisis na ito ay nagresulta sa malawakang disempleo. Marami ang nawalan na ng trabaho sa katunayan, nagkakaroon na ng crisis sa buong mundo bago pa man ang pandemya ng COVID. Nag-uwi na ang ating mga overseas Filipino workers, no? At lumala pa ang crisis, lalong-lalo na sa Pilipinas, na ang ating GDP in the past years, na umabot na ng eight, ay pabagsak ng pabagsak siya. Dito mga nakaraang iltatlo o apat na taon, dahil na rin sa mga itinutulak natin ng mga at mga existing nakapatakaran. Halimbawa, ng mga nakaraang taon, tilit na ipinasa ng kongresong ito, at sinayuna ng ekotibo ang pagpasan ng train. Na nagkaroon ito ng malaking effecto dun sa ating mga kababayan, mahihirap na kababayan, dahil sa sumirit 'yung pagtaas, halimbawa, ng presyo ng mga crudo at iba pang oil products. This past year, anong ginawa natin? Ipinagpilitan natin na ipasa ang rise in import liberalization, na dahan-dahan namang pumapatay sa ating mga magsasaka. So nag-ipon-ipon 'yan, na makaraang panahon, hanggang lumala sa pagdating nitong panahon na mayroon na tayong pandemya ng COVID. So 'yun po ang tingin natin sa pagkakataong ito. Kaya, doon natin dapat suriin, ano ba ang dapat na gagawin ating economic stimulus? Dahil sa pagtingin natin ngayon, dito sa panukalang batas na ito ng pesa, while we love the good objectives of the sponsors, no? May mga magandang aspeto rito na pwede nga, pwede pa siyang palakasin. Halimbawa, ang usapin ng mass testing. Dahil lahat tayo, we agree, ang hindi na lang atang nag-aagree ang nasa executive, na kailangan mag... Isang key dito ay ang massive testing talaga. We cannot say that we have flattened the curve. We cannot say that we are winning the war if there is no true massive testing sa nagagawin ng ating pamahalaan. Lalo't sabi magbubukas na ang ating eskwelahan, magbubukas ang ating ekonomiya. At marami pang iba, pangalawa, 'yung pagbibigay ng ayuda sa ating mga manggagawa. But, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, maliban, sa mga provision na ito, ang nakikita po natin dito sa panukalangang batas na ito, ay isang economic stimulus that will only tide down our people in the next months to come. But in reality, it is not an economic stimulus that will eventually solve the problem that causes this... Problems that cause this crisis, no? So parang babalik lang tayo sa dati, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I totally agree with the good interpolator. COVID actually exacerbated what we had already. And now, we know that because we don't have good internet, we don't have good protection of our labor force, we have, we need, we have low productivity, we have so many unregistered entities and individuals as well. So that is a lesson we have, and we are trying through enough. This is a stopgap measure, but we need it in order for us to formulate, to survive for the next six months or one year. And eventually, the measure, the proposed measure, actually has a proposal, has a provision in which we will formulate an economic plan for economic resilience. I agree that the problems, the problems we have had before became bigger because of COVID. But yes, we do agree, and as the good, my good co-sponsor mentioned, this is not the only stimulus plan that we should have. We should have in the future, we need to review our policies, review the direction of each agency, and take care of those industries that will make us more economically resilient, Mr. Speaker?
Thank you, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker. But I'm still around. May I continue, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, proceed, please.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker. So, kung magkaganun po, itong economic stimulus na ito, ay parang ina-assume natin na after three months, six months, we can already transition to what? Going back to the old, normal before, na iniwanan natin before the lockdown? Or, I agree, sinabi mo, kailangan magbalangkas tayo ng mga bagong framework? Unfortunately, what I heard from the sponsors, ang framework na gusto nating balikan after this economic stimulus, ay walang pagkakaiba doon sa framework na pinagmulan ng marami pang crisis. Hindi lang itong dala ng pandemya ng COVID, no? For example, I hope the good sponsor will not mind, nabanggit kanina ni the venerable Joey Representative Salceda, na isa sa magandang itinasa ngayong nakaraan ay 'yung amyenda sa Public Service Act that will eventually liberalize the public utility sector of our country, that will give foreigners control of our public utility. At alam naman natin, itong napaka lakas na kontrol na mga dayuhan sa ating ekonomiya ay nagbunsod rin nitong crisis na ito. And you are saying that we are going back to that regime? Second, I cannot understand, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, na nasa gitna tayo ng pandemya, ng COVID, ng isang crisis, at gusto nating mangalap ng pondo. In fact, almost five billion dollars na ang inutang ng pamahalaan para lang dito sa COVID problem na ito. But here we are, repackaging old policies that will even exacerbate our crisis, no? And I'm referring to itong bago, ang pagtutulak ngayon sa CREATE. So there is, first, ang tawag dito, trabaho bill. Tapos tinawag na si Tira, ngayon, CREATE, no? Under CREATE, 'yung dating si Tira na ibaba ba ang corporate income tax, 2% every year, ngayon, drastic, from 30, gawin ng 20 kaagad. And inami na rin ng Department of Finance na by doing so, 259 billion ang mawawala sa kaba ng bayan. At ang 259 billion na 'yan, ibibigay natin sa mga mayayaman na, sa malalaking korporasyon, at sila ang makikinabang sa crisis na ito. Samantalang, ang ating milyon-milyon na mga kababayan, hanggang ngayon, nagdi-dibati pa tayo kung i-extend ba natin ang social amelioration program. Meron pa bang second trans? Kung may second trans, ang bibigyan ba ay lahat, o 'yung nasa ECQ lang? Bibigyan ba natin, o ang GCQ ay hindi na natin bibigyan? So what can we, how can we reconcile this disconnect, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker? Na gusto nating ibalik ang ating ekonomiya, but nagtatapon tayo, 'yung pondo na dapat natin kinakailangan, at dyan na sa ating kamay, ay gusto nating itapon pa, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the amelioration is to address the needs during the Bayanihan, for the Bayanihan Act. And we do, we do agree that we need to reform so many things in whether in policies or the implementation of the projects of the executive. But we also need to face the fact that should we not intervene right now, right after ECQ or immediately after CQ? Then many of the industries will die. Consequently, many of the employees will lose their jobs. And the probable, the only resort would be to to give amelioration for an extended time, which also the government cannot afford. So this buys us time, and hopefully, it will also wake us up as public servants, which direction we should take this economy, Mr. Speaker?
Thank you, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker. 'Yun po talaga ang tingin ko, mensahe nitong dala ng pandemya ng COVID, no? The old normal, ay hindi na natin pwedeng balikan, dapat 'yun. Dapat magkaroon na talaga ng bagong framework, or the better normal, if I may say so, for our country, no? Incidentally, Madam Sponsor, my next question is, nabanggit na ito kanina, nag-aano kalaki ang pondong ito, no? For the first year, I think you mentioned it's 583 billion. All in all, for three years, ay abot ito sa 1.3 trillion, no? Gusto ko lang linawin uli, dahil nung binasa natin ang panukalang batas, ay hindi malinaw. Saan po talaga kukunin ang pondong ito na 1.3 trillion, or itong 583 billion na ito? Yesterday's interpolation by Congressman Lagman, he mentioned that there is no certification yet from the National Treasurer of the availability of these funds. So saan natin kukunin ito sa utang ba uli? Ano ang tingin ng economic managers dito, Mr. Speaker, Madam Sponsor?
Mr. Speaker, the shorthand is already in... We've been working on it since the interpolation of Congressman Lagman. And as to the source based on the bill, on the proposal, we have a list of options in which the executive can tap into the the programs and projects that are not infra, but could be unnecessary or least priority for now that they can tap. But also, we have listed options such as loans, bonds, even converting some projects into PPPs, Mr. Speaker. So we have listed it down in the bill, Mr. Speaker. As to availability, yes, we have to, we have, we have limited foresight on this for now because of the uncertainty as to how long the amelioration will last, as well as how, what will be the collections for the government revenues, Mr. Speaker? But yes, we have covered it by listing down the options and authorizing the DOF and the economic managers in certain options that they can take in order for us to finance the proposal, Mr. Speaker?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker. Ang next ko pong katanungan, ang ating bansa, ang Pilipinas, ay isa pa ring largely an agricultural country. I hope you will not dispute that. So, kaya gusto kong ihammer 'yung point na dito sa ating economic stimulus, bukang napakalaki ng pondo na binibigay natin sa ibang sektor, pero doon sa ating sektor ng agrikultura, na dapat sila ang sasalba dahil sila ang magiging salalayan o pundasyon ng pagbangon ng ating ekonomiya, ay parang hindi ganun, no? Ang pagbigay natin ang importansya. In fact, kung meron man tayong nilalaan na pondo, mga pau'tang pa ito. Na alam naman natin, nahihirapan na nga ang ating mga magsasaka, ang ating mga farm workers, pero ang binibigay nating atensyon sa kanila to help them stimulate our economy is even in the form of loans, no? So again, why this disconnect, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, the Department of Agriculture as well as the Committee on Agriculture has listed down the programs. Should the good interpolator wish, we can send him the list of the programs that they have suggested, and should the good interpolator wish to increase the budget, then we would seriously consider, Mr. Speaker?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker. Because that will lead me to my next point, no? Gusto nating, there's no question, no? Nang kailangan talaga may stimulate ang ating economy. At kailangan tulungan natin ang ating mga kababayan, no? Dito sa pag-stimulate ng ating economy, gusto natin, 'yung pinaka, the list of our kababayan ang makikinabang, no? Pero ang nakikita ko rito, Madam Sponsor, I hope you will make a clarify this on the, for the record and on the floor, no? Halimbawa, sa halip na doon sa ating usapinang pagtulong, no, doon sa mga enterprises, no? Packages to support large enterprises, no? Halimbawa, dito sa usapinang, sa chapter 1, section 3, no? A, even the definition of business entity. Dahil sinabi niya rito, these entities can avail of this economic package, no? Eh, nabanggit dito, halimbawa, a business entity may also include a branch of a foreign corporation, no? Doon naman sa usapinang critically impacted businesses, which includes the air transport industry, tourism industry, export-import industry, at doon naman sa tinatawag na non-essential businesses, at dyan pareho, no? Tourism industry, transportation, hotel resorts, et cetera, et cetera. So ang ating, gusto lang natin, siguro, no? Nadiito sa ating sinasabing economic stimulus package, ang makikinabang nito ay ang talagang mga nangangailangan, at hindi ito economic stimulus package that will in fact, sasalba doon sa malalaking mga negosyo, na ngayon nga, ay nakikinabang din naman sila, no? Dahil nga sa nangyaring crisis na ito, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, the bill is for the protection of workers, basically, and the interventions are priorities given to SMEs. In almost all the sections we provide, that there's preference, whether if it's for loans or for sectoral, for agency-specific interventions, SMEs and even the informal are prioritized. However, Mr. Speaker, 40% of the employment of the country is also generated from large companies, we cannot discount that. They have less priority, but they cannot be neglected neither, Mr. Speaker. So, but rest assured that the intention of the, the intention of the authors of this proposal is to protect the workers, and most especially, and basically, the first line of defense that we have is to protect the SMEs, the micro, small, and medium enterprises, as well as the informal sector, Mr. Speaker?
Maraming salamat, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker. On the record, ay nabanggit natin 'yan, dahil otherwise, ang mga nakalagay na pondo rito na gusto nating makarating sa ating mga SMEs, ay baka makuho lang ng mga lalaking mga korporasyon, no? Napakarami pa naman ito, there is this interest-free loans worth 50 billion, no? Doon sa chapter 4, section 17, there's this, nasa Loan Guarantee Corporation, meron tayong nilagay dyan, that's 60 billion, and several others, no? So gusto nating matyak na ito nga talaga ay makakatulong doon sa nagbibigay ng 60%, na employment sa ating bansa, at napakalaki ng ambag nun sa ating, sa ating ekonomiya. Now, on to my other point, Madam Sponsor. Kasama sa economic stimulus na ito, ay 'yung pagbibigay ng wage subsidies, no? At 'yung pagtuloy-tuloy nung tupad, no? We call this enhanced tupad. Well, this is, sa tingin ko naman, maganda, pero ang aking tanong, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, hindi ba naconsider ng mga sponsors, no? Na halimbawa, kung itinuloy natin 'yung concept ng social amelioration program, na mabibigyan, 'yung eight, ah kasi kung, ang ating titignan lang dito ay mabigyan ng wage subsidies, 'yung mga manggagawa that will probably cover 3.7 million workers, at doon naman sa tupad, it will cover, or 'yung mga nasa informal sector, will cover additional 1.5 million. Ito ay mga halos limang million lang makikinabang. Pero kung talagang gusto natin ang economic stimulus that will stimulate our economy, bakit hindi pagtuuna ng pansin na 'yung 80 million, na dati na ang na-identify natin sa Bayanihan? why not turn the attention to the 80 million that we identified in the Bayanihan Act, the last one, that is contributing, and this is also contributing here to the economic stimulus, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, the budget set here is for, we give it to the recipients as long as they work for it, Mr. Speaker. This is not an amelioration package, there has to be some investment on the part of the recipient so that it's sustainable. We can, we, this, the, we have to consider that the amelioration that we are doing now cannot continue, this is not sustainable for the government, nor is it good for our culture, Mr. Speaker. So, but we do have, we do have subsidies, wage subsidies at 110 billion and Dole for cash for work, also you have to work for it, at 30 billion, Mr. Speaker, in case there are displaced workers as well and also for OFWs and freelancers and all that, Mr. Speaker. We are trying to cover it as much as we could with the budget that is set, the very limited budget that we have, Mr. Speaker.
Again, when we heard about the current situation, the budget, we saw, for example, a big component here, what is called EBB, or Enhanced Build, Build, again, this framework is, if the good sponsor will enlighten us, this is also the framework before, Build, 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 supposedly to spur our economy, but it did not happen. And now, this is also the framework or programs we want to implement, to keep our economy up, Build, Build, Build. But in the long, in the long term, we are not in a pandemic of COVID, and a very large election that was brought to our attention, this pandemic of COVID. So, why are these kinds of programs still being implemented, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, based on studies and how it is in reality, infrastructure projects are the biggest drivers of our economy. For every peso that you invest in infrastructure, the return to, for the government is 3.44. So, it's, it's something that we saw essential for the creation of jobs as well as to jumpstart our economy. But it is an enhanced, in a sense that there is a specific list that we have set forth in the bill for the BBB to be applied, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, thank you, Madam Sponsor. I know that is really the framework that we want to implement. But then again, the question we are asking, that is traditional, infra. So, even if I want to focus on this, here in the country, there is infra, here also, in the future, infra also. So, this is the old tradition, we are focused on infrastructure, but up to now, going back to my previous point, our economy, what is supposed to be, what is supposed to be our agriculture, and agriculture is not just about infrastructure. We have to modernize our agricultural, our agricultural sector. But one key and major problem of our agricultural sector now is related also to the land use. We have been driving this point that we cannot expect our country to industrialize if we cannot solve our problem in the land use. That's why until now, we have implemented the free land distribution or genuine agrarian reform program because despite billions and billions that we have spent on past and present agrarian reform program, it is reality, eight, if not nine, of farmers are still not the owners of the land that they own. There is still control of our farmers, the land is theirs. So, this is a big problem because even where we look, in our homes, they are not industrialized in our country, they are not replaced with a reform of agriculture that we should do. So, my question, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, here in our, in the context of economic stimulus, where is the paper here, in the land use? From my view, this is the process of our economy is to be controlled. Until now, it is really changing our, our land use is under control. And we cannot expect that we are industrialized, that our MSMEs are really controlling their industry if a very large part of our country is under control and under control, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
I agree with the good interpreter, Mr. Speaker. That's why in the stimulus bill, we have condemnation of loans of the agrarian reform beneficiaries to start with. And then, then we are hoping that there will be reforms in the system, which will be more addressed, better addressed through reforms in the agency as well as in the policies or the legislations that we have already. That is not in the bill because this is a stimulus package, Mr. Speaker. So, we have focused on the first step, first step first, and then we can reform the policies as a more long-term option for us. In fact, Mr. Speaker, Congressman Sarati, when we assessed the industries, agriculture was not actually one of the highly impacted, but since the authors and the members of Congress were concerned about the industry, despite it not being critically impacted because it was still operational during ECQ, we have included a substantial budget for agriculture because there is a need to make sure that we are, we have food security in the country, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker. But incidentally, you said there is this, along with the package, condemnation. Does it mean here, just a clarifying matter on that? Amortization of the agrarian reform beneficiaries, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
We condemn the land, Mr. Speaker, because if you, if, despite the fact, if, in fact, they are not paying, it's tied up with the bank. So, the proposal here is just to condemn interest payments, surcharges and penalties with the Land Bank of the Philippines, Mr. Speaker.
So, only the interest and surcharges, but not the amortization that they are supposed to pay the Land Bank for the land use that they are paying, is theirs. Is it not also in the package, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
I'll just pull up the, Mr. Speaker, the condemnation is under section 24?
Yes.
It's, the principal is included, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, so, if that is so, if along with the amortization, because you said, if they are paying, they are going to pay the compensation, but the land, the compensation of farmers is going to be amortized for 25 years. So, is this, I just want to reiterate, so we can clear our expectations. So, is the amortization, is this, is it meant to condemn here in our economic stimulus package? If it is, does it mean this, because after approval of this, after the amortization, it can be awarded immediately, give it the title of our farmers, because they are not paying, it is condemned, is it okay? Do you understand, Madam Sponsor?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So, after the end of this, there is no payment of our farmers in the land use that they gave, and directly the title is given to them, not just the name, but the title to prove their ownership in the land used by them, is that right, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you for that. Now, I'm, go to my last point, in my interpolation, in the context of financing, I mentioned earlier that our sponsor, they still have to trust this out, actually with the economic managers, they are thinking that they can take advantage of the realignment, etc. Of course, even if we give them the money, the Bayanihan Act, there is a deal, we give them the deal, the president who will realign the budget. In fact, here, in the current situation, there is provision, giving the president the authority to realign items here in the first budget. Now, I will no longer go into that aspect, because it was already stated. My question is, to our sponsor, we want to find this, does it not realize that our sponsors, a way to take advantage of the budget, for example, realignment and discussion, is the very large public infrastructure program we have, we can realign it first, start here to promote it, especially, for example, subsidies for our employees, the state, and other, loans for our farmers, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, we, the authors of the bill and the committee believe that we cannot sacrifice the other, infra, or we, that we should not choose between infra and the other interventions. It should go together. In fact, infra is one of the biggest multipliers and also in job generation, but at the same time, we also need to direct intervention to our, for our constituents. So, it is, this bill has been well thought, Mr. Speaker. It has been, it has, the intention is to address the different aspects of the effects of COVID-19 from the short term, right after ECQ, up to the substantial generation of jobs, should many lose jobs, Mr. Speaker. But if, hence, that's why the bill is proposing different ways for the government to generate the funds in order to, to implement this proposal, Mr. Speaker. But the committee is of the belief that we should have all these interventions in order for us to jumpstart the economy and arrive at a certain decent level of GDP, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker. So, are you also considering passing new tax measures to finance this Pesa or other stimulus bills, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, as the good interpreter knows, we are continuously passing bills for tax revenue generation, but that is not in the bill, Mr. Speaker. What we have specified are certain options and the tax measures, even in fact, tax incentives or tax condemnation is not considered in the bill, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker. I raised that in relation to my previous statement earlier. I hope our economic people or members of Congress, that the focus is on the economic measures, that this is not the time that we are harder than our, harder than our citizens because of the pandemic of COVID. It is, it is, it is, it is, we mentioned earlier, we should not have created this, why do we need to double 260 billion just to add the huge corporations and companies? Why do we need to focus on this? Additionally, does the good sponsor consider this? There is a study that released, the Ibon Foundation, and they said, maybe we should think about the progressive tax system. As we said in our border, we have to evolve a progressive system of taxation. And it means, you have to tax those who earn more. So, in the current situation, for example, instead of lowering the income tax, in the large corporations, why don't we erase from the current 30 to 35? Because, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, in any time, when there is a crisis in our country, the first thing that goes down is corporate income tax, that used to be in the range of 38, 35, and now is 30 because of the next, next crises. So, to illustrate, as said in a study, a 20 percentage point increase on the annual income of the countries richest 182,000 families can already raise 84 billion. So, this is equivalent to 20% of their annual income based on 2015, not 2018, 2019, not 2020. So, can you imagine that amount that we can collect, what is called wealth tax? Additionally, as said in the study, from applying a 1% tax, only 1% tax on wealth above 1 billion, a 2% tax on wealth above 2 billion and a 3% tax on a wealth above 3 billion to 4 billion, I can already generate or yield 237 billion for our coffers. So, I hope this concept will be considered by our good sponsors. In the coming days, especially, we are looking for a fund here in the economic stimulus that we want to save our citizens, because this is a claim, again, we can no longer go back to the time pre-March 17, that what we are looking for to achieve our economy is the old, the old, the process of neo-liberalism, of expanding our economy. Perhaps, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, as a claim, it is really a question that we saw in the pandemic of COVID, a very serious crisis, not only in the Philippines, but in our country, that the system is failing, it is a total failure and this system should not continue, because the consequences here, as in the past, that we have experienced a terrible crisis and pandemic in our country, in our whole world, is hard. So, if it is a failure, it is possible that we are thinking, I mentioned earlier, Representative Joey Sosa, that the chief policymaking body in our country is the Congress, he said. So, that is the hammer for us, as a group of children, from my view, Speaker, Madam Sponsor, we are not here to pass away the state, just to, you know, tie us down for the coming two, three, six months. We have to look at what is ahead of our country. I don't think this pandemic will be the first and the last, probably more will be coming. And what we are experiencing now is really, maybe, it is still happening. But again, if we see the message that was brought to us, which is trying to tell us, as said elsewhere, if you see it now, look at our situation, it seems like our situation is not green, it is now green, and that is the message to us. Landering our natural resources cannot just go on. Too much greed by those in power, too much greed by big corporations cannot go on. Not until the end of the year, in every company, it is still in the land, and not until the end of the year, the employees are still moving, moving, they are still paying their taxes or their situation in their operations. So, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to interpret and... salamat sa pagkakataon na makapaginterplace at muli. Sana ang mga simpleng bagay na ito, gaya ng nasabi ng ating kagalang-galang na sponsor, ay pakikigan na natin ang simpleng mensaheng, na mga simpleng bagay na matagal lang itinuturo sa atin ang kasaysayan kung ano ang maging solusyon. At hindi kailangang pahirapan natin ang ating mga sarili. Iwanan na natin ang sistema ang bulok na sistema ang ito na siyang dahilan bakit magkaroon tayo ng matinding krisis sa kasalukuyan na pinlalapa ng pandemya ng COVID. Maraming salamat, madam sponsor, mister speaker. Magandang gabi po sa ating lahat at sa ating mga kasamahan dyan sa plenario at sa...
Maraming salamat po sa inyo.
Mister Speaker, just one comment. It's, this stimulus package is just part of many packages that we have now. The, we have this direct intervention, economic stimulus, but that won't be enough, mister speaker. There was, there are also taxes or fiscal packages that we have. But then also, if you don't only, if you only have taxes and no economic stimulus, then you don't have anybody to tax. But also, we have the monetary packages through the banks, but 70% of Filipinos are unbanked. So, all three of this, mister speaker, have to work together. So, that is why, to address the concerns of Congressman Sarate, we are trying to formulate a good package in order for us to survive for the next year or two years. And I agree that we have to review our policies because we realize now, we have learned, maybe prior to COVID or during COVID, but we have to review many of our policies. So, thank you very much, mister speaker.
Thank you, madam sponsor. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from Partilis Beets, the honorable Bernadette Herrera, for her manifestation.
The gentle lady from BH Partilis is hereby recognized.
Maraming salamat, mister speaker, at magandang gabi po sa ining lahat. And of course, to our authors, Congresswoman Sharon Garin, Congressman Joey Salceda, and Congressman Stella Kimbo, thank you po for accepting all my calls at sa mga kakulitan ko. Anyway, briefly lang po, some manifestations of my proposed amendments. Number one, alam naman natin, katulad na nabanggit kanina, 62% are employed by MSMEs. Wala pa noon sa Bayanihan Act pa lang, ito na isasasatin sinusulong na proteksyon para sa ating mga MSMEs na talagang isa sa mga tumutulong sa ating mga ekonomiya. Kaya isa po sa, nakikita nating magandang tulog sa kanila ay dapat i-expand natin 'yung definition nung MSMEs natin po ngayon dahil marami po ang hindi makakaavail ng tulog at makakinabang dun sa economic stimulus package kung hindi po natin papalitan 'yung definition ng MSMEs in terms of its categorization. And I've proposed already to Congresswoman Stella Kimbo the proposed categorization wherein we want to adjust at least micro to state that it's up to 199,000 and then small up to 99 million and then medium up to at least a billion or 1.4. Para sigurado na marami po ang makapagavail ng ating, na tinamaan talaga ng ating ekonomiya na tinamaan ng mga negosyo dahil po sa COVID na to. So, may I know if these amendments will be acceptable to our authors?
Yes, mister speaker. Yes, mister speaker.
Thank you. And number two, katulad po na biniringap ko rin po sa mga authors po natin, ay hindi ko po kasi napansin sa educational assistance ang technical vocational industry. Badly hip din po ang 4,000 schools ng nagbibigay ng technical vocational training sa ating bansa. At alam naman po natin na pagbalik ng OFWs dito, retuling ang isa sa mga kailangan nila especially 'yung mga online na trainings natin. So, naniniwala po ako na dapat isama natin ang mga technical vocational institutions as part of educational assistance na ibibigay po natin. Sana po during sa period of amendment, maisama po natin ang mga technical vocational institutions.
Yes, mister speaker, we have considered the proposal of Congresswoman Herrera and then we are seriously considering and we will do the amendment as when the time comes, mister speaker.
Maraming, maraming salamat po. At last lang po, alam ko ayaw tayong Congresswoman Sharon Garin, pero I just like to manifest it because I heard Congressman Joey Salceda a while ago say na baka dapat there's a stronger word. I'm just really concerned with the word encourage, the banks are encouraged. Nag-iisip po ako ng paraan kung paano po sila, hindi naman ikumpel dahil ayaw natin sila ikumpel, pero at least for them to really seriously consider and discuss all possible options para siguradong kausapin nila ang kanilang kliente at magkaroon sila ng magandang agreement as to how they can restructure the loans or how they could go about this. So, mabasahin ko lang po 'yung proposed amendments ko just in case lang po na magbago po ang isip ng ating mga authors. I would like to read that paragraph as follows. "Banks, other non-bank financial institutions under the supervision of BSP and BFI's and lending and financing companies under supervision of the SEC shall promptly endeavor to examine and implement all options for and come up with a viable and feasible plan acceptable and for the mutual benefit of both parties to extend the term or agree to the restructuring, etc., etc." Para, ang pinapalitan ko lang po 'yung term na encourage, "to strong, to promptly endeavor to examine and implement all options", para lang talagang sabihan natin 'yung mga banks natin and financial institutions, "explore all means necessary to aid our consumers with their loans sa kanila po." So, parang ganun po, alam ko, napag-aralan na rin po ito ng committee, pero I'm just bringing this up in case it would be considered, madam, madam author.
Yes, mister speaker, we will consult with the involved agencies as well as the stakeholders. And I would just like to say that Banco Central has been very proactive in addressing the problems of COVID and we will give due respect to their opinion on the proposed, proposal of Congresswoman Herrera.
Maraming salamat po. Meron na po kaisang tanong, posible pa po ba 'yung interest? I know that we're extending the term of the loan to one year, but is there a possibility that at least a one month or two months grace period on the interest can be extended to our, to our, to the financial, to the companies who have loans existing in the financial institutions?
Mister Speaker, we will consult with the stakeholders as well as the committee as well as the Banco Central if they can consider such proposal, mister speaker. And then we can do the amendment at its proper time, mister speaker.
Maraming salamat po. Ang last point ko nalang po, madam speaker, mister speaker and the madam sponsor, I hope that also we could include during the period of amendments, 'yung mga utilities natin na, kahit tulad ng nangyayari sa ating problema sa Meralco, nangyayari sa MWSS at sa iba nating bayarin na mga utilities, I hope we could also specify that in the bill na meron din tayong dapat itakda na mga grace period na hindi naman kayang bayaran ka agad at sana magkaroon ng mga installment para naman po sa ating mga consumers because babalik pa lang po sila sa pagtatrabaho at hindi kayang bayaran ka agad. Sana ma-specify lang po natin sa batas na pati mga utility companies natin kasama sa nag-exent ng grace period and extended payments para sa mga bayarin sa kanilang mga kompanya.
Mister Speaker, if the good interpreter has any suggestions, then we can seriously consider and address it at the proper time, mister speaker, during the period of amendments.
Maraming, maraming salamat po and thank you and I congratulate all the authors. Maraming salamat po sa pagtaggap sa mga kakulitan ko sa mga proposed amendments. But thank you very much and I hope we could pass this bill as soon as possible. Maraming salamat and congratulations.
Thank you, lady from BH Partilis and thank you also distinguished sponsor, the majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from First District of Northern Samar, Honorable Paul Ruiz Daza, for his manifestation.
Yes, the gentleman from Samar is hereby recognized.
Thank you, mister speaker. Manifestation in support of the bill and just a few clarifications, mister speaker. Just from the title alone, we can surmise that the bill is to stimulate the economy, help the poor, help business, and basically get the country going again. I'd like to ask the authors, because the, because we are working very hard and very fast, there were some revisions made from the committee report, certain languages that were changed a little bit in section 33 that was sent to me by Congresswoman Garin. I just wanted to put on the record that there were certain changes to the wording of section 33, paragraph 1, 2, and 3.
Mister Speaker, I would like to commend the good interpreter for his concern on the prospects of our country and he has been very focused on making sure that we pass a very sound bill. And his proposals have been, have been seriously considered and we have been working on the amendments that due to his own comments and proposals, mister speaker. But yes, we are considering his proposal and we will present it at the proper time at the period of amendments, mister speaker.
Thank you, mister speaker. And also, I would like to point out to the authors and to my colleagues in the house that we all worked hard, very hard about six, seven months ago in passing the 2020 General Appropriations Act. Embedded in this GAA and consistent to the spirit of this bill that we are discussing tonight, are many, many infrastructure projects nationwide, especially in the provinces, in the barangays, like in Region 8, barangay health centers, school buildings, evacuation centers, access roads, bridges, line items that were appropriated for this year. Most of these projects have been, have undergone procurement and waiting for award implementation ready. I'd like to ask if the authors considered that many of these infrastructure projects that rightfully the authors are advocating for in the BBB language and infra language of the bill, are they aware that many of these projects are ready to go but just needs a release from the DBM?
Yes, mister speaker, we have seriously considered the impact of such situation and true enough, the authors of the bill as well as the committee are of the belief that infrastructure has be not only maintained but increased. That's why we are proposing an additional 650 billion. And we are also, at its proper time, we will introduce the amendments to the proposed bill in order for it to make sure that all the infrastructure projects that have been stipulated under the GA will be implemented as soon as possible, mister speaker.
Yeah, thank you very much, mister speaker, and I thank the sponsor for her assurance. And in wrapping up, because I know it's getting late, I want to remind the authors and my colleagues that the executive branch just launched the Balik Provincia program. In my area, I think the latest statistics, Region 8 Samar later, is number two in the applicants for Balik Provincia. And I think, and I agree with the authors that the best way to create, to stimulate economy through the multiplier effect is through infra-related and many of those projects, as I pointed out, have already been vetted out and have been, have gone through procurement. And basically, we don't even have to think of any more projects because they just need to be funded this year. And this will be consistent with the Balik Provincia program. That will happen, I assume, now and especially next week. So, I'd just like to get a reaction from the author and again, would like to thank them for their good work on this bill.
Mister Speaker, the, we, other than the infrastructure that we are advocating to be maintained and increased, in fact, we have also provided in many of the interventions that preference, other than just being MSMEs, but if the recipients are willing to participate in the Balik Bayan, Balik Provincia bill or executive order, then they will also be given preference. We wanted to, the economic stimulus to also include, to be inclusive. Hence, we have adapted the policies and concepts under the Balik Provincia program, mister speaker.
And to clarify, mister speaker, the immediate implementation of the vetted projects in a 2020 GAA would be consistent in providing employment and opportunities for people who want to avail of the Balik Provincia. And that's something that the authors would support in terms of maybe certain amendments to the language of the bill.
Yes, mister speaker, we have, actually, you can find Balik Provincia in the bill so many times because we are advocating such movement, mister speaker. But yes, all of this have to go hand in hand, mister speaker, together with infra as well as any interventions that we do, mister speaker.
Okay, thank you, mister speaker, and thank you to my distinguished colleague, our sponsor.
Thank you, mister speaker.
Thank you, gentlemen from Northern Samar and Lasalle Green Hills. Thank you. And thank you, madam sponsor, the majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we close the period of debate.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none. The debate is hereby closed.
Thank you, mister chairman.
Thank you.
Mister Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 6815. So moved, mister speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none, motion is approved. The chair declares a one-minute suspension of the session.
...
Session resumed. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of measures on first reading as well as communications and resolutions. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General may proceed.
Additional reference of business bills on first reading, House Bill 6778, providing for domestic repatriation of migrant workers, Representatives Gonzalez, Sandro, and Luzotan.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 6779, providing for mandatory immunization services for OFWs, Representatives Gonzalez, Sandro, and Luzotan.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 6780, recognizing seafarers as key workers in times of epidemic or state public health emergency, Representatives Gonzalez, Sandro, and Luzotan.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6781, creating a national anti-illegal drug campaign and research program, Representative Chutor.
To the Committee on Dangerous Drugs.
House Bill 6782, amending certain provisions of RA Number 11036, Representative Chutor.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6783, requiring all national, regional, and provincial government hospitals to establish, operate, and maintain a dialysis ward or unit in their respective hospital and providing free dialysis treatment to indigent patients, Representative Chutor.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6784, enhancing the use of national wealth for local development, Representative Chutor.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 6785, providing for benefits to military dependents, creating the Military Dependence Welfare Office, Representative Chutor.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 6786, supporting the growth and development of digital careers in Philippines, Representative Chutor.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 6787, providing for a national digital transformation policy, Representative Chutor.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 6788, amending Sections 3 and 4 of PD Number 1631, Series of 1979, or the Act Creating the Longsood ng Kabataan, as amended by EO 893, Series of 1983.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6789, increasing the bed capacity of the PGH from 1,500 to 2,200, Representative Chutor.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6790, establishing the Sustainable Development Goals and Ambition 192040, Representative Chutor.
To the Committee on Sustainable Development Goals.
House Bill 6791, institutionalizing support mechanisms for protection for public schoolteachers and personnel in matters of student discipline for classroom management, Representative Chutor.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 6792, standardizing tourism, science, and symbols all over the country, Representative Chutor.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bills Number 6793 and 6798, providing for the framework for the establishment and operation of virology laboratories in the Philippines, creating for the purpose of Virology Science and Technology Institute of the Philippines, Representatives Alceda and Deloso Montalia.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6794, declaring July 5 of every year a special non-working holiday in Bamang Nueva Viscaya in commemoration of its founding anniversary to be known as Bamang Day, Representative Quaresma.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 6795, providing for government financial institutions, unified initiatives to distressed enterprises for economic recovery, Representative Kua.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6796, providing hazard pay to all frontliners in the public and private sectors and other essential workers during pandemics, epidemics, outbreaks, natural or man-made disasters, and other public health emergencies, Representative Omentado.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6797, authorizing the Secretary of Education to defer the start of the school year in case of declaration of a state of emergency, state of calamity, or any similar occurrence, Representative Kabuchan.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 6799, establishing protected bicycle and pedestrian lanes and other related infrastructure in Metro Manila, Representative Reyes.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 6800, establishing University of Eastern Philippines, satellite campuses, and municipalities of Allen San Isidro and La Vizares in Northern Samar, Representative Daza.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
Resolution, House Resolution 897, directing the Committee on Energy to inquire on the spike of electricity rates and additional charges in Morocco during the implementation of the ECQ.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 898, strongly urging the IATF on merging infectious diseases to modify its restrictions on the conduct of religious gatherings under the MECQ and GCQ, Representative Agabas.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Resolution 899, urging the IATF EID to allow people from the same household to backride on motorcycles in areas under GCQ, Representative T Diego.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Resolution 900, urging the DOH to consider and prioritize the accreditation of Region 2 trauma and medical center province of Nueva Viscaya, Representative Quaresma.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Resolution 901, urging the DEEPED, CHED, and TESDA to institute measures that will make digital education available and accessible to all students amid the COVID-19 pandemic in the Philippines, Representative Castillo.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Resolution 902, directing the Committee on Basic Education and Culture to inquire on the possible deferment of the opening of school year 2020 to 2021 in all public educational institutions offering basic education in the country, Representative Kabuchan.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Reports, Report Number 311 of the Committees on Health and Appropriations on House Bill 6803.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 315 of the Committees on Higher and Technical Education Appropriations on House Bill 6824.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 316 of the Committee on Higher and Technical Education and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill 6827.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 317 of the Committee on Legislative Franchises on House Bill 6834.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 318 of the Committee on Legislative Franchises on House Bill 6835.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 319 of the Committee on Legislative Franchises on House Bill 6836.
To the Committee on Rules. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 6817 under Committee Report Number 314 and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General may proceed.
House Bill 6817, an act prohibiting the discrimination against persons who are declared, confirmed, suspect, probable, and recovered cases of COVID-19, repatriated Filipinos, healthcare workers, responders, and service workers, and providing penalties for violation thereof.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of this bill is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debate. And with that, I move that we recognize the Honorable Chairman, one of the Chairman of the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee, the Honorable Bong Bravo. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? The Chair hears none. The Chairman, in the person of Representative Bravo, is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, Magandang Gabi po. COVID-19 is a dreaded disease that has severely strained the world's health systems, drastically affected the economy, and changed our way of life. More significantly, it has eroded our capacity as human beings to afford dignity and act with compassion towards one another. This pandemic has provoked a series of discriminatory acts across continents with different groups as targets. In the Philippines, our frontliners, returning overseas Filipino workers, and the people who have had a brush with the deadly disease are not spared from these discriminatory actions and attacks, whether verbal, physical, or psychological. Our health workers are putting their lives and that of their families at stake, and this is how they are repaid. The media has reported that an increasing number of health workers are being subjected to discrimination, harassment, and violence mainly due to unfounded COVID-19 fears instead of being afforded the heroes treatment they deserve. A research article on the discrimination of medical personnel in the Philippines narrated that a resident in Quezon shot an ambulance driver for parking his vehicle in a residential area after transporting a medical worker. The perpetrator accused the ambulance driver of carrying COVID-19 patients and endangering the lives of the people in the community. In another incident, a nurse contracted COVID-19 was afraid of going back to his residence after his neighbors had petitioned against his return. The Philippine National Police has recorded 123 incidents of discriminatory acts or attacks for the period covering March 17 to May 22, year 2020. All of the victims in hospital attendants. In one incident, the victim, a barangay health worker, was slapped and almost stoned by the suspect while performing her duties. In another incident, a group of men threw chemical bleach at a hospital aide while he was on his way home, causing injury to his eyes. Mr. Speaker, even though several LGUs in the country have issued ordinances prohibiting COVID-19-related discrimination, an acting law that would penalize the violator would greatly deter by good and people from committing such reprehensible acts. As co-chairperson of the Peace and Order Cluster of the Defeat COVID-19 Committee, it is my honor and privilege to sponsor the committee report on House Bill Number 6817 in substitution to House Bill Number 6676 or the COVID-19-related Anti-Discriminatory Act. This particular bill was principally authored by the Deputy Minority Leader, Christopher Y. Belmonte. Mr. Speaker, the bill seeks to grant full and viable protection against nation to those who have already suffered and recovered from COVID-19 as well as those who carry the brunt of providing medical care, logistical, and service support in our effort against this pandemic. Your Honor, this measure would give our COVID-19 heroes and survivors much-needed protection and would help relieve them of the unnecessary mental anguish and emotional burden brought about by the prejudices of some of our countrymen. As it is, COVID-19 has already wreaked so much disruption, grief, and uncertainties to everyone. But it has burdened our health personnel and barangay workers and other frontliners, even way past their limits. Let us not subject them more. Let us not subject them to more. Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues, in the spirit of our battle cry to heal as one, this presentation is urging for the immediate approval of House Bill 6817. Marami salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. The Chairman, distinguished sponsor, Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members wishes to interpretate on a good sponsor, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection to the motion? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, there being no members wishes to introduce amendments, and there is also no committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection to the motion? The Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 6817 under Committee Report Number 314. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 6817 is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations to the author. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 6595 under Committee Report 295 and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to proceed.
House Bill 6595, an act mandating the inclusion of foreign language other than English as an elective course in the higher education curriculum.
The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of this measure is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debate. And with that, I move that we recognize the Chairman of the Higher Education Committee, the Honorable Mark Go, for the sponsorship of this measure. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none, the distinguished Chairman, Congressman Mark Go, is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I would like to move that the explanatory note of House Bill 6596 be adopted as the sponsorship speech of House Bill 6596. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, with the correction and indulgence of the Chairman, House Bill Number 6595.
The Majority Floor Leader.
We join the author, Mr. Speaker, that the sponsorship speech, an explanatory note be made as the sponsorship speech of House Bill Number 6595. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? The Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members wishes to interpretate a good sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection to the motion? The Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members wishes to introduce amendments and no committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none, motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for few seconds.
Session suspended. Session resumed. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 6595 under Committee Report Number 295.
Is there any objection to the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. The ayes have it. House Bill 6595 is hereby approved on second reading. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 6756 under Committee Report Number 309 and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure. So move, Mister Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby directed.
House Bill 6756, an act establishing a medical scholarship and return service program for deserving students and appropriating funds therefore.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chairman of the Higher Education Committee, the Honorable Mark Go, for the sponsorship.
The distinguished Chairman, Honorable Congressman Mark Go, is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. I have the honor to sponsor House Bill Number 6756 under Committee Report Number 309, which is a consolidation of 19 measures in all. This is authored by Committee on Health Chairperson Representative Helen Tan with more than 60 House members as authors and co-authors. Mister Speaker, now that we are in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, it is not just obvious, but it is in fact very, very clear that we need to pass this medical scholarship and return service bill so as to bolster the population of our doctors in the country. With our ongoing battle against this terrible affliction, Mister Speaker, this measure is definitely one of the most important measures that we can tackle and hopefully enact into law. That is because this is one of the measures which directly responds to the needs not only of the health sector, but of all the Filipino people in these very trying times. Mister Speaker, even before this pandemic occurred, we all know about our grim health statistics as far as the number of doctors are concerned. The World Health Organization prescribes a 1 is to 1,000 ratio for doctors and the population. However, in the Philippines, the ratio is 1 doctor for every 33,000 persons. In comparison, Mister Speaker, Cuba is 1 doctor for every 1,075 patients, and the majority of its doctors are primary care physicians. The Philippine Medical Association notes that there are 130,000 licensed physicians in the Philippines. However, only 70,000 of them are active in the profession, and sadly, a good number of our doctors have worked abroad or have turned to nursing and have worked out as nurses abroad. As of May 2020, Mister Speaker, the Philippines has an estimated population of 110 million. Imagine, Mister Speaker, only about 70,000 active physicians are serving approximately 110 million Filipinos. There are even municipalities and islands in the country without doctors or even a single doctor for the thousands of residents. This means, Mister Speaker, that many residents in far-flung municipalities and islands in our country had died without even seeing or consulting a doctor. This depressing situation, Mister Speaker, beacons on us to act now and as fast as possible. Indeed, this proposed law is long overdue. The measure was already approved by the House in the last Congress, but remained pending in the Senate. Article 13, Section 12 of the 1987 Constitution provides that the state shall establish and maintain an effective food and drug regulatory system and undertake appropriate health manpower development and research responsive to the country's health needs and problems. This measure, Mister Speaker, is a response to this constitutional mandate. A pronouncement of the Department of Health a few years ago, Mister Speaker, stated that the Philippines has a shortage of about 15,000 doctors to be able to adequately meet the health needs of the country each year. According to DOH, the country is producing only 2,600, which results in a very low doctor-to-patient ratio. The country is facing an alarming shortage of medical doctors and other medical professionals. Also, the Philippines has a problem with doctors refusing to go to the rural areas. As an example, the Doctors to the Barriers Program of the DOH is around 900 available slots, but only about 212 doctors served the program as they were deployed anywhere from Batanes to Tawi-Tawi. Several years ago, a newspaper report stated that some 100 private hospitals across the archipelago were forced to close shop for lack of health professionals, particularly physicians. This is the sad situation, especially in rural areas in the Visayas and Mindanao. Even prestigious medical institutions have difficulty attracting fresh graduates to fill up slots for doctors. This bill, Mister Speaker, seeks to address this problem by providing access to medical education to students aspiring to become doctors, especially those who are financially disadvantaged, and to instill in them the importance of medical service to the country, especially in the undeserved or underserved areas. Mister Speaker, the measure establishes a medical scholarship and return service program for deserving students in state universities and colleges or in private higher educational institutions in regions where there are no SUCs offering a medical course. The scholarship program shall accept at least one scholar from each municipality of the country. If there is no qualified applicant from a certain municipality, another qualified applicant shall be considered irrespective of the domicile. The applicant must pass the admission and other qualifying requirements of the SUCs and the Philippine higher educational institutions. Mister Speaker, the total number of scholars per province or municipality shall depend on the number of government physicians needed for each province or municipality as determined by the Department of Health. While there is an existing tuition subsidy for medical students enrolled in SUCs offering a course in medicine amounting to about 167 million pesos under the 2020 General Appropriations Act, this is not permanent, and every budget year, the continuance of the subsidy is being threatened, thereby putting the education and medical student beneficiaries who are already in their second, third, or last year of education in peril. With the medical scholarship law, we can be assured of continuous funding for the education of these students plus the benefits of return service. Moreover, the existing medical subsidy for medical students covers only tuition. What about the other necessary expenses like the costly medical books, supplies, uniforms, and transportation, among others? This bill provides a student financial assistance that shall include free tuition and other school fees, allowance for prescribed books, supplies, and equipment, clothing or uniform allowance, allowance for dormitory or boarding house accommodation, transportation allowance, internship fees, including financial assistance during postgraduate internship, medical board review, annual medical insurance, and other education-related miscellaneous subsistence or living allowance. Mister Speaker, the recipient of this program shall be required to render service for a limited time in a government public health office or government hospital in the scholar's hometown or in the absence of a need there are in any municipality within the scholar's home province or in any underserved municipality closest to the scholar's hometown in any province. Hence, the government and the Filipino people can benefit from the taxpayers' money used for their education. The doctors need not worry about zero income once they serve in towns or municipalities because they will not be working for free. Under the bill, a physician under the program shall receive appropriate salaries and other benefits for services rendered under the mandatory integration into the public health and medical service. Mister Speaker, I believe that this measure will be an important part of the solution to our shortage of doctors. We need to prepare now. As I have said earlier, this pandemic, I am afraid, might not be the last thing to happen. We must now enact this measure so as to entice more of our youth to enlist in the medical profession. They will be our future frontliners. The medical profession is a noble one, in fact, one of the noblesse in human history. The chance to join this profession should not be denied to anyone, and definitely not to our poor students who wish to pursue their dreams despite the cost and challenges of medical education. No doubt, this measure is as timely as it can possibly be. For these reasons, Mister Speaker, I urge all my colleagues in this august chamber to join me in appealing for the immediate passage of this measure to honor our frontliners. Let us honor them for their services and pay it forward by providing scholarship to the next generation of medical doctors, our future frontliners and heroes. Again, thank you very much, Mister Speaker, and my colleagues in this house. Thank you at Magandang Hapon o Magandang Gabi sa inulat.
Thank you, distinguished sponsor and chairman. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 6756. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 6654 under Committee Report Number 302 and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the number of the bill.
House Bill 6654, an act reorganizing and converting the Insurance Commission into a collegial body, amending Sections 437, 438, and 439 of Republic Act Number 10607, otherwise known as the Insurance Code as amended.
The Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chairwoman of the Economic Affairs Committee, the Honorable Sharon Garin, for her sponsorship.
Mister Speaker, I would like the sponsorship speech.
Is hereby recognized.
I would like to request that my sponsorship, the explanatory note shall be the sponsorship speech, and also, Mister Speaker, I would like to request that Congressman Deputy Speaker L.A. Villafuerte be included as one of the main, principal authors, considering that he has filed each House Bill 6453 of the same topic, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none, motion is approved. Proceed, distinguished sponsor.
Mister Speaker, there being no members.
Majority Floor Leader.
Sorry, Mister Speaker, there being no members wishes to interpretate on the good sponsor, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, there being no members wishes to introduce amendments, nor any committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider, approve on second reading, House Bill Number 6654 under Committee Report Number 302. So move, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to approve on second reading, House Bill Number 6654. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are not, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 6654 is now approved on second reading. The Majority Floor Leader. Congratulations to the distinguished author.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 6596 under Committee Report Number 296 and I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure. So move, Mister Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby instructed to read the number and the title of the House Bill.
House Bill Number 6596, renaming the Compostela Valley State College in the municipality of Compostela, Province of Compostela Valley to Davao de Oro State College.
The Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, the parliamentary status of this measure is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debate, and this is a local bill. I move that we note that the explanatory note be made as the sponsorship speech of the said measure. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, there being no members wishes to interpretate on this measure, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate of House Bill Number 6596.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of committee amendments.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, there being none, there being no committee amendments, I move that we close the period of committee amendments.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of individual amendments.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, Your Honor, I move to propose an amendments to House Bill Number 6596 under Committee Report Number 296. On Section 1, between the words "province of" and "Compostela Valley", delete the words "Compostela Valley" and insert the words quote-unquote "Davao de Oro". So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection to the proposed amendment? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General will take note of the amendment. Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, on the title of House Bill Number 6596, between the words "province of" and "Compostela Valley", delete the words "Compostela Valley" and insert the words quote-unquote "Davao de Oro". So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion or to the amendment? There being none. The chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, there being no other individual amendments, I move that we close the period of individual amendments.
Is there any objection to the motion? The chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 6596 under Committee Report Number 296 as amended. So move, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to approve on second reading, House Bill 6596 as amended. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are not, say nay. The ayes have it. The House Bill 6596 is hereby approved on second reading with amendments. Majority Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House Resolution to the appropriate committees. House Resolution 710 to Committee on Labor and Employment, House Resolution 714 to the Committee on Health, House Resolution 717, Committee on Justice, House Resolution 719, Civil Services and Propagational Regulation and Foreign Affairs, House Resolution 722, Basic Education and Culture and Higher and Technical Education, House Resolution 725 House Resolution 725, Committee on Basic Education and Culture; House Resolution 726, Mindanao Affairs; House Resolution 727, Mindanao Affairs; House Resolution 728, Mindanao Affairs; House Resolution 729, Committee on Favority Elevation and Local Government; House Resolution 762, Committee on Health; House Resolution 763, National Defense and Security; House Resolution 765, Overseas Workers and Affairs; House Resolution 767, Committee on Ways and Means; House Resolution 768, Information and Communication Technology; House Resolution 769, Public Orders and Safety; House Resolution 770, Transportation; House Resolution 772, Transportation; House Resolution 773, Public Orders and Safety and National Defense and Security; House Resolution 774, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 777, Local Government; House Resolution 778, National Defense and Security and Public Order and Safety; House Resolution 779, Bank and Financial Intermediaries; House Resolution 781, Cooperatives Development; House Resolution 782, Bank and Financial Intermediative; House Resolution 810, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 811, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 813, National Defense and Security and Public Order and Safety; House Resolution 814, National Defense and Security and Public Order and Safety; House Resolution 815, National Defense and Security and Public Order and Safety; House Resolution 816, National Defense and Security and Public Order and Safety; House Resolution 817, Committee on Health and Good Government; House Resolution 820, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 823, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 824, Agriculture and Food; House Resolution 826, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 827, Health, Good Government and Public Accountability; House Resolution 832, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 833, Public Order and Safety; House Resolution 834, Population and Family Relations; House Resolution 835, National Defense and Security; House Resolution 840, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 841, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 842, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 844, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 845, Public Order and Safety; House Resolution 847, Committee on Health; House Resolution 848, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 850, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 852, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 860, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 863, Legislative Franchise and Good Government and Public Accountability; House Resolution 866, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 870, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 871, Public Order and Safety and National Defense and Security; House Resolution 875, Defeat COVID-19; House Resolution 879, Good Government and Public Accountability; House Resolution 882, Good Government and Public Accountability; House Resolution 885, Defeat COVID-19. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion to the referral of House Resolutions to the appropriate committees? The Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measure: House Bill Number 6674 from the Committee on Housing and Urban Development to the Defeat COVID-19 Adoc Committee; House Bill Number 6703 from the Committee on Agriculture and Food to the Defeat COVID-19 Adoc Committee; House Bill Numbers 84379 and 4137 from the Committees on Civil Service and Professional Regulation and Higher and Technical Education to the Committees on Higher and Technical Education and Civil Service and Professional Regulation; House Bill Numbers 510, 1099, and 3340 from the Committees on Civil Service and Professional Regulation and Higher and Technical Education to the Committees on Higher and Technical Education and Civil Service and Professional Regulation. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion for referral of these House Resolutions to different committees. Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill Numbers 6554, 6555, 6570, 6589, 6590, 6591, 6593, 6595, 6599, 6610, 6654, 6756, 6768, 6815, 6816, 6817, 4786, 6586, 6585, 6596, 6597, 6598, 6727, 6728, 6729, 6730, 6731, 6753, and House Resolution Numbers 783, 784, and 789 as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to inclusion of additional authors with the different House Bills and House Resolutions? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, let me remind the members of the House that tomorrow, Thursday, we have a session. And please, I would like to request the members of the House that they join us in our session tomorrow as we will tackle several bills. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session until May 28, that will be tomorrow, Thursday, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Session is hereby suspended until 3 o'clock PM tomorrow, Thursday, May 28.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, bah na na, thank you. You're welcome.